Good afternoon and welcome to this council meeting on September 19th. We'll go ahead and start with calling the meeting to order and pass to Clementine for a roll call and announcements for how the public can participate in public comment.
Councilmember Barbara.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hoppa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And for the safe attendance of our public meetings, wearing a mask is recommended and encouraged. Please keep your phones and devices in the chamber muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting. And there are two ways to participate remotely in today's meeting. You may join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. An up-to-date version of Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864, then enter meeting ID 1607729333. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak and will be called on in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that's established for today's meeting and a countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast Channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay. And as always, we look forward to receiving your public comments.
All right. Thank you Clementine. And with that, we will go to public comment for items that are not on today's agenda. So for non-agendaized items, we will open the floor for each person that wishes to speak for three minutes.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Jean Rash, Monterey Vista. I just want to clarify, I don't want to pull number four from the consent calendar. So I'm just making a general statement about it that's applying to the ordinance for procedures for board and commissions and committees. I've said it before, it's very important that it not be just one person that interviews the candidates. And it's very important that it not be just one person, even our beloved mayor, who sends a nomination up to council. And I've said this before, and I know you've all thought about it, and I think you probably agree, but every time we talk about it, it gets very burdensome. How do you stretch even farther? How do we organize this? And I have an idea that probably could be very improved upon. And if we had a link on the website where all the committees are listed and where the public gets information about the vacancies. If there could be a link that someone keeps up, I'm sorry Clementine, might have to be you, that says-
Jean, I apologize. I have to stop you because you are commenting on something that's on the agenda. So what we'll do is we'll go ahead and pull it so that you can finish your comment.
Okay.
I apologize for that. Anybody else wishes to speak on items that are not on this evening's agenda?
Chandler Roland, citizen of Marina. My subject is the MST Project Surf Passenger Ridership Figures. Taken from MST's 2022 Annual Report indicating 880,000 passengers will use the new bus lanes one year after construction is completed. MST will not provide me with 2022 Passenger Ridership Figures for the number 20 bus express between Marina and Sand City, since the stop level data does not exist. The Tamsi Executive Director states the 880,000 Passenger Ridership will be from citizens without vehicle transportation, elderly students working and so forth. I strongly disagree with both organizations on the ridership issue. 880,000 per year equals 2,410 passengers each day of that year. To transport these passengers, you would need every day 60 scheduled trips of full capacity, 40-seat buses moving between the Marina Bus Sand City Transit Stations. Now, this is impossible. Once again, I find MST misleading the Monterey public on the benefits of the surf project. Another Whispering Oaks disaster, only greater in scope. Please let Marina Seaside and Sand City councils know your concerns regarding the misuse of a possible $100 million in tax funding, including the destruction of environmental landscape and recreational activities for six miles along the Route 1 corridor.
Thank you. Thank you for your public comment.
My name's Russ Donahue. I'm here on behalf of the police department who asked me to speak to you. I'm doing the landscaping at the MST Center down here for the last month. This weekend, a young man sat by me. Asked me if I would sell him a crack pipe. On our newly painted pillars that we just had painted, there's a message that says Lee is telling the police what we're doing. What we have is an organized gang down there. Chain of command, rules, penalties for breaking those rules. And to subsidize their strength, we have charities delivering them the finest foods. Donuts, deli food, Chinese pizza. What I suggested to the police department, first of all, I want a city ordinance posted. No stolen grocery carts allowed on this premise. No panhandling. And this is more than it looks like. I'm not just trying to stop them from begging. I'm insulting their presence as panhandlers. You understand the difference? They don't do that much panhandling there, but they will be offended that they are categorized as a group of panhandlers. This would be very effective. And the third is forbidding charities, all deliveries at this location. And what magnifies the expedience of this is this is where our kids come to and go from school. They don't want to sit on the benches with these drunks. They huddle over in a corner and wait for the bus, sometimes 15 or 20 minutes. They don't want to sit with these guys. So anyway, and the other thing that occurred to me, is that mean my time's up?
You have one minute left.
Is when the police were down there this weekend interviewing a couple of the main leaders of this bunch of characters. I was taken by how polite they speak as opposed to the drunken cursing, loud noises, fighting, brawling among themselves. Who's in charge of their gang? So it occurred to me, but when the police are there, they straighten up, talk, they sober up suddenly. So what I would suggest is, first of all, the posted ordinance, which will be insulting to them because it labeling them as thieves and panhandlers. But the importance of eliminating the charities.
That's your time, sir. Thank you.
Police video camera.
Thank you. Just for quick clarification, will rental registry remain on the consent agenda? Would you like my comments now or will you- It's going to be pulled. So if you wish to speak on the rental registry, that item will be presented separately. Thank you. You're welcome.
Hello, Mayor, City Manager and Council. It's good to see you guys again. I just come to you today just to give you an update and a request on our Canary Row Plaza, previously known as Ocean View Plaza. That name no more. We are fully finalized. I had discussions with two of you at least about getting the city to write a letter, and I just want to see if we can get a letter of support to Coastal Commission. We are fully done with the first developer and his claims of ownership. We were fully affirmed, went up to the level of State Supreme Court for review. And it was affirmed that we were the owners from first day of purchase all the way through. The Coastal Commission refused to transmit our permit to us. It was already issued and intent to issue was already sent. They had no way of doing what they did to pull that back and administratively, they should have just issued the permit to us. So subsequent to that, we are in a court case with them. We have all discovery and everything in place to go to trial. We're waiting for that. I think we have a case management in November, which will set trial hopefully around December, but we'll have final answer. We're all set to move forward, but the big thing is we want to see if we can get the community and others to say, we're tired of a piece of land that's for 60 years has been vacant and just a derelict, most beautiful part of Canary Row. It's a big area for financial support for the community, which can be generated. I provided to the mayor and I think city manager a letter that listed some maybe 27 points of positive things it brings to the community. So if everyone could write a letter to the Coastal Commission saying, hey, we would really like to see this. It's a great benefit. I think maybe we have some pressure we can get doing that. I'm going to try to a written hand letter campaign about 400 people requesting that. And anyone that can write that will help. And if the city could do it, I think you have to bring it as a motion here before the board. It would be great for you to do that and really help make a difference for the community. And I just thank you for your quiet support all these years. I know you couldn't do much because of the lawsuits, but I do want to see this completed for the good of the community and any ideas, I'm open to hear what we could do. I've got things aligned with a big partner to come in and take care of this. It's educationally based and I think it'll be a real positive thing for us. So thank you for your time today.
Thanks Bob. We'll look at trying to get that on the agenda as soon as possible.
By the way, I got to rush off. We have We Pray Monterey. We're doing monthly prayers all around Monterey. We've had over 14 churches involved so far in five months. We'll have 100, 150 people showing up or at First Grace, First Church of God in Pacific Grove. If any of you can make it out there, come on out and come out tonight between 6 and, excuse me, between 5 and 7 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else in the chamber wishes to speak on the items that are not on today's agenda? All right, let's take it online, please.
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
All right. That will close public comment. And we'll move to the consent agenda. Looks like we're pulling item number six. Anybody on the council wish to pull anything else? Or have any questions?
Wasn't there one on the item number?
Thank you. Number four as well.
No others from my corner.
Say it again, I'm sorry?
No others from my-
No others. Okay, thank you.
Item number seven is requested to be pulled for a quick comment by I help.
Okay. Perfect. So we'll pull item four, six, seven. Anything else? Barbara, do you have anything? Anything on this side?
Can I make a motion to approve the consent?
Let's do a public comment and then we'll go back to you for the motion. Is there any public comment or items that anybody in the public wishes to pull that is currently on the consent agenda? Okay, I help. I'm sorry. Are you wanting to make a comment on? That this is the time. So four, six, and seven, six is the rental registry is pulled. So those items will be discussed separately. So this is for anything that's on the consent agenda with the exceptions of four, six, and seven. And just to be clear, right after the consent agenda is approved. So to be clear, four, am I reading this correctly, is second reading of an ordinance updating provisions, processes, and procedures relating to the city's boards, commissions, and committees. Five is second reading of an ordinance amending, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, four, six, and seven. Six is second reading of ordinance establish a rental inventory and requiring registration of all residential rental properties within the city of Monterey, beginning January 1st of 2024. And seven is authorizing $29,874 in the contribution to the Interfaith Homeless Emergency Lodging Program. I help for emergency homeless shelter services. So those three items will be pulled. This is for public comment on anything else on the consent agenda. When something is pulled, so we have to be careful because we're not supposed to be engaging in dialogue, but I'll explain, I'll explain. When an item is pulled, that means that we're not voting on it when we're approving everything else that's on the consent agenda. So when it's pulled, it means it's going to be discussed after the consent agenda is approved. There'll be a presentation. We'll open public comment back up for everybody in the public to be able to comment on that time. All right. So this is for items, everything else on the consent agenda except for the ones that I just read.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and city team and community. I'm Jennifer Johnson, VP of Operations at Sea Monterey, and I work with Rob O'Keefe, our CEO, who is currently welcoming delegates here from the California Travel Association at their annual summit at the conference center. So I'm kind of taking his place because he's with our delegates. Cal Travel Summit is a conference we secured, bringing nearly 500 of the top tourism industry professionals from around the state. And this piece of business is worth about $1 million in spending in the destination. At Sea Monterey, we've been working really hard and smart implementing our business plan. While you'll receive a Q1 summary at the end of October, I just wanted to highlight a cool business development thing that's been happening since July 1st. We've been working with your Conference Center staff and the hotels, and we've booked six MCC groups since then. Three are new pieces of business, three have 300-plus peak room nights. Estimated 7.5 million in economic impact for these six groups, and that's pretty cool, but there's more. This week also here is the Rural County Representatives of California Conference at the Portola, and there's 300 attendees there. Then even bigger than both of those combined is the FIRA AgTech Conference in Salinas. With nearly 1,000 attendees, we helped with filling rooms outside of Salinas, including some at the Hyatt and other properties. So this is Salinas bringing economic impact to our peninsula as well. And as our CEO, Rob O'Keefe, always says, we're all connected. This is also an example of our strategic roadmap in action because we're targeting and landing group business that we need most midweek and off-season here on the destination. And group business is good for all of our businesses. When we book a group and it fills up a hotel, the other hotels are able to fill up with leisure travelers. This is compression. And as the Salinas example shows, it's really amazing for our entire destination, not just South County or just the peninsula, but we're all connected. By the way, Cal Travel Summit, this is their 40th annual meeting, and their organizers are telling us that this is the largest attendance ever. And can you guess why? Because it's in Monterey, of course. So people want to stay here longer and do more. One quick HR update, we are about to invite an amazing candidate to join our team of superhumans as a senior conference sales manager who will be focused on securing more groups like the one I just talked about for the conference center in the city. And oh, by the way, this is for item 14 because that's our agreement. One more thing, in case you missed it, this week also ends with Jazz Fest. So just one more reason, another amazing reason to spend one more night. Thank you.
I love it. Thank you. And just to reiterate, that was comments related to item number 14, which is an agreement with Sea Monterey for our service contribution to that, which is 1.8 million. All right. Any other public comments on the consent of, on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll take it online, please.
No hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, bring it back to the council, motion and deliberation.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent minus items four, six, and seven.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously?
So Mayor, can we maybe pull, start with item seven first? That is, I think, a simple point that a representative of IHOP wants to make.
Absolutely. So we'll go ahead and look at item number seven, which is the authorization of $29,874 for I help. So I will pass it to staff. Are we doing a presentation or are we just having the public comment? Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Tony Finnegan. I'm the board chair for I help, Interfaith Homeless Emergency Lodging Program. We are the only emergency housing that's available in Monterey County at this time. We are a 501(c)(3), and we've been in operation for 31 years. We have not missed a day in that time, a day or a night, even during COVID. So we've provided services for 31 years where we do, it does work, it is effective. We house between 15 and 17 men nightly. On average, we average for the women would be seven to 11. But we, it vacillates between numbers, but we are prepared and ready to go each and every night. I come to you tonight, our budget, we, most of our money comes from MC Gives and Pasta with the Pastures. Those are two fundraisers that we have annually, which basically make up 35% of our budget. The remaining budget is generated through in-kind donations, through individual donations, grants, and local funding sources. We are cost 80% of our budget goes for staff wages. And that's for drivers, monitors, and supervisors that juggle the schedule of local churches that participate with us. We are a nomadic housing model where we go to different churches each night. We have 30 to 40 different churches that we use for both men and women, staying at a different church each night. We provide a hot meal and a place to sleep, mats, sleeping bags, and duffel bags for the personal belongings. They'll have breakfast in the morning, then we pick them up and take them back to their designated drop-off spot. I come to you today because we are short on funds. We, a funding source that we had previously through FEMA, $40,000 was not granted this year. Rightfully so, it was given to South County because of the flood emergency there. We are in need of funding. So I want to thank you for considering that. I did bring some brochures with the information that I provided, and I can leave those with you if that would help. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. So public comment is open. So does anybody else wish to speak on this item? Anybody in the chamber? All right, we'll take it online.
No hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, beautiful. Thank you for coming to speak on this item. I help is a great organization. And just to reiterate what this item is about, the county used to give funding to I help to support the services that they provide. That funding is being used this year to help support efforts in Paharo with the levy. And so understandably so. And so I want to give appreciation to city staff for being able to take lead in working with our other local partners to try to help come up with the funding to support I help. So open up to the council for any other discussion or emotion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Let's go to item number four, which is the process and procedures related to boards, commissions, and committees. And Jean, we had you start speaking, so apologies for interrupting you there in the middle, but if you want to go ahead and finish your comments here, that would be great.
That's fine.
Oh, yeah. Do we need a, do we need a presentation?
No.
Okay.
What? I just want to clarify what the item in front of you is not the item Ms. Rash is addressing. So I just want to make that clear so that council understands that what item-
But it was in relation to the item.
It, I understand the confusion on both sides.
Yes.
And it's fine. It's fine.
So we will open public comment.
Right.
All yours, Jean.
I'm fine with the ordinance. Pass it. What I'm saying is we need to broaden the scope of interviewing applicants so that there's one other councilperson, the mayor and a councilperson, and the decision to send up nominations to the full council. And I know when we talk about this, it's very burdensome because you guys don't have enough and ladies don't have enough time. And I was thinking, I looked at the website and it's beautiful and the public can go on and see what vacancies are available. If we had a link where the public could go on and see when the interviews were happening and join, and then one of the four of you could volunteer if you want on areas that are of interest to you. You might have a particular interest in the architecture applicants, or you may have an interest in your own district applicant for NCIP or alternate. And then you would join on a volitional, you know, on a volitional plan where you volunteer to do it when you want. And then the mayor isn't doing it all alone. It's just very important that these committees and commissions and boards are not filled by the same person. We need, we need the reflection of at least one more person. I know from the Brown Act, it can't be more than that. But we need a broad, diverse contingent of people talking about issues on these boards and try not to leave it to just the mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment on this item in the chamber? All right, let's take it online, please.
No hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and deliberation or emotion.
So we really can't discuss that suggestion right now, though. Is that correct, city attorney?
Right. I think that's directed more towards the governance item.
That'd be a future.
Which is, I mean, I think on the next meeting, maybe.
Okay.
Down the road.
All right, then I'll move approval of item four.
All right, is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And with that, we will move to item number six, which is the registry. And so before we begin, how this is going to work is I'm going to pass it to staff here in a second. Staff will do a presentation, will take public comment. And then the council will vote. But before we get in there, I just have to say that there was some concern, and this isn't just from my own feelings in regards to the dynamics of this conversation, but I've heard a lot of feedback from folks throughout the community around the concern about how things were handled at the last meeting. And so I have a statement here that I'm just going to make. Let's take a few minutes to share a few participation ground rules so we can hear everyone's opinion and hold a productive meeting. We understand there are passionate opinions on this issue and we appreciate public feedback. Your voice is important and we want you to be heard. So first, if you'd like, you can state your name for the record. Two, please stay in front of the microphone so that everyone in the chamber and online can hear you clearly. Three, please address your comments to the city council. We have all pledged to listen to public input before we make decisions. There are other venues for you to address each other. Four, please remember to focus your comments on the issues being discussed, not on people. Comments about the topic are encouraged, but personal attacks, hate speech, and the use of hate symbols are not appreciated. As a community, we are better than that and ask that you please remain civil. Five, limit your comments to the time given. We live, we limit time so that everyone will have an equal chance to speak. When you follow the time limit, you show respect for other speakers. Six, applause, jeering, and talking amongst yourselves are discouraged. The noise makes it difficult or even impossible to hear who is speaking. All in all, I am asking everyone to please respect the public meeting process and be professional and courteous to the council, city staff, and your neighbors regardless of whether you agree or disagree. We appreciate you being here today and look forward to hearing what you have to say. This is part of our democratic process. So I just turned to my colleagues in the council. Does anybody disagree with the ground rules that we're establishing for the meeting tonight?
No, but the comment.
Okay.
On occasion, we may have some light applause, but I think public meetings are used to some of that. And if that does occur, I would just encourage the mayor who is running the meeting that we just, just give that a second, let it die down. When it dies down, we can move on. So I don't want to get into a position where we are trying to police spontaneous human responses. I think it's normal in public settings, but unless it gets out of hand, if it gets out of hand, that's a different style. But I just think that we don't want to over-police the natural responses that our audience may have.
Sure. So I think the goal with discouraging that as much as possible is so that we can make sure that we hear the words that are trying to be shared with the council and the public. So if people are applauding and the person continues to talk, we may not be able to pick up on all the comments that they're making.
No, I understand that. And the, and the normal course of that is when someone's completed their comments and they're returning to their seat. If there's natural applause there, I don't think we need to react to that.
Okay, so it sounds like we're generally in agreement.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I did just want to say that while it's helpful and encourage people to share their names, they don't have to.
That's correct.
That's really important for people to know.
Thank you for that clarification, Alan. I'm sorry, sorry. This is not the time for public comment, Jean.
Yeah, I just listening to the comment about the applause it triggered. I I mean, I I do understand the point about applauding, and sometimes it is a natural reaction. But if the majority is applauding, and there's someone in the minority in the group who wants to speak on on that item, it could potentially make that person feel a part of a smaller group. So, for that reason, I would also discourage applause.
Pardon my interruption before we have any more comments, if you don't mind. We're not really discussing or approving a meeting code of conduct tonight. And so the mayor, in his discretion, announced some rules, and I kind of thought that was where it was going to stop. And so I think the mayor laid down some ground rules for this particular hearing. And if the council is interested in establishing some process and ground rules, we can come back and and approve a policy. Account, you know, chambers conduct policy.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
So, we're good. We're good, everybody. All right, awesome. With that, we will pass it to staff for presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it very short. Last meeting on September fifth, council voted four to one to pass the proposed rental ordinance, rental registry ordinance with the following amendments. Landlords and tenants will split the cost of registration evenly, with landlords permitted to pass through fifty percent of the rental inventory fee to the tenants. To the extent possible, the portion of the rental inventory fee passed through to tenants shall be itemized on the rental invoice statement. City shall create and publish a form that landlords must use to inform tenants of the pass-through and the services to which the tenant has exact access pursuant to the ordinance. Accessory dwelling units, ADUs, junior accessory dwelling units, JADUs, and owner-occupied properties, where the owner rents or leases one or more bedrooms to a tenant, will be exempt from the payment of the rental inventory fee. And there will be no criminal charges, misdemeanor, or infraction imposed for any violations. And what is in front of you now is this these this revised ordinance that has incorporated those changes as you directed us. And that completes my general report.
Perfect. We'll bring it to the council for questions. Are there any questions, Alan?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, I had brought up the question of whether or not we could exempt sort of the mom and pop property owners who own a small number of properties. And the concern the city manager brought up made sense to me at that time, which is that would allow perhaps large property owners to license their property under LLCs, individual LLCs for each one, and in essence, sort of avoid the ordinance. And so that made sense to me. But in in talking to the city manager since the meeting, I think there may be a possibility to to do that and to sort of address that concern. So, I guess my question to the city attorney is, could you speak to that? Could we, is it possible for us to perhaps exempt owners with a small exempt from participating in or being required to participate in the registry? Owners who have, you know, one or two or three, a small number of properties and and be able to address the concern about LLCs.
I I believe so, yes. And Nazanin is also online, and she might have more experience with having implemented this. And I, just so we could clarify too, if your intention would be to exempt from the fees or exempt from the registration requirement or both.
So, I mean, my question would have to do with participating, being required to participate in the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Nazanin, you can jump in at any time, but we can work with definitions to clarify who's an owner and what that means and make sure that those are exempt from the process. It would maybe have more boxes to check and fill out in the process. But Nazanin, do you want to comment?
Yeah, as I mentioned at the last meeting, it is it is possible. I see that it's hard to hear, so I can.
We're working on the sound.
Okay. Should I wait?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Maybe just sing us a lullaby or something until we know.
I don't think you want to hear that.
Now I kind of do, actually.
I have a terrible voice.
Maybe if, uh, actually, hold on.
So, while we're waiting for Nazanin to have vocals, I can say that in the draft cannabis ordinance that people may or may not remember seeing, there is a description of what an owner is. And we could do something similar with this ordinance, but have that definition exempted out from the registration process. And I think that that would address what Bayshmar Happa is requesting. It is maybe a bit more cumbersome, and I I think that might be what Nazanin is going to say, but we'll wait till we can actually hear her.
All right, why don't we try you again?
All right, are you all able to hear me now?
It is a little bit hard. If you could just maybe try to maybe on your side, like if maybe you either change your mic or or just try to speak up a little bit louder.
My mic is at max, so unfortunately, I can't make it any higher.
I think you sound a little bit better on our side. Why don't you just try to speak up as much as possible, and and we'll try to listen to your comments?
Okay, sure. So, basically, what I was saying is that it is possible to do that, as I mentioned at the last meeting. You know, we could have a definition, and as Christie said, that would allow you to cover people whose, you know, principal agents or members are the same in different LLCs so that, you know, people are not able to use this sort of as a loophole to get around the registration requirement. It it will require more active, I guess, enforcement by city staff who are implementing this ordinance. Someone's going to have to seek out that information if you want to make sure that this is not happening. And additionally, I would also say that this will require you to reconsider, I think, the exemptions that you've already put into the ordinance. As of right now, you have only exempted owners who have ADUs and JADUs and owners who engage in home sharing from the payment of fees. And so there needs to be a discussion as to whether those individuals would also fall within this definition of smaller property owners that would be exempted from the entire ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Sorry, can we try to turn this down a little bit? On that, I just want to do a a follow-up on on Alan's question. And I would ask Hans, what do you see as the potential challenges associated with that?
As as our attorney, our attorneys pointed out, I think that is a legal option that we can define. The underlying assumption from the council would be then that you would exclude those categories by assuming that they have a different landlord pattern that other landlords may have. So, I think that that is the sympathy factor that the council would need to evaluate if you like to deplete your database from from a baseline right now, because the underlying assumption is, well, the mom and pop stores, they rent their properties as part of making substituting their social security, et cetera. But the underlying assumption of the council is they don't charge a lot. And and so we don't know that as a staff right now. I have to say, we do not have that baseline. Yes, there is anecdotal evidence here and there, but there's also anecdotal evidence, I would submit for your consideration, that it might go the other way. So, I just want to point that out that maybe for councils' consideration, an option would be to start creating the baseline. And again, look at it after a year and see, is that assumption the correct one? Are mom and pop stores definitely statistically significant different in what they charge as a rent or not? So, I just wanted to share that thought with you.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. More questions. Councilmember Barber.
Yeah, so I remember last time when we were talking about, I spoke about a range of what the fee would be. Were we able to get a range at all with the fee would be?
I I think fifty dollars is is probably the number where we will land on again. The math was based on eight thousand rental unit, four hundred thousand. If we come in lower, we will come in lower.
Right, and I know you're estimating because that's the whole purpose of the registry, to understand what the inventory is. Thank you.
And and I think I saw something in the staff report that said forty to sixty dollars was the range.
Yeah, that was my way of saying fifty.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is that it for you? Okay. Councilmember Smith.
It's a question for the city manager. As this has proceeded, I think we were going under the the written direction that we were probably talking of two employees. Obviously, then the the data, the program purchased and the ongoing licensing. Has the city manager given some thought to possibly having this be a contract versus employees to drive the cost down? In other words, find a contractor who does this for us that takes the the data and keeps us from the burden of growing local city government.
No, we have not taken this under consideration, just because I think there are not really contractors that I'm aware of who are doing this right now. There are contractors out there who provide you with the software. There are here and there offers of contractors that that say, oh, we can take, we can also run it for you. But we have not seriously considered that. Again, I think from from my perspective, it's 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 good to keep this in-house because we know the the locality is probably best. We know probably a great deal of landlords, et cetera, and can also apply our knowledge about their information that they are sharing with us. But absolutely, we we can take a look at that and then see if there are outfits out there that that will basically charge a different rate. So, it's speculative right now to say that they are less expensive than the city.
Okay, Mayor, that's all I have. Okay. Okay, all right. With that, we'll open up for public comments. And given that we only have forty-five minutes before the end of this meeting, and I imagine but to be a lot of comments, we're going to limit public comment to two minutes.
Right. I'm Jack Fields, resident of Monterey, and since it's two minutes, I'll spare you the speech and basically say that I am, as a former renter here in Monterey, very concerned about this proposal because it's not new. Lots of other cities have tried this, and invariably, it seems to lead to decreased rental inventories and ultimately to gentrification. And I don't think that that's what we want. Finally, what I would ask, and and you'd already touched on this, is that if it is going to move forward, please do consider those mom and pop renter property owners and consider an exclusion for them. Okay?
Hi, my name is Shar Carter. I've lived in Monterey for thirty-nine years, and I'm up here because I'm a taxpayer. I'm representing the taxpayers of the city of Monterey, and I think this is a very unnecessary program. It is very expensive, and it's not needed. You guys have not mentioned, you've mentioned all these other things, and I have a copy of the second draft that I've read three times. But nowhere have you mentioned the hundred thousand dollars to start this, the twenty-five thousand dollars for software, the fifty thousand dollars a year for the subscription, to whom we don't know, four hundred thousand out of the clear blue sky. And in the draft, you state that there are sixty-five point nine percent renters, right? In the city of Monterey. So, I'm trying to visualize how you are going to monitor with staff. You're going to have to hire tons and tons of people with benefits. I figure it's going to cost a million dollars a year to the taxpayers. So, another thing I found in here, you were going to charge the landlords a hundred percent of the ordinance registration license fee. Then you change fifty percent to the renters paying and fifty percent of the landlords paying. So, I don't know how that benefits the renters. So, that's pitting the renters against the landlords. So, I find this program totally unnecessary. I think you should tear it up, throw it in the trash, resend it. And I'm looking at Seattle. Seattle lost ten thousand renters. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kathy Nolan. I live at three fifty, three seventy-one Park Avenue in Oak Grove. I am the owner of a tiny little depression cottage with an attached granny, which I have been renting for thirty-two years. For right now, the rent is seven hundred, seventeen hundred and fifty dollars, which in my neighborhood is eight hundred to a thousand dollars less than market. I won't go on and on about that, but just so you know, and I sent, I passed that around, so I hope you can get a chance to actually look at it because it says my sentiments, so I don't have to stand up here and, you know, go on and on and on. It does seem to me that one size does not fit all, or one size fits Al, and Al's got a big head. And I guess you probably figured that out by now, and I'm so glad. Thank you, Ed, for bringing up the idea of having that be a contracted out this, the workings of this new department. And certainly, we could find in Monterey somebody that could do that. Anyway, I'm glad to see that you're modifying it to a certain degree, and I hope that you will stay open to what's real and find something that's going to work for everyone. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Candace Evans. I'm a fourth generation, fourth generation resident in Monterey. I just find it very awkward, the lack of transparency and notification and how this all came about. I don't think really any of the people here are landowner mogul real estate people. I think they're just people that have tiny little rental ADUs or one property that they have probably rented to friends and family over the years. And it's, it really just doesn't make a lot of sense. Hans is actually one of my neighbors. But it it kind of came out of the blue for me, and I've heard about it from neighbors and Shar, who I agree with a hundred percent, the lady prior that spoke. So, I'm hoping that the consensus, or maybe a little deviation from what you guys already have in writing, like, has been discussed, really needs to be considered because it seems like there's a whole lot of money that's going to be involved in this for really not a great purpose in the end. So, that's all. Thank you.
My name is Charles Carter, and I've been a resident for thirty-eight years, like my wife. And I wanted to talk about the fact you called these taxes fees. That bothers me because they're taxes, not fees. When you say fees, and 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 on top of that, you're deriving those monies from the citizenry. You're not paying them. You're deriving them from the citizenry. So, it's great for you to spend other people's money like you're so attuned to. But the, like my wife said, she said something about the fact that it's going to be four hundred thousand plus a hundred thousand plus twenty-five thousand for software. The point is, is that there's no end to this. This thing could grow like crazy. I wanted to make a comparison. I had my road done in my, in in front of my house paved. I had my road done in my, in, in front of my house paved probably a year and a half ago. It's already falling apart because the foundation wasn't taken care of. And another thing too, that I wanted to bring up is this is an assault on the elderly. There's a lot of older people. There's a lady around the corner from me that owns a little pedo tear. And she rents, she's been renting it out forever. And she's ninety-four. She could barely speak. And when I told, told her about this thing, she cried. And so you guys, you need to rethink your, your whole thing. I think you need to drop the whole thing. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Adam Pinteritz. I'm the Government and Community Affairs Director for the Monterey County Association of Realtors. We've been talking about this for a few months now. And one of the things that, uh, came up in earlier conversations was a concern of, uh, larger out-of-state, maybe even out-of-country, uh, corporations or, or whatever other ownership structures, uh, buying up or owning a lot of the rental properties and that they were less sympathetic, less invested in our community and less attentive towards their tenants. And, uh, I'm just here to assert that, uh, and I'm very appreciative that you're revisiting the possibility of exempting, uh, mom and pop, uh, landlords because I think that's very important. What I've shared with you today is new information that I have not presented to you before. Uh, we're circling back to the city of Seattle. We're over six percent of their rental inventory was lost after they began overregulating rental housing. But, um, not just was it six percent, over six percent of their overall rental inventory, but seventeen percent of the rental inventory owned by so-called small mom and pop landlords. So this is going to take things in the direction that you've previously stated you'd like to avoid. Um, respectfully, city manager, you say you'd like to gain the data. The data won't be there. The fallout and the aftermath of passing these, uh, the, this sort of overregulation is going to result in them exiting before you've been able to capture that data. So, uh, I just hope that you'll reconsider things altogether. But at the bare minimum, please reconsider exempting, uh, smaller mom and pop landlords. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Poner. I'm a resident in Monterey, retired teacher. I guess I'm one of those elderly people who's being referred to. I am totally in favor of a registry, and that's because I have been a victim of the property management, uh, escalation of prices that nobody seems to have a handle on. There is scare tactics that are being addressed at this point. Um, I don't think there's any reason to be scared of knowing what's going on in our city and what's driving out people like teachers and nurses and firepeople and wait, waiters and, uh, health aides and all the other people who keep us alive. And if there's not a registry, there's got to be some way of monitoring what's going on. I would, I would recommend also setting a cap on how many rentals a given property management can, um, can manage. Because we have almost, we have a few, but some of, uh, one of them in particulars is like a monopoly. And of course, they don't want, they don't want you to know that. They don't want the public to know what they're doing and how they're raising rents, uh, frequently. Nor do they want to, want you to compare or want us, the renters, to compare between property management, um, cannibalism and, um, mom and pops. So if there's a way of exempting the fee for mom and pops, set a limit and say, okay, if you've got five properties and you don't pay those fees, they'll be absorbed. Um, but have the property management pay those fees. Uh, residents are, to be able to live in a house or, uh, an apartment is basically a right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Taylor Bowaya. I'm a Monterey resident, and I am a Monterey girl down to my soul. I was born at Chomp. I cheered for Monterey High. I graduated from MPC. And now I'm a renter, and I am terrified of being priced out of my own home. I am here to speak in support of the rental registry because I believe that time and time again, landlords and property management companies in Monterey have shown irrevocable proof of economic irresponsibility when it comes to fair housing rates. Monterey runs on tourism, but the people who work hard behind the scenes to keep those tourists happy are priced out of living here. Hotel workers, restaurant employees, even the wonderful state park employees that keep our historic sites up and running. It is difficult or even impossible for them to find a reasonable housing rate. If a governing body, if there was a governing body to provide oversight, perhaps the market would return to sane, to some semblance of normalcy. Instead of the majority of our paychecks going to rent, it would be really nice to spend them in local restaurants or local stores or even donate it to local nonprofits. But unfortunately, that's not an option for many, many struggling Monterey renters right now. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Council Mayor Thomas Lee, Monterey resident. I want to talk about the experience in San Francisco. Uh, some Stanford PhDs got together and analyzed, uh, San Francisco's had, um, rent control for years. And so I'll just read my little summary here. One of the best evaluations of rent control looked at the city near us, San Francisco. A rent control passed in nineteen ninety-four, newly controlled some rentals, but not others. In short, it was a natural experiment. The experiment, uh, the question was, how did rent control affect prices and affordability over time in one category versus another? The study, published in American Economic Review, finds winners and losers from rent control. Some of the biggest losers were renters, especially those unlucky to search for housing a few years after rental control was established. Rentals became increasingly scarce as, um, existing tenants stayed put longer and landlords converted many other units to more profitable uses. Some rentals were sold to buyers who lived in them, resulting in fewer rentals on the market. This is the great unintended consequence of rent control. Intended to help renters, it actually makes renting more difficult after controls kick in. In other words, if you're a renter that, I mean, after say, three or five years after it kicks in and you want to come to Monterey, there will be a wall of, of silence when you knock on a door and find a rental. That's the, that's what happens under rent control. So anyway, if the council would like to read this, uh, study, which I recommend, I emailed you all and, uh, with it today, and so take a look. Thank you.
Uh, Lauren Samuels, um, I'm with, I have, uh, two, um, rental units in Monterey. Anyway, um, the, uh, the bit about Seattle, actually, let me read it from the, uh, from the newspaper. Seattle ha- has lost nearly three thousand rental properties between May of last year and January of two thousand twenty-two. Those properties constitute roughly ten thousand units in total. Since May, only twenty-seven rental units were added. You know this system doesn't work. Any economist would tell you. Why do you want to lose money? Or do you really want to grow a bureaucracy and have more money in your accounts? Is this, is this just for money? It's not a social thing. You're not going to do it. It didn't happen in any city. Just studied other cities. Santa Monica was the same way. Now they have hardly any rental units there, and it has the highest price rent along the coast. We have one of the lowest rents of a city along the coast. Uh, you can talk to Tom Lee. He has the, the data on it. It's amazing. But you're not listening to economics. I don't know what you're listening to. But I guess you don't care. I, I think this will bring a lot of money in, and you want a lot of money. So you can spend it. I bet you just love to spend money, but it's not yours. Anyway, it's crazy. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Uh, my name is Kathy Bowaya, also known as Taylor's mom. Um, you know, I'm, I came today because I sat here and listened to the last meeting online. And I was, I was appalled. I was appalled that you people who are willing to sit here and take this, I don't know why. Um, but the disrespect and the, um, I see you all as just trying to find a solution. You were voted in and the majority of your constituents said, we have housing issues. As a mother and a grandmother, my children are, cannot afford to live here. We still have to supplement them. That's ridiculous. My grandchildren have had to move away now. And I don't know if any of the people who are in this audience have sat down and tried to find housing for their children. It's not here. It's not available. And Taylor's right. Every dollar she has goes to her rent. And as I'm sitting here, listening to her talk, you know, the last few months, her, um, apartment is overrun by rats. She's called the city. She's called the landlord. She's called the property management. She's called the health department. And yet she's paying, three-fourths of her paycheck goes to this ridiculous place because she wants to live alone and be an independent adult, just like any of our other children. I know it doesn't address what you all are talking about, but there's another, other issue that I see as a big picture is the I help guy who was just here. We have people sleeping on the streets here, and I see this as being a community issue. And to be blasting people who are trying to help, try to find a solution, um, is sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council Nelson Vega, um, I have, um, a couple of, uh, uh, suggestions that may be helpful here because you're, as I said last time, you're creating a war between landlords and tenants. And this is not to benefit them and it's not going to benefit us. So one of the things that I find is that we should be able to have tenants opt out. There are tenants that don't want to be involved in this. The tenant doesn't want their name out there. They don't want their amount of rent. And it's going to be causing a problem if this tenant finds out that that tenant pays less or more. And now I have an issue. You've created an issue that shouldn't be created. One of the other issues here is the, um, uh, registration of it, uh, and the cost. We're going to pass that through. Part of it will come through, through, through a separate bill. But the rest of it is part of our overhead that we're going to be putting right down to the bottom line. The, uh, part where the public database, that concerns me. You have no, uh, clause here to hold the landlords harmless for information we've given you. We should have a hold harmless clause that if we give this information, it's misused. If someone, woman gets raped because someone finds out there's a woman in that place because her name is Jane Doe, that we're, we're, we're exempt from this. You've asked for this information, you're demanding it, and then you've actually put the, the law on the tenant's side. In, in two of them, you've, uh, you've said that the tenants can enforce this separately, and the tenants have a right to get a, a, a retra man from us. Well, why don't they break the rules? And what about the landlord getting it? This is a one-sided rule, and I think it's wrong. And I think it should be more balanced, and you should take out some of these things that are harmful to the, to, to the landlords and tenants who are going to have to sign a waiver from us because I'm going to get a waiver from, say, hey, the city wants this. Do you want this or do you object? And I'm going to get that from them. And if they don't want to give it to you, you're not going to get it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Joe Williams. I'm, uh, uh, one of those mom and pop, uh, apartment owners here in, uh, Monterey. And, uh, uh, I've had a chance to, uh, look over the proposed ordinance. And, uh, this is contrary to your goals. Uh, this will not, uh, increase, uh, the amount of housing available nor will it decrease the housing that, uh, or the cost of housing that is available. One hundred percent of your constituents are either landlords or, uh, tenants. And, uh, whatever fee which should be identified as a tax, uh, is going to, no matter how you cut it, fifty, fifty, hundred percent, zero percent, doesn't matter. Uh, it's all going to end up uh, costing, uh, both the landlord more, which impacts the amount of, uh, maintenance that gets done. Uh, and also impacts, negatively impacts the, uh, constituents, the tenants as well. Uh, and it just makes housing more affordable, more expensive for all of them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good afternoon. Luis Osorio, um, I have been a resident of Monterey since July tenth, nineteen ninety. Um, I've, I've always been a renter. I became a senior citizen here, and I also became a grandfather. I know what the issues are that renters go through and in trying to find housing here. The issue has been steadily and incrementally getting worse, um, throughout the years because just about any action that has been taken has been directed by the so-called market, that fuzzy thing that we refer to all the time, the market forces. But what's not clear is how that market rate is determined. And, and I think if, if the ordinance is trying to address that issue, then it needs to be clarified. I, I also hear the plight of the owners, which, you know, for the most part is valid. I think also that one of the issues that, the main issue for me is what, which is not only in Monterey, but everywhere is what kind of a community are we trying to live in? I mean, we, we are separated by class. We are separated ethnically. And so the question is what to do? I think the city council, especially this city council, got elected with direction from, from a lot of us renters to look for solutions. And if this is something that is going to help, then it should be adopted. And we usually hear to Mr. Vega and his comments and, and, and all the comments that have been submitted that will make a better product and something that is, is fully understood by both the citizens, the renters and, and the owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't planning to speak, but I changed my mind. I'm a landowner homeowner in Oak Grove. I own three small, single-family houses with fabulous tenants. I have not raised their rents for four or five years. All the rents for these wonderful houses that include garages and yards are under two thousand dollars. I will not raise the rents on these people, whatever you guys do. And I will not participate in the registry. And you can take me right next door to this cute little jail. I will happily go.
Hi, I'm Jean Rash, um, in Monterey Vista, Monterey resident. Um, a mom and pop landlord and a homeowner and have been a renter. I think we should give it a try. Uh, we have a lot to learn about, uh, the rental situation in, in Monterey. I think the process has been receptive to a lot of, um, comments by the public. We've had, um, three or four hearings. We've adjusted the, um, registry uh, information, um, fine, if we want to drop the mom and pops. We are not asking for information, personal information on the tenants, and I think that was an important accommodation. It's not, um, an infringement on their privacy. It's a business. Um, and those of us in business are used to a lot of sharing of data. I don't even want to think of the data that I've shared as a, an attorney, nurse, midwife, notary. I mean, you know, I get fingerprinted every six months. Um, we have a crisis in housing. We have to learn more about it. We have to learn productively how to respond. We have, we have elected a council- We have, we have elected a council and especially in a mayor on this platform of helping the, um, homeless problem and the rental disaster. And I think we ought to give it a go, see what we can learn. Think about the next steps. Thank you.
Did you already speak? Yeah, no, she didn't speak on this item. You can only speak once per item. Anybody in the, uh, else in the chamber, which should speak on this item?
You don't need to know my name, but I've been thinking that you're jumping into this thing without thinking about it thoroughly. Why doesn't the city put together an option, just like the state is ramming down our throats about developing low cost housing? Can Monterey do that? It could be funded by ticket revenue. Uh, the ticket revenue could be used to help people that are, uh, having difficulty making ends meet until you get something done that actually helps the public. What you're doing now is creating enemies. I've only voted for two of you people up there ever. And I don't care for the other three. And I think that we need to look at things, uh, in a way that is open minded and will actually solve a problem instead of getting everyone upset with everyone else.
Anybody else in the chamber, which should speak on this item? All right, we'll take it online.
All right. The first hand raised is Amanda G.
Hi, my name is Amanda. I, um, wanted to just say thank you for talking about the mom and pop exemption. I would also like for you to consider an exemption for, um, those of us who were born and raised there, but are now married to the military and are away due to being active duty. Um, I'd also like the point that you made sure that people who do not participate or choose to not participate are not criminally, um, reprimanded, but I'd also like to see something in there too, that would say that, um, the fine for not participating would not be sent to collections at some point? Or there would not be any retaliation against any permits that would be, um, requested? Um, just to make sure that that's crystal clear and black and white. And then also, um, I just wanted to share that I really do feel like this is quite an invasion of my privacy. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Reeves.
Hello, uh, the last meeting I spoke, uh, about having an exemption for family to family rentals. And maybe I didn't make my point very clear, but that's exactly what I'm talking about. I think my point got lost in the shuffle of talking about the mom and pops rentals. So I'm talking about rentals between a parent and a child, a child and a parent or between siblings. So if you get into a conversation about mom and pops, please keep in mind a much, much smaller subset, which are family to family rentals. You might be asking, why should we consider that? And I'm reading from finding number one, the city has a substantial government interest in regulating the relationship between landlords and tenants to increase certainty, stability and fairness within the rental market. Well, you can't get more, uh, transparent than a family to family rental. So please exempt family to family rentals. Also, when somebody does rent, say an ADU for a year, and then they come back and they decide, you know, I don't want to rent this anymore. Well, the community development director said you have to report that as a vacancy. So, okay, maybe after a year of renting it, you decide not to rent it. You report it's a vacancy. Well, what do you do in a year or two? Do you have to keep reporting it as a vacancy? Do you have to keep paying the fee over and over again? There's nothing in this ordinance that addresses what happens if you've decided to get out of the rental market. There's no un-registration. But please, please, please exempt family to family rentals. Thank you very much.
All right, next we have Esther Malkin.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to, um, address a comment that keeps being brought up, that this doesn't create housing. This is not meant to create housing. It's actually meant to help us understand what kind of housing we need to create. So everybody is automatically jumping to a rent control conversation. When this is not a rent control ordinance, this is a rental inventory conversation. Because we need to understand our rental market to be able to plan for the needs of the future as well as know what's going on currently. Now we keep referring to mom and pops. And there are some true not mom and pops, which the registry will be able to let us know how many are really true mom and pops. And not the mom and pops that are being, uh, using property management companies that are the ones dictating to these mom and pops that they should raise their rents according to market rate, because these property management companies make more commission when the rents are higher. So, you know, hijacking this conversation into an automatic rent control one and comparing the city's intentions to what is happening elsewhere in the country is, you know, a really inappropriate, um, comparison to what we are trying to do in the midst of a housing crisis that we will not be able to build fast enough. And we still need to try and house our workers and our renters and our family members. So we need to understand particularly the difference of the mom and pops that are self-managed versus the ones that are managed by property management companies that are having an influence on the market rate that we actually refer to. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Lori Mazuka. Lori Mazuka, please unmute.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Uh, good, uh, good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm going to try to hit some different points I had on the list, some of the same ones that have been touched on. Just responding to the last caller, I'm going to say right up that how the housing crisis is a nationwide crisis. And I think that's why people are bringing other areas into it. And the rental registry, uh, I don't know of one that's been implemented that hasn't led to rent control, or usually they come in in tandem. This is going a little differently, but I, I'm, I don't think any of us are fooled, fooled that that is the next step here. So they, that will probably come in step. Uh, I'm going to just say that I've been a renter the majority of my life. For 37 years of my adult life, I've rented mostly for mom and pops. That's why people are talking about them. I do think that we, there needs to be something done with people that are with the human, humongous property management companies. When you have rats running through a house, like one of the other people talked. And it's really sad to me if they're trying to get help through someone in the city. I know that those mechanisms must be there. I think we need to flesh that out and make those responses productive before we go down any other roads. I don't really feel like this is ready for prime time. Um, I did write a letter that'll be available to the public. Uh, and they've got a couple of good, um, web links in there. One, I put together a spreadsheet of every city that's doing this in California. And there's one in Culver City that collected, uh, some random guy just put together a database using the city's data that was out there. And it's kind of frightening what you can do with that database. And I wouldn't want to be in it. Uh, I do have a question about the fees and I'm going to run out of time, but it's all in my letter. Uh, so thank you for listening and trying to revisit this situation.
And Mr. Mayor, there are no further hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. And with that, we will close public comment, bring it back to the council for deliberation and discussion. We'd like to start us off.
Okay.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, uh, thank you for all of your comments, uh, and this, this night and, uh, two weeks ago when we met as well. So I know that this topic has, um, had articles in the Herald and the Carmel Pine Cone. And we've had letters to the editor, our editors. And, uh, we've had a vibrant community, uh, feedback and appreciate all of your comments again tonight. I'm, I'm concerned, I'm just going to say again, and then I'll make some, um, points and questions. I, I don't think it's ready for prime time and I don't think it's really, um, going to do anything that we need in data. I think that there's data available, as I indicated last time. And I think there's a way to, to get where we want to get without creating, um, more city jobs and taxing our, um, our property owners. I believe that it's pitting our property owners, um, against their landlords. And I, and I don't like the feeling of that. I don't like the way this, this discourse is happening because it's, it's showing us to the level of emotion that this gets to a lot of folks. And I connect with that because I don't like the conflict. I'm searching back here in the document because I wanted to reference the purpose, um, that's, that's stated in our, our staff agenda item. It's too long, I'm not going to read it, but I'm, I'm really having a hard time resonating with the purpose. Um, if, if we look at the, the comments that we've had from some folks that have validly said, uh, we've not had a good relationship with a landlord and we haven't had good, um, uh, safety, health and safety. And we've had to move or we've had a roof fall or a rip of, uh, you know, leaks or rats. Um, this entire ordinance is completely silent on code enforcement. That troubles me. If we're really trying to just get data as the purpose describes, so that we can make policy, informed policy decisions. I think there, there's a way to do that with a whole lot less money. And I think that is, uh, the data program that we would need. We tailor that to how we need it. We have a lot of access to information that's, um, that's out there among our, uh, property owners. Many of them have come forward and said that they're willing to give us information. Um, I just don't like the idea of taxing a set of class of residents to force them to participate with, with something like this. Uh, what resonates with me is a comment from the, the fine lady that lives in Oak Grove that has, she's in the category mom and pop. And she's a very reasonable, uh, landlord. And she doesn't want to participate in this and doesn't see the purpose. And you know, when you, when you listen to so many people that say they don't see the purpose, they don't see the wisdom in this. Overwhelmingly, I've had so many people say this, and there are people that don't know me that didn't even know that I was the one that voted against it, that are still saying, please don't do this. And I just think we would be blinded as a council if we did not listen to those that have overwhelmingly been the majority voice as well as the questions of what are we doing in government when we create more positions for two employees that we have to tax the public to pay for them? When I think the data might be out there if we looked at an alternative way to do that. So I want to go to a couple of things that I'll likely lose the vote tonight. But I want to plant the seed for opportunity here. Monterey County Commercial Property Owners has, they, they, they've spoken to me personally. MCAR, we heard from them tonight, Monterey County Association of Realtors. The Chamber of Commerce last time spoke. Monterey County Hospitality has indicated, uh, that they're against this. The majority of the speakers tonight, the majority of speakers last time, the majority of the callers last time was against this. I just don't think that we, if this moves forward, we as a council are acting on the best advice from our public. And I think former mayor Clyde Roberson, who wrote us a letter, who does not support this. It was famous for saying, the neighbors know the answers. And I think that we are running this down the wrong pipeline to get data that's not going to give us the answers we need. I think the, the opportunity is there to get the, the data without having to, to, uh, set this tax in motion. Um, I think this ordinance, if it passes, should have a sunset. If you truly are after data to guide you in some policies in the future, why make it permanent? Why not say it's for one year and then sunset it? Go in, get the data, see what it's like, and then get out. Instead of making it permanent, which many governmental actions do become permanent. And then you have mission creep. I'm not in favor of this making a permit action, a permanent city department or having, uh, giving the city manager authorization to, um, go out and hire employees. I don't think that this should be permanent. We should sunset it. Um, there was a speaker that spoke to the whole harmless piece, um, that is listed under eight dash zero two dash zero five. I'd like to know more about that. And maybe when we have some comments, the city attorney can address that. I'm concerned that we have friction between the landlord and the, and the tenant. And if it's surrounding, um, anything that we're not doing in this, we should be careful that we consider hold harmless and that we don't pit tenants against landlords. That, uh, the language I think needs to be addressed. And I certainly want to hear from the city attorney more. I look forward to hearing from the other council members and their perspectives. Um, if you move ahead with this, I really think you should consider the, um, privately owned, as we've had many of our speakers, as we've had many of the writers, uh, who have corresponded with us in emails and letters that have said that, you know, they're renting two units and they don't see the purpose in them being included in this. I think the mom and pops that we're talking about should be excluded from this. I don't think that if we act on this, I don't think we're listening to our constituents that are residents of this city, whether they are landlords or whether they are tenants. On both sides, I'd heard, I've heard from renters who don't think this is a good idea because of the risk. I've heard from property owners that don't think this is a good thing to do because of the intrusion. And the overall fear I have is that any action and conversation that puts us in this position by inertia organically causes rents to go up. And let me address one more thing and I'll turn it over. The reason so many people are addressing this council with concerns about rent control is because in January of 2023, when this council was seated, we all had an opportunity to outline our goals in the coming year. And three or four of you stated you were interested in rent control. And if you don't remember saying it, go back and see the meeting. But three for sure, and possibly four have indicated your goal was rent control. So don't be surprised that you're hearing the comments from your constituents here and two weeks ago. They remember what you said. I remember what you said. The video remembers what you said. And if you don't want rent control, your comments in this process are not forthright and are disingenuous. So please listen to the people who are talking to you tonight and have written so well. They fear that this is the wrong policy. And if we don't align a purpose with the policy, we shouldn't do it.
Was there a question that you wanted to direct to Chrissy?
Question for Chrissy. On the section that's talking about hold harmless, could you make a comment about the, how that works? And is there anything else that we should be concerned about making sure we don't pit landlords and tenants in that process of disclosure of information? And how is the landlord protected from release of information?
Certainly, um, our, the draft of this ordinance does not contain any sort of hold harmless or indemnity requirements. You might be referring to Mr. Vega's public comments where he, um,
Yes.
Would want to have protection from disclosing information about his tenant. There may be some contractual provisions that a landlord would put in a, in a lease agreement with the tenant. Maybe that's what he was referring to, but this, this particular ordinance doesn't have an indemnity or hold harmless clause. Um, and that the section you referenced does talk about enforcement provisions. And And it just it indicates how the city would enforce violations of the code. And and the criminal component was removed, but it can still be enforced by administrative citation or other civil nuisance abatement type actions.
Yes, and I I think this is the section that we should talk about because it's talking about a landlord who violates any of the provisions of this article shall be liable for civil damages for each provision of this article that the landlord violates. And for each instance in which the landlord violates a provision of this article, does that talk about, or does that intent mean that someone could civil is take civil action against the landlord for their violation of their obligation to comply with the ordinance with the city?
Yes, this ordinance gives the city the right to bring in action. It also gives a private right of action to a tenant to bring an action to enforce it in civil court.
See, and and that's what I think we've we've got a problem. I think we should have some some agreement that, you know, protects the person that's providing the data. And rather than saying, here's a flag, wave it and open the door and say, here's an opportunity to sue the landlords. It just doesn't seem like that's what we should be doing with with the language, the way I I read it. So I I think I think we should have some consideration of what is the right wording? If you're gonna do this, I wish you wouldn't, but if you're gonna do this, I think that we need to be considerate of the data release from those that are property managers and how they are protected.
Okay. Nazanin, I see your hand went up. Did you have a comment on Ed's question?
Yeah, so that language for the private right of action is not intended to give tenants a private right action related to anything that arises out of information being inaccurately released or anything like that. It's it's simply intended if the landlord either fails to register or fails to pay the registration fee, then the tenant can bring in action to enforce either of those provisions. It is not anything beyond that. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, so why do we feel the need to list that the tenant should have that ability? Wouldn't that be the city's position that we would do that?
Many ordinances provide both the and the recognition that the city attorney is not always going to have the capacity or the ability to bring in action on behalf of every single tenant. And so that is the reason why it provides for a private right of action for tenants to enforce these requirements.
Okay, thank you. To to the council, I would just propose that maybe it should be rewritten where the citizens have a right to petition the city. Their complaint should come to the city. And then we would take action from there.
Yeah, so so the background on this one was that we wanted to ensure that there is an option to make make it known to to the city for creating the rental registry that there may be landlords who have not registered their apartment, and so we wanted to make sure that there is a way of connecting with us and letting us know what's going on because we as a city cannot really, despite all the good ideas that Mr. Carter had here, enforce eight thousand units on a day to day basis, what's going on there, that that is simply not possible. So that was basically a redundancy that we put into the ordinance.
Okay, to state it another way, too, if councilmember Smith's line of thinking were pursued, it would just be to delete subsection E from the draft ordinance, and it would just leave the enforcement and remedies with the city.
Okay. I saw councilmember Hafizain go up.
Yeah, first of all, thank you to all the public who spoke. I really appreciate it. So just wanted to begin by sharing, I am a mom and pop landlord. I own, my wife and I own one property. And I personally would have no problem participating in a rental registry. I really don't have any problem, and I would not have any problem. But that being that being said, yeah, I've also, I mean, I've been listening carefully to try to understand the concern because, again, as a landlord myself, I would have no problem. In fact, a lot of that information is shared publicly on my Form seven hundred. So I just don't really fully understand. As far as rent control goes, again, that's a whole different question. I mentioned last time, I do have some concerns about that. Not saying I would never look at it, but this is not an any indication. You should not assume that this means I would support rent control. Okay, I do see some valid purpose to this and some services. First of all, legal, legal services that could be provided to both landlords and tenants that I think would be helpful. Information. So I think there's a lot of folks, both landlords and tenants, who don't necessarily know what what the current current laws require of them. And I think a lot of problems develop in landlord tenant relations because of that. One or other, both parties don't always know. I also think there is value in understanding this market. We really don't, we we make guesses about how many units we have, but we really don't know. Yet we're in the midst of a housing element plan where we need to plan for how many units of this size, how many units of this at this price point. And a lot of that is real guesswork. I also think there's potential benefit in monitoring legal sort of conformity. So we have a lot of inclusionary units in the city that are privately owned. Are they actually being rented at those inclusionary affordable rates? We don't know. This will let us know that and and ensure that they are properly priced at those inclusionary rates. Do we have landlords who may not be observing state laws, which, for example, limit us to raising rent once a year and and limit us to raising rents at CPI plus five percent? We don't know. But this will allow us to know that, and and I think encourage observance. Do we have properties that are being rented as vacation rentals? And we don't know about it. And, you know, basically, right now, we require, we rely upon the public to kind of let us know, and then we are able to investigate. And I think we do a pretty good job. But I think this will let us know. I think those are all good things. And so to me, there is benefit here. On the other hand, I do want to say, I I do agree with Councilman Ed that when the community is sort of this upset about something, a large segment, I think there's also other folks who support this, but you know, when there's this much kind of division, you know, we should take pause and figure out, are we able to move forward and accomplish our goals in a way that will maybe bring the temperature down and show good faith? And that's why I I really hope there's space to have the conversation about exempting from being required to participate for, again, how we define what mom and pop is, I think is open to discussion. I would suggest maybe three units or less. And three units or less that are managed by the property owner. So I think that's important. If you're sort of using a management company, then I think we need to know, we that that's a whole different thing. We need to know. But if if that is not possible, if there's not a majority for that, at a minimum, I think we should look at Tom Reeves' request, which would be to exempt from requiring family to family. I just don't see really any public value in us having that information. It's a it's a transaction between family members. And I also wondered, his question, you know, how do you kind of exit this? When you have a car and you know you license your car, if at some point you decide you're not going to use your car, there is an option to essentially tell the state, I'm not using it anymore. So I do think and this maybe would be a question for Nazanin, you know, is there, is it, could we have an an option to sort of basically un-register? You let the city know, I'm no longer going to be renting this unit? As far as a sunset goes, I think one year, I mean, I'd be open to that. I I don't think one year is enough because that would just be a snapshot. And then we wouldn't be able to see it. Part of what we're interested in is understanding the market. We also want to understand the market over time. I would be open to maybe a five year sunset, and then at that time, a council could pick this up and decide again, is is this still of value? But for me, the big thing would be, I really hope we can have a conversation about how do we bring the temperature down by exempting mom and pops? So thank you very much.
Was there a question in there around? Gosh, I'm trying to remember what it there was a question you were directing to Nazanin?
Uh, yeah, there was. Oh, gosh.
Registering and family to family.
That's correct. Right. Thank you. Thank you, Chrissy.
Yeah.
That was directed at me, right?
Say that one more time and
That directed at me.
That that is passed to you, or Chrissy could help too, maybe.
No, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure I'm not
Yeah, no, you're good.
Person. So as far as the family to family rentals, if we're talking about where there's actually an established relationship between a landlord of land, an established landlord tenant relationship between family members, sure, that is definitely something that could be exempted. If we're talking about the situation we were at the last meeting where you know, someone is just contributing to the household's funds in some way, and there's not that formal relationship, this I will repeat, this ordinance is not intended to cover that situation. But yes, you you certainly can exempt, you know, if you're renting to a spouse, I don't know why you would be, but if you're renting to a spouse, a child, you know, grandchild, those can all be exempted from the registration requirement and the payment of the fees. So as far as how one exits the rental registry, right now, the ordinance requires a landlord to update or amend their registration once the occupancy status for the unit changes. And so certainly, this is this is really more so going to be a technology question for whoever the the ultimate vendor is for your database, but there should just be some way where if the reason for the change in the occupancy status is removal from the rental market, that that could just be checked off, and then it becomes, you know, we no longer get billed for that, you're removed from the list. So that's really just a a technology question, but there is a way right now or a requirement that you change your occupancy status within thirty days after that status is changed. And one of the reasons that could be listed on there is removal from the rental market.
Does that satisfy your your question? Okay, perfect. All right. Who wants to go next? Get out. Councilmember Garcia.
So I I think something I'd like to confirm, just so that we're one hundred and fifty percent sure is that names of individuals would not be shared publicly. Well, I understand there's two databases. One is for internal use, the other one external. So if I understood it correctly, names of individuals would not be shared publicly, and if that's the case, then I'm good with that. I'm hearing a lot of requests from our folks here tonight that requests to basically take this ordinance, rip it up, put it in the trash. And I can respect that. I I understand the the frustration. I understand where some folks are coming from who agree with with the idea of just tossing out the ordinance. But I also want to share that in my daily communication with constituents, I'm also talking to folks who are really struggling with housing in the area. Struggling with those rent hikes that are just crazy for them. I mean, they're struggling already. And when they get these these rent hikes, I mean, it basically puts them out on the street. So I I get what some folks are saying, to toss out the ordinance. But if we're entertaining that, then what is the solution for the other segment of the population that's really struggling also to stay in their homes? And that's that's what I struggle with. How do we get both our our landlords and tenants in a place where we find that that sweet spot that works well for everybody involved? And I hear a lot of comment about putting tenants and landlords against each other. This registry is not doing that. That's already happening. And it's already happening because of rent hikes, because of other reasons that, some of which we've heard tonight and that I've heard from constituents since I've been in the seat. So it's this rental registry, the way that I see it is really a tool, at least for me, to get a better understanding of what we're up against. Will it lead to rent control? Possibly. I mean, that's it's it's not a secret. We've expressed that the the implementation of this registry will lead to better design of policy. Policy could be rent control, but it doesn't have to be that. And I also have some reservations about rent control because it's not a cookie cutter tool. So we really have to be diligent if this goes down that route. And of course, there will be opportunity for our our residents to voice their opinion about that if it gets to that. Councilmember Smith shared that, you know, the neighbors know the answer. I completely agree with that. But I think it's also important to state that all the neighbors know the answer. So, you know, when we're hearing just from the overwhelming segment of landlords, that's not the complete picture. So we also have to keep in mind that we have a population of about thirty thousand and that we have to hear from every single one of our constituents.
So I do share with my colleague the same as far as being able to appreciate everyone's voice here tonight and who was online. But even as my colleague just shared, Councilmember Garcia, there are a lot of voices that are being heard tonight, but there are a lot of voices that we have heard that aren't here tonight. And so I I think it takes a village, and that's really important for us to understand that this this is not to to pin anybody against the wall. This is not, this is not, this is not a a policy to put an ordinance in to to see how we can take care of the landlords in a bad way. This is not to penalize anybody who's doing right. I feel like this is a good way to be able to ensure compliance. I know we have other pieces, I think, that Councilmember Smith was talking about. We're building inspection and all these other pieces of compliance that come into to order when we talk about the rental registry. We talk about being able to track the information. We don't have a snapshot. We're even guessing at eight thousand. We have no snapshot of what we have. So even when we talk about housing elements and everything else that's coming even later tonight, we don't even know where to start when you're talking about rentals, because we never had a snapshot. So part of the rental registry for me is also about tracking the information about it, but also you end up having services that are dealing with landlord and tenant disputes, being able to help even market different other pieces. And you're talking about fifty dollars a day. That's thirteen cents. I mean, fifty dollars a year, that's thirteen cents a day. And so if you split that with the with the tenant, you're talking about six cents a day. So I mean, really, it's not about the cost, I don't think. I mean, so I'm trying to hear and understand that it's more about the privacy or what it's more about for the landlords. I've been a landlord before. Um, I've been a landlord before, so I, I understand where you're coming from as well, not here in the state. Uh, so I, I, I myself would always want to make sure that the information can be private to a point. But some information that I gave as a landlord was public, just like I believe councilmember Hopper was talking about on the seven hundred form. We have to, it's, it's public information anyway. So the tenant's information is not being out there. So it's not like you have to worry about, oh. The tenant's gonna come against me because I'm putting their information out. The tenant's information is not, not out there. Uh, the exemption, I think is important to look at. I do think that. Um, Tom made a really good point about the family to family. I, I, I like that idea. That's important. Uh, to be able to have those who are renting from family members. That's a different story. That doesn't help our snapshot. So that makes sense to exempt them from the registry because that doesn't help the snapshot of what our rental market looks like. Um, I'd like to see more information talking about the mom and pop because we talked about that a lot, of what that definition would look like. Um, so from a, a, a perspective of the, from the attorney. Mom and pop, is there any type of definition in, in the legal of ordinance of what we have already, um, not here in this ordinance, but in general?
We, we could draft something. I think councilmember Hopper suggested ownership of three units or, or less or something along those lines.
But is that three units of less that are not managed by property management? That's, that's the question.
That, that was his suggestion for a definition. Um, I'd have to ask Nazine what she thinks on that.
You want me to address that now?
That, that would be great. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I think, uh, that would be fine. I mean, one other thing that could be done is that you could require. Um, in order to address the LLC issue, um. You could require that a small property owner who is exempt is a natural person. Um, and so. That is what that means. A natural person who owns three units within. Uh, three or fewer units within the city of Monterey. Um, is one possible definition and say that if it's owned by an LLC or. Um, whatever else, whatever other type of entity that, that would not fall into the definition of small property owner.
Okay.
I, I would. Just say that we'd probably want to check too, though, because I, I am aware that it's not that uncommon, just even if you own one other rental unit to have it. In an LLC. Uh, so that may not achieve what you're looking to achieve. I think we need to explore that a bit more and maybe come back with some. Options for the council to look at it. Probably isn't something we can craft on the fly right here.
Okay. Yeah. But yeah, that would be a question for me there. Um, I'm okay with the sunset for five years myself. Um, I, I'm, I'm the same way. One year is, is not long enough to do anything. Um, you're in the, in the whole purpose of getting a snapshot to have, to know what the rental market is, you're not going to figure that out in one year's time. Because anything new takes time, though it's not going to happen just automatically in one year. So. I'm, I'm in favor of the sunset for five years. I think that's really it. I think the main thing is, is that. Really understanding that the rental registry for me, I'm speaking for myself. Is about the rental registry, getting a snapshot of what the rental market he is here. We have no idea and you cannot start, I think, uh, councilmember Hopper was talking about, uh, that as well. You cannot start something or know what your city needs, and that's what we're here for, to be able to help the city with their needs and everybody's needs, right? So even if you get one person's needs, doesn't mean that it's going to satisfy the other person. But we have to understand that we all live here together. So it's not just all of what the landlords want, or all of what the tenants want, but we're working together in this. And so we are listening to everyone, not just everybody who, who spoke tonight, but others who spoke, who are not here tonight, that spoke with us. Prior to coming here tonight.
So you had mentioned, uh, Dr. Barber, you had mentioned about owning a, uh, being a landlord before and it, and it triggered. Um, a comment that Alan had made when he was speaking about being a landlord. And if I understand correctly, your property, could you clarify?
Yeah, just for clarification, it's not in the city of Monterey. So.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to have that clarification for the record. Oh, Nazine, sorry. Um, I see your hand.
Yeah, no worries. Uh, I think that councilmember Garcia had had a question about tenant information at the beginning of his comments. That I just wanted to address really quickly. Um, just to make clear that tenant information such as the names, um, or gender. Sex, uh, age are not even being collected, let alone. Um, being publicized that the ordinance is not drafted to collect that private information about tenants. And so. Even if a Public Records Act request were made, that. Information is not going to be within, um, you know. The data, the city's database, and so it would not in any way be released. Um.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification. Um, so a few questions. There was a couple of comments in regards to, um, this being a fee as opposed to a tax, and this is actually a tax. And so I'm hoping that. Um, staff can help clarify. I'm going to need you here. Um, I was just hoping that we could clarify the difference between a fee and a tax. And why did we go with a fee, um, in defining, um, the, the charge here?
Yeah, so, um. This is, is, is. I, I cannot, um, speak for how people feel about it, but this is part of cost reasonably borne that the California constitution allows cities. To recover as cost. And, uh, it's again, cost reasonably borne, which are fees. The council can set the. The fee schedule on this, uh, which is the council can select to recover a hundred percent of the cost, fifty percent of the cost. Or can fully subsidize those fees, but, um, these are not taxes. Uh, they are. Uh, recovering of cost reasonably borne, and I think it's Article thirteen of the California constitution that defines that. And makes a difference to taxes. So Mr. Carter, that, that is my answer to you.
Okay. In regards to the idea of. Exempting. Mom and pop. And again, how would we define that if it's less than three or less or. Um, and, and then not including those that are being managed by a property management company? How would we determine whether or not a unit is being managed by a, a property management company? And I just, that's a, that's a question for anybody on the staff or.
Uh, it, it's, um, basically first self-reporting and then you would basically require us to. Do random sampling and see if, if that is correct or not. So we have to. And then again, how are the property management companies playing with us? How would they say yes or no? So it, it, it boils down, some of the concerns that the public has addressed, that the council is, is weighing here right now. Is, is really also a challenge then, how, how would you like this to be managed and forced monitored? And it becomes, the more exceptions we carve out, the more difficult it will be really to enforce it. And, um, uh, the, the attorney and I, we just spoke about this family. Uh, exception, uh, which, which sounds all good and fine, but we are creating again, an ordinance that. Deals with what? Fifty people in the city, a hundred people in the city? Uh, they, they, uh, again, is it worth it to, to carve out those, uh? Exceptions, yes, uh, council, you can absolutely say that and that makes. It's part of quality of life to look at, at, at those topics as well. But again. What is the, 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 um? What is, what is it that staff is involved to ensure that? Um, this is, is, is really a family member. You can ask the same question, you know, is it a family member or is it? Is it a friend that you know from someone who is also willing to, to help you out in the house and then it becomes a family member? So how do you do that? Do you look at the same last names if the last names are different? When, when it becomes a family member? Um, not a family member. So again, you can figure that, we can figure this all out, uh, but is it really, um? It, it, is, is this something that, that council wants to weigh right now as well? From a sunset perspective, uh, if I may weigh in, five years seems appropriate in, in my opinion. Uh, in order to create a baseline, uh, keep in mind that rents, uh, are increased when the renter leaves and then. The, the next, uh, renter goes into the apartment. It's not part of, of renter red, uh, of the rental restrictions. So you can start a new baseline. So. You don't have this within a year because most of the leases are one year. And, and then renters either leave and the landlords adjust, or the landlords comply and raise the rents by ten percent, or they don't comply. That would be given to us in the rental registry. So again, I think five years appear, appears to me. An appropriate sunset also. It allows us to, to reset and say. Uh, uh, and find out, did it really do what we want to do or is, is this? Um, uh, statistics that is being shared from, from Seattle, is this something that is happening here as well? Uh, so, um, again, I think a sun, the sunset is, is, is a good suggestion. I feel one year is too short. Five year intuitively sounds good to me. I think we also will probably see a tendency after three years or so.
Okay, um. So I'm, I'm asking a few additional questions because I, uh, based off of feedback, um, that we had received an email and, and in, in the public. So. Um, there was a suggestion that we change the wording. So that it says landlords and tenants will split the cost of registration evenly with fifty percent fees passed through the tenants to read. Landlords may pass up to fifty percent of the registration fee to tenants. So I'm not sure if that's a small change that is necessary or, or we can make. If a landlord just wants to eat the entire cost and not have to deal with the burden of splitting it. Is that something that would need to be corrected in the ordinance?
I, I'm going to double check. It could be, but I thought it was permissive in the first place, but let me double.
It is. It says a landlord may recover up to fifty percent of the rental inventory fee excluding any associated late penalties from their tenants.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that clarification. Um, and then the next one is. So I'm just, this is what the, the message said, to the extent possible, fifty percent of fees passed through the, uh, to tenants will. Be itemized on their rental invoice statement to read. Landlords who pass on up to fifty percent of the registration fee to tenants must be given written notice itemizing this fee. But I'm assuming it's maybe something similar where it doesn't.
Right.
Require the landlord to provide the invoice. It's just saying.
Right.
That if you do it to the extent possible.
Right, because not all landlords invoice for, as a matter of routine.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Does the ordinance prevent landlords from splitting up the cost of the, the tenant cost of the fee? Up over the twelve months of the year? Can they recover that cost from them? Splitting that up over the twelve months or does it have to be captured all at one time?
I think it can be, I think it could be split up. I'll double check though. I don't see a requirement that it be collected all at once. It needs to be. Paid to the city all at once.
Okay.
Right? So they might have a reimbursement agreement from the landlord, but that's sort of.
Up to them how they handle that. Okay. Um, okay. I think those are my questions. Um, so. In regards to comments, again, I, I, I'll echo my colleagues. I appreciate the, the public comments and, um. Really respecting how. The fact of the matter is, there's just a difference of perspective and how we see things. And so we kind of seem to be getting. Mired into differences of how we approach the topic and it doesn't mean that we're not listening to the voices. I think that. Through the process, we're trying to find a way of finding a middle ground and, and in, in the end. Um, you know, sometimes everybody not being happy is, is the, is the right outcome. So I think we're trying to navigate that space here. Um, one of my colleagues had made a, a comment earlier about us listening to the majority voice. And I think it's no surprise why the majority voice. Is not necessarily renters. Um, we, we've spoke this time and time again, where renters are in fear of retaliation. And in fact, I have received a comment. Um, I saw a comment on social media. That, oh, there was a landlord, um, that stated. That they were recording every name of a person that supported the rental registry. So they knew not. So they knew who not to rent to. I mean, it doesn't help the situation. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost defining the problem. Somebody can feel the way that they feel, but that means that you shouldn't provide them housing. I mean, we can agree to disagree on, on topics. Um, and that exact comment is. Um, an example of why a renter would be afraid of coming out and speaking tonight. Why would they put at risk their opportunity to get a rental unit in the city of Monterey? If they're going to be targeted by landlords or property management companies. That are keeping track of who's making comments about them in the public. There was a comment made about the, our ability to be able to develop in the city and I just encourage you all that, uh, at seven o'clock and less than an hour. The council is going to be having a joint session with the planning commission and we're going to be. Hopefully, uh, approving our draft ordinance for the housing element. I'm sorry, our draft housing element. Um, to send to the state and that's going to look at increasing, um, density within the city so that we can. Create additional opportunities for housing construction. So if that is. Your, if you feel so inspired, uh, to help support the city and try to help fulfill those requirements for our community. I encourage you to join us tonight or submit public comment. Um, there was a comment about concern around transparency and I just. Want to be. I, I guess it's hard for me to engage in a conversation with the individual that had raised that concern, but, um, from my perspective. This has been nothing but transparent. Um, we've had, uh, a community, um, town hall on this. This is an ordinance. It requires by law a first and second reading. Um, we've seen, we received tons of public input on this. In the first and second reading and, uh, directly to us as council members that are in the public record for everybody to access. So. Nothing was done in a vacuum here. This was, uh, a transparent process that we're trying to engage with all community members on. There was also a comment made about, um, how either some are already getting. Lower rent than the market rate or that a, a landlord is offering lower rent than market rate. And I think that's kind of part of the point of the registry. You know, we keep hearing this comment about how this is going to lead to rent control and perhaps. An option that we see out of this experiment is that we find the rents aren't as high as. We're making them seem. If there's all these landlords that are cha-charging less than market rate. Then that describes to us a whole different scenario. So again. Um, as, as staff has indicated, the whole purpose of this is to create a baseline. Let's see what's going on here. We can only be empowered by data. And this is for all of us to be empowered, not just one group in the community. Um, and this gives a little bit of power to renters to be able to feel empowered around understanding. And being part of the community to help understand collectively together or how to solve some of the toughest challenges in our community. Uh, okay. So I think that's generally all my comments here. I know that there's. If I try to capture what I hear so far, um, there's interest in looking at a sunset. I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I think excluding. You know, mom and pop. Landlords, um. I'm open to that. It looks like the suggestion from Alan is. One to three units with those units that aren't being managed by property management companies. Though my concern is it, it's just checking a box and saying that, yeah, my property isn't being managed by a property management company. That we're putting ourselves at risk of carving out some of the. Those units that absolutely should be part of it. So I, I do have some hesitancy, um, with that portion of it. I, I am more open to this idea of, of renting out to family. If we want to include that in there, I'm open to that as well. So I think that, that captures the feedback that I've heard so far. I'm not sure if there was other parts that I missed that. Were proposed to be included or excluded from the, from the ordinance. So, because we're hopping.
So it sounds like we're sort of moving towards some consensus for, I think, maybe a five-year sunset. With respect to, um. You know, exempting mom and pops, I do hear your concern. I mean, in terms of just the pure data and being able to get the best picture. And to be able to do it in the easiest way for staff, obviously having no exemptions would be the easiest way to do that. And would lead to the best data. But I, I'm just trying to be sensitive to the fact that. We want to bring along as much of the community as possible. And we want to do this in, you know, the least divisive way possible. And so that's why I think, uh, I still would recommend it. I did have another thought. What if it were for, again, for property owners? Of three or less. I did have another thought. What if it were for, again, for property owners of three or less that are self-managed? What if it's optional for them to participate? Uh, without having to pay a fee. There may be some who, like, again, if I did own property in the city, I would absolutely participate, and I'm guessing there are some who might. So that would just, again. Broaden the the database in terms of the numbers. Uh, they don't have to pay a fee, and it's optional. For those um folks. So that that was a thought that I had.
Is there a barber?
Also, um, talk about validation. Uh, maybe if you check the box that you you're in that exempt group that we're talking about possibly passing tonight. That there's another set of questions that would actually help to validate. I don't know what those would be. Maybe staff would know um by the property what what that would look like. So in other words, if I say I'm exempt because I do family to family. And that's the boxes has exemption, then automatically. Cuz I'm assuming this is the electronic, it would take me to another set of questions. That reminds me of the FASPA. Because FASPA is like, if you answer this question, then it it asks you some other questions to validate that question. And that's how the FASPA works. And to me, that's how I'm looking at this is. You could basically have. The exemption box, and if you check that exemption box, it asks another subset of questions that actually validate that 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 you are exempt.
Um, question. For those of us that are not at the university, what is FASPA?
Oh. Yeah, academics, we do do that. Sorry about that. So FASPA is the financial aid um application that all um students have to um. To fill out when they go to college.
If they want financial aid.
No, period. Now, for the state of California, it doesn't matter. You fill out the 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 FASPA regardless. And you don't have to take the money, but you fill the FASPA form out, but it it ends up going to a subset of questions to validate what you just said.
Okay. Um, real quick, I might jump to Hans, and then we'll go get you.
Yeah, so so I I wanna again help help facilitate that we find our way um forward. Um, first of all, definition of family is not easy. Uh, there are unconventional families, uh, relationship between a man and a man, a woman and a woman. Um, how do you find family if they are not married? Uh, so and again, let me. Say it again, we are we are talking about point zero one percent of of. Uh, the case that Mr. Reeves brings forward is 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 a is a case basically. Of of a exception of an exception of an exception we are talking right now about. Um, the other part is I like counsel also just to keep in mind when you talk about let's do this, or we can exempt that. This is the rental inventory that you're creating, and the more loopholes we create, the less. You have actually an inventory. You are just selecting, okay, those people now have to report on those others we are exempting. So again, uh, I I'm so I'm just sharing that observation with you. Um, uh, one of the things that this council or these councils that I've. Worked with over many years have done from time to time and say, let's take a look in a year again and see how it works. Uh, have we found? Can we find a way out of that situation right now? Is there a way of defining? Uh, the exemptions that we have discussed here right now. Um, and again, uh, my other warning for you is our advice, if you may call it, the longer we drag this out. Which is there can be a second reading of a second reading, and um those of you who have been on the council when we talked about food trucks. Those deja vu is coming back here where we had five or six second readings about food trucks. But in this case, the more we drag it out, the more the landlords that that you are interested in getting data and also in potentially. Looking at regulating with respect to rent stabilization, the more those rents will will go away from you. Uh, because people are getting in in the defensive mode. And and are preparing for for other measures. So again, I just wanted to not urge the council to do something fast and furious, but. That's another consideration you might want to weigh.
Okay, Councilor Garcia.
I was just gonna say, uh, regarding what um council member Barbara was saying, maybe a way to address it is going back to that idea of. Uh, describing a natural person. I don't know, maybe we can explore that a little bit more in terms of. Exempting mom and pops.
So so natural persons as a legal term of art means not a corporation or an LLC because. Under other laws, a corporation is a person. Um, so, yeah.
Yes. Is that? Did you have any other thoughts? Um. I I I I hear staff's concerns and 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 I and it does give me more pause, right? Because I I almost am not interested in in engaging in this exercise if we're gonna keep continuing, like, look at carve-outs. I think. Where this might be helpful is, let's say. If there is a field that we can include in the system that allows us to better understand. The number of units that are being they're owned by a property um. Property owner, right? How many rentals are there? So that will be, uh, I think something that would. Already be included. We already have an understanding of how many folks own certain number of units. Um. And then maybe we could add a a field that identifies if you you're renting to a family member. And just look at that data and see in a year from now, maybe have it come back to the council, and we can determine at that time whether or not it's worth. Um. Looking at exemptions then, but I feel like we're almost creating. Um, I don't want to create more more work than is necessary and for it to go in a direction that. Provides us less accurate data to create that baseline, to create that true understanding of what the market is um in Monterey.
I was just gonna say that I think if we went with the, you know, three units or less self self-managed as exemption, that would actually cover the family. Family too. We wouldn't need to have a separate family and family exemption. I mean, I suppose somebody could be running to ten ten different family members in ten different units, but. I don't think that's gonna be too common. So I think if we if if we had, uh, you know, if if we did have. The three units or less self-managed, that would actually cover. The scenario Mr. Reeves was imagining. The other thing, as far as. Somebody. You know. Using a management company. Um, and but then saying they're exempt and maybe not telling us that, don't the management companies have to report? Under this as well, or is it only the owner? So we would actually know. Uh, we would know. We would know those properties that are being managed by the management companies. Correct?
Well, that's so I see Nazanin's hand up, so maybe she can, and and I know the hand was up before your comment, so. Um, I'm not sure if you can answer his question first, and then maybe you can jump in with your other thoughts.
Um, sorry, could you repeat the question of of is it is it that?
Yeah, so the question is, um, we were talking about exempting self-managed. Small mom and pops. The concern is, I guess, would they lot would some of them misrepresent that and then not participate? And I'm wondering, wouldn't they be captured by um the by the data reporting being done by the management companies? Because management companies are would also be required to report, or is? Is is the ordinance only written for the property owners to report?
It's written as either or. Um, so. The landlord themselves can register or they can have their property owner register. They are, if you know, if the landlord is. Um, registering themselves, the owner, um, it. Will ask for information for any onsite or offsite property managers or property management companies. So I suppose that if they don't fill in those fields, then the indication is that they are self-managing rather than having some sort of. Um. Property manager do so.
Hey, other thoughts?
Councilor Smith. Mayor, I'm not sure we resolved um. Under enforcement. Eight dash zero two dash zero five. It was the questions we had with the city attorney. I don't know if there was a suggestion that came out of that, but I'm still uncomfortable with the language here under E subsection E. Where it's uh. It just seems like it needs a cleanup. Um. So if this moves forward, I think. We need to address what it is it should say because it's. I think it's overstating uh on the enforcement level.
Okay.
So I I guess I'm gonna make a motion and just see where it goes that um. Uh, so city attorney, if if we wanted to uh make some changes, would the would it be proper for me to make a motion to amend?
Uh. Yes, so you amend the ordinance that's before you, and then we'd come back again for another reading.
Okay, then my motion would be that we amend the proposed ordinance to add a five-year sunset. And that we um ask staff to amend it. Uh, to provide an exemption for self-managed. Uh, properties. Of three or less. Three or less units. And then I think we just. I mean, I I trust our staff will figure out how to do that in a way that works legally and. And to the best extent possible in terms of managing it. That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and then we'll open up for discussion on the motion. Um, Nazanin, I see your hand up again.
Yeah, sorry, I have just a few questions on um. The exemption piece and also a comment. Um, I think council member. Hafa had um mentioned that someone who um is renting to family would be covered by this exemption. Don't think that's necessarily true if they're renting to family in their like single-family home, and then they also own some. Larger property, uh, like a three-unit. Complex elsewhere in the city. So uh I just do want to flag that. Uh, which kind of brings me to my first question, which is a question I think I asked at the last meeting, but. When we talk about three units, are we talking about within the city or one one single? In one single complex on one lot? Um, I just want to be clear about that.
So I I'm imagining three units wherever in the city.
And then um, one thing that I heard council member Barber say is. Um, for the exemptions, um, this kind of seems to be maybe in contention with what council member Hoffa is saying, which is that. These individuals would not have to participate in the rental inventory whatsoever. Um, but council member Barber mentioned them claiming an exemption. So for these exemptions, would you want them to actually have to go into the system? And claim the exemption, or is it just simply that they don't, they can ignore this requirement? Altogether. Um, and then a second question coming out of that is that. The status, the exemption status of properties can change. For instance, if someone only owns. Two units right now, and then they go and they buy a duplex, then suddenly they're going to be covered because they're going to be. Um, have more than three units. So do you want to require them to register if they uh if their exemption expires in some way?
So speaking for myself, yes, if they end up buying more properties and exceed the three units, yes, then they they would be required to register. And I guess I wonder if you or city attorney have advice on the other point you brought up. Or any thoughts, um, you know, how you think it it might be best addressed?
Or if they're, yeah. The interesting part about claiming an exemption is that at least you still are getting some data. Um.
Yeah, so so they we wouldn't have, it wouldn't be part of the database per se in the sense of what their rent is, how big it is. Yada, yada, yada. But we would know that there is. A unit. That is exempted.
Right, you would know that a particular property owner had three units or less throughout the city.
I mean, I think. I think that might actually speak to your concern, Mr. Mayor, too, in the sense of we would still have a better picture of like the total number. So. Again, it's hard for me to understand, and we can't go back to the public, um, but I I feel like, yeah, maybe requiring them as. Uh, council one Barber said to kind of just file their exemption. That might does make sense to me.
And with the, I I guess as a follow-up question to that, would uh? Would the? System require them to identify what their exemption is, so they would identify that they are a landlord that has less than three properties and is not being managed by. And none of the units are being managed by a property management company?
I don't know if Nazanin's familiar with the technological providers, but that would be my read of what this action would require.
Yeah.
To ask the software vendor to make that happen.
Yeah, that's pretty common. Is the ability to indicate what your exemption is.
Okay. Okay, any other comments?
Um, it I think at this point it require a friendly amendment to the motion, which I'm back at the enforcement piece. Uh, I think we need to eliminate where it starts. A tenant may enforce the provisions of this article or any administrative regulations. Proclamated hereunder by means of civil action. Uh. I don't, I'm in uh. Let me get you the packet page uh. Packet page, let's write towards the end of the document. Packet page fifty-two. I I just think that the language needs to be cleaned up. I think it's clear that the city is going to use their authority to do the administrative process for enforcement when needed. Uh, I would never take away the tenant's right of uh civil action against the landlord. Uh, and they likewise should always be encouraged if there is some problem with health and safety to contact code enforcement. And we should know about that. So I just think that this area needs some work. Uh, but I don't want to have a statement that's almost encouraging the tenant to look for opportunities for civil action over this ordinance. So a friendly motion that I would ask for is to eliminate. All the way down in that paragraph. Uh. Just eliminate E entirely.
I guess I I I hear you, but I I personally don't feel comfortable including that because what I'm hearing from staff is that this is. Another part of. You know, helping with the enforcement and that the city may not always be able to follow up with civil enforcement. So. I I I don't, I just don't see this as a big a big problem, and it could potentially help with um compliance.
But isn't that the whole point that we want? We want the complaint, if there's a complaint that should come to the city, under the office of this new program with the employees. That would then connect with code enforcement and take the action. But by saying we encourage them to. Go file civil action against the landlord because there's no enforcement, it seems like they're missing a step.
I. If if I may just sh- share my thought, I. I see this as an avenue that would be. Least likely taken, uh, given the context of the entire conversation. Renters are in fear of retaliation. The idea of. Going to. Civil court over. Something like a registry seems to me not to be the most common way that a a renter would try to. Address the issue. Um, so just kind of my the thought that runs through my mind as as you raise the the concern.
You're probably right, but I just like to have a cleaner policy that, you know, looks looks like it's as accurate as it should be. Um, so I'm I'm hearing that there's probably no flavor for a friendly amendment to eliminate E.
Um. I'm. I in as much as I. Could live with the the motion, I I'm still having a little bit of trouble with it. Um. Because I think, again, we're we're moving the goalposts for. Um, creating. The baseline of making sure that we're collecting all the data that's needed. Um. And so. I um, did you? I I can pause. Did you have a thought?
I hate to interrupt the flow of all the thought processes, but. Maybe something that would address council member Smith's concerns is to require that the tenant do a thirty-day notice to like. I know you haven't registered, please register, and then if they don't by that time, then bring a right of action. I'm just sort of making this by analogy to um. A sequo case where the public can sue or, you know, anybody can sue the Brown Act, the district attorney can bring an action, or any member of the public can bring an action, but there is a. Pre-notice requirement. Maybe that's overly complicating things, but I I'm not sure if that makes council member Smith happier with that.
Uh. Happier is not really the happy is really not the right equation, but yeah, I'd I'd be satisfied with. That because I think that it there is a burden. Well, there is always the right for a tenant to have. Um, recourse for a problem, and I don't want to discourage that. But I think that they should have an obligation to put the landlord on notice before they take civil action. Yes, I.
I would be open to a pre-notice uh like a thirty-day pre-notice uh requirement. I don't know if council member Barber would be.
Um. Yeah, I don't have a problem with the pre-notice being added to it, but also if I'm understanding correctly. And staff, you can um correct me that part of the services that this registry is given is that they can do the landlord tenant. Um mediation, is that correct? Okay, so therein lies another path.
Yeah. Um, okay, so just going back on my, on my thought, um in as much as I can. I feel that that's a, a good alternative, I feel like starting from there gives me a little bit of pause. And I think that this is a good time for us to think about the big picture and make sure that we're. Um keeping our eye on the whole purpose of this, I think it, the idea of watering it down, I think in as much. Um Councilmember Hoffa, and and as much as I understand your point in trying to lower the temperature in the room, I. I think that by watering down. The, the policy. Takes away from the effect of what we're trying to do with those that are in a disagreement with, they aren't going to agree with it anyways, so. I, you know, I, I, not to say that. We don't include the comments and the feedback there, um though I think if we build it in in a way and we have this come back to us in a year and see if. Hey, is there a group that might be appropriate to um move out, so if I could ask. Um Clementine to just read back what the current motion is with the amendments.
Uh, yes, so it was going to be um. Adding a five-year sunset with a claimed exemption for self-managed properties of three or few unit units within the city, and then it sounds like. That friendly amendment was accepted to incorporate a thirty-day notice requirement. Um from a tenant to a landlord before they would bring an action.
Okay, and the. And the five years, yeah, um uh Nazanin, I see your hand is up again before I make my thought here.
Yeah, and I just, I I do want to note that um section H of eight two point oh two. Um that provides that the community development director will actually prepare an annual report. And suggest any recommendations, so that bringing it back in a year is sort of already built into. This ordinance, um if that helps people feel more comfortable with doing something. Different now and knowing that for sure it's going to come back in a year with potential recommendations for changes, so I just want to, I just want to just. Um point that out.
Thank you, thank you for that, so I, so I I, what I want to try to do is um see if we can do this. Casting a a wider net, so I I'd like to make a substitute motion um. And essentially keep the motion the same, though remove the exemption. So that's the motion, that's the s- the substitute motion.
But keeping the friendly amendment.
That's correct.
Say that again.
Keeping the friendly amendment.
Okay, and removing the exception of the three. Uh personally managed.
That's correct, that's correct.
So is there, is there a second? Yeah, it was, we 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 did grant, we did grant the friendly amendment, so so that was granted by the motion maker, thirty-day prenotice.
And and she's.
Okay, so we got that included, good, we just want to make sure that we follow everything, and now the mayor is suggesting a substitute motion.
Okay, so just, that's, that's on the table, is there a second to the substitute motion? Okay, so we go back to. The motion that's on the table, the motion died, the substitute motion died, so we're back to the motion, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, I, any opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes four-one. So Clementine, could you read the motion again, please?
Yes, so the motion is the ordinance as it appears in the packet with an added five-year sunset. Um and this requirement that um self-managed properties of three or fewer units within the city, they would be claiming an exemption. And lastly, um. That tenants would be required to give a thirty-day notice to their landlord to register before they would be able to bring an action against the landlord.
Okay, and with that, um can we move the? Motion view, can 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 that move to the evening? Okay, so do I make a request of vote? All right, is everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, and then we'll move to public comments on closed session items. So there's work, uh CS one is workers' comp, Mike Bruno, CS two is anticipated litigation, business license tax, Western Sky. CS three is property negotiation, lease extension, Monterey Bay kayaks, any public comment on closed session agenda items in the chamber? All right, let's take it online, please.
There are no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and with that, we will. We will adjourn for closed session and reconvene at seven o'clock for the, for the evening session. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. Uh we're reconvening and we will kick it off with pledge of allegiance and we'll ask uh Councilmember Barber to kick us off here. Thank you, Councilmember Barber, and we will move on to continued public comments for items that are not on this evening's agenda, so if you wish to speak on an item that's not. On today's agenda, feel free to step forward and share your public comments, you have three minutes.
Waterfront master plan was adopted by council in twenty sixteen. On February sixteen, twenty sixteen, and ordinance thirty-five thirty-nine was signed on March first, on page two, section four of the ordinance, it states. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect automatically after coastal commission approval, the entire planning area has been rezoned. Community waterfront without coastal commission approval, which includes the city-owned parcels from Camino Alastero to Park Avenue. Window on the bay priority A, which was zoned, oh, open space district and now permits construction and or development. Page thirty-six of the waterfront master plan states in part, the city charter controls lands designated as quote, open space, unquote. And voter approval is required for any changes with respect to this topic, city charter section two point seven five. The harbor land use plan was certified by the coastal commission in two oh three, and is the document that governs. All the parcels in the coastal zone from Slope to the Coast Guard Pier. My mother and I own the property at ten ninety-nine Del Monte Avenue, the Rota Ruta Building, which was rezoned from C two district. To plan community waterfront, which removes our conditional use of general commercial uses, which is why it has been sitting vacant for so long. And the financial damage is horrendous. The harbor land use plan states on seventy, page seventy-one, the uses for the East Cattellus property Figueroa to Camino Alastero. And separately states privately owned properties between Camino Alastero and Slope. Shall be designated commercial with the principal permitted use of commercial visitor serving. And a commer- and a conditional use of general commercial uses. The waterfront master plan map on page sixty-four shows staff has now combined the East Cattellus property. With Monterey Bay Park into one area. Figueroa, from Figueroa to Park Avenue, and now our uses are those of the East Cattellus property, which are public restrooms, a bait and tackle shop, etc. I respectfully request the waterfront master plan be placed on the agenda. For discussion and ultimately rezone every parcel back to its original designated district. Until the plan is approved by the coastal commission, and any projects that have been approved between Camino Alastero. And Park Avenue be rescinded as the harbor land use plan prohibits any new buildings in this area. Page seventy-four J one, the waterfront master plan affects every business owner on the wharves. When the true governing document is the harbor land use plan, I'm not questioning council's decision to adopt the waterfront master plan. I'm questioning staff implementing and rezoning the planning area prior to coastal commission approval. Which was a condition of the ordinance. Oh, perfect, thank you.
Louise, I have a quick question for you, did you try to come through the back door and it was locked? Okay, just want to make sure we get that, thanks Clementine. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak to items that are not on this evening's agenda?
Yes, thank you, mine, oh, I'll let her start the clock. Hi, my name's Tavon Kinison Brown and I'm actually a former employee here, um but I want to um invite you to an event that's happening in uh. Um my neck of the woods right now, Laguna Seca Park, it's called Dance for the Rescues, and my wife created this uh. Between twenty-ten and twenty-fifth, twenty-fourteen, and we did five big events right on the Monterey Plaza. Right on top of the tunnel where we combined. We combined her fitness uh group and all the exercise groups to raise money and pledges and fun. Have a fun time on the plaza for um animal rescue groups, and in those five years, we raised about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And it's really good, it was a good infusion of good energy to the animal rescue groups, because often that's very unthankful. You know, you're already caring for four dogs and you realize someone's at. At harm, um I'm going to try to do this uh dry-faced here, but my wife passed away three months ago. And there was a ground swell to, hey, Dance for the Rescues, let's do that, let's have another event. And it's such a reflection of her love and giving that it's really great, and I went ahead and I rented. Laguna Grande Park, and we're going to have this event, and initially we were going to share the money back with uh Animal Friends Rescue Project and Peace of Mind Dog Rescue. But since then Maui has happened. So I consulted my, my higher consultant, and she would want to do the greatest good with greatest need. And do it with fun and energy. And so the second Sunday of which the city of Monterey, the county of Monterey and city of Seaside have declared. Of animal support, animal rescue day, the second Sunday in October, that's when we're having our event, so I'm just reminding Seaside, Monterey. And the county that if they want to join or table, provide resources or. You know, help, help, help out Hitchcock groups, you're welcome to walk in, there's no money required, thank you.
Thank you. General public comment for items not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the planning commission, I guess, just wanted to offer a quick follow-up. If it's okay to the item this afternoon on the registry. Um I think from the renters perspective, we all admire. And, and feel the field that the county, that the council has towards the the issues. And the one thing that I failed to mention this afternoon is that. I think this whole thing is, is, is being conducive to a lot of division. Between the renters and the property owners, and it's kind of a natural thing to happen. Given the sensitivity of the issues at hand, and and I think I want to congratulate the county again for doing the work, and I want to. Encourage everybody to just push forward with whatever decision you guys are going to make. It's imperative that the, the course of the housing situation, not just here but everywhere. Changes because it just keeps getting worse. The market continues to dominate and there is no, so there is no solution. You know, on site, anywhere, you look around and young people. Are not looking to buy a house anymore, in in just about everywhere in the country, so keep pushing forward, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on item or speak during public comment for items that are not on this evening's agenda? Take it online, please.
Tom Reeves.
Good evening, as most of you know, Senate bills nine and ten allow a property owner to subdivide their single-family residential lot. Into two lots and build up to four dwellings within that property. Now, if you're like me, you don't like the idea of unbridled growth throughout the city. Without any ability of the city to uh have any input into where that growth is going to occur. Now, there's an organization called Our Neighborhood Voices, you can look up online, they're at ourneighborhoodvoices.com. All one word. And they have put together an initiative for the twenty twenty-four ballot. To repeal Senate bills nine and ten, and I would strongly encourage. You and members of the public to look up ourneighborhoodvoices.com and every Wednesday, they have an online meeting. That you can go to, it's very brief, it's very informative. Uh Senate bills nine and ten are not about affordable housing, matter of fact, there's no affordability requirement whatsoever, it just. Gives developers a blank check to subdivide properties and build more. More housing without any consideration for environmental impacts, one example that they put forth was a. Very modest grandmother's type house that was scraped. A duplex was built on the same property, they bought it for one point seven million dollars. They sold the first unit for one point eight million, and the second unit they sold for two million. So that's an example of how this is absolutely not a solution to the affordable housing crisis we have in the state. My own opinion is affordable housing is going to be achieved through subsidies. Uh those of us who have the means should help to pay for those who don't have the means. And I'm okay with being taxed to help that out. Uh so I just would strongly encourage people to look up ourneighborhoodvoices.com, thank you very much.
Thank you, our next speaker is PK Difanbaugh.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, um. I've just uh wanted to say thank you for the city council. Uh and um the city manager, as well as the police chief for supporting Monterey High's. Homecoming parade down Alvarado Street and back up to the school, it's always one of the. Uh my favorite events of the year and the kids um take a lot of pride in it, and the community comes out and and uh waves hello and. Urges uh. Urges them to keep going in in their pursuit, so just want to thank all of you uh for making that happen, I know mobilizing that many people. Uh in terms of the police uh presence is not always easy, um but we don't take it for granted, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and our next speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, seven zero five. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. And my name is Lorna Moffett, and I just want to report um what I consider a really. Tragic situation that happened at Elkhorn Slough. Um and it is the cutting of two hundred eucalyptus trees that were over a hundred years old. And uh the Native Plant Society is so embroiled with the um. Removal of all non-natives that they actually uh always spray, they always spray toxic. Chemicals, they don't ever consider things like permaculture and other means to remove non-natives. Um and um these two hundred trees, each one absorbed. A ton of CO2 a year, and they gave thousands of pounds of oxygen a year. They also collected pollutants that are now proven to cause Alzheimer's and dementia. In young and old alike, this is probably why we're, so many of us are getting it. Uh from the pollution of cars, the iron oxide, and um so they infuse these. Uh pollutants into their leaves and um they uh kind of neutralize them. So all the passing cars now are going to go to the neighbors and um and and get into their brains, and this is a reality. And um also that spot is going to become a hotspot, and um at a hundred and four degrees. Plants stop photosynthesizing, that means they no longer give you, take in CO2, and they no longer give you oxygen. And they no longer give you dew in the morning, and this is happening in parts of Texas. So we can't afford, we need every tree right now, and this war on eucalyptus and the name of a invented pseudoscience. By Monsanto and the chemical industries called the invasive plant uh society. Is in part by the Leroy Jackson, who is the co-founder of the California Exotic Pet Plant Council. Here in California, and um he is a public relations man for Monsanto. So we really have to revere these magnificent trees. So we really have to revere these magnificent trees and save every tree that we can. And Monterey is so guilty of cutting down so many trees now, thousands of trees are coming down for every reason. And it's destroying us. So please, please be very conscious now and know that trees are the thing that can save us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there are no further hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you for those who shared during public comment. And we will move to announcements from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item was a workers' compensation item for existing litigation. On a unanimous rule call vote, confidential direction was given to legal counsel. The second matter was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.9 subsection D2 and subsection E3 in Re. Western Sky Produce LLC, which is a business license dispute. On a unanimous rule call vote, confidential direction was given to legal counsel. And the third item was closed session conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 5495 6.8. The property discussed was 693 Del Monte Avenue, which is Monterey Bay Kayaks. Agency negotiators Kimberly Cole and Jana Aldretti. Negotiating parties Cass Schrock with Monterey Bay Kayaks. Under negotiation price and terms of payment for lease extension. And on a unanimous rule call vote confidential direction was given to real property negotiators. And I do need to correct. Oh, no, it was that one. I'm sorry. It wasn't unanimous. It was council member Smith was absent. Otherwise it was, you know, majority vote. The rest voted yes. Thank you.
Perfect.
Sorry.
And then we'll move next to, we'll adjourn to joint special meeting and establish quorum for the planning commission. So with that, I'll ask Clementine to do real call vote of the planning commission, please.
Chair Dawson.
Here.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
President.
Commissioner Fletcher. Commissioner Freeman. Commissioner Latosa.
Here.
And Commissioner Silva.
Here.
So we have a quorum.
Perfect. And welcome to the planning commission. We'll move next to item number 18, review a summary of public comments received 2023, 2031 draft housing element. We'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Planning Commission. Thank you for meeting again with us. And in looking back, the first time we met with you here was in December 2022. When we introduced the topic, the work started long before that. And as soon as the numbers were allocated to different communities, we went out with an RFP and we started working with our team and our consultant in September 2022. So today is almost a year later when we really started this effort. Everything that we did was done in the public eye. It's documented on Have Your Say Monterey. Includes numerous public outreach meetings, numerous meetings that we held with various groups. It includes also a lot of documentation. And the package tonight in, in front of you, and I'm sure every single page was, was read and highlighted is, is voluminous as well. And you see basically how large this undertaking is very much driven by the deadlines that HCD in the state of California and Sacramento is giving us. So tonight I, I have the privilege of introducing our team again. And more importantly, sharing with you what this outreach effort and what the consensus is that we feel is, is reflective of the wishes of our community. We, we will hear also from a lot of members of the public that will speak, whether they live in the city of Monterey or in, in other areas like Carmel Valley or Carmel or Pebble Beach, they will certainly share with you how they think our community should look like. So your task tonight is, is one big task. Give me the order to submit the plan to HCD and allow HCD to review our draft. And with that, we will have still time to amend it. We will have still time to, to change some of the ideas. But tonight I really hope that after listening to the public, after listening to the planning commission, you, the council will allow us to present what we have right now in draft from to HCD. And I think what we are presenting is highly reflective of what we think is doable in this community and what community members also express they think is something that would fall within the shape and character of our community. With that, I give it to our community developer, Kim Cole, who has only four slides and then comes in with about 60 others. But I promise you, every single slide is, is exciting. And I don't say this to, I really don't say this to, to be funny. Every, every slide is meaningful and, and I thank you Christie and Andrew for putting that together. And I hope that the planning commissioner share the passion for planning and will appreciate that. And of course, the council does this in their sleep. So with that, Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Hans. Hans mentioned we started this effort regionally in September of last year with the regional housing needs allocation. And I just want to start at the very high level of how all of this effort was started. And one of the key decisions that's made is a decision by the state of California and then the regional government about the growth needs and housing for California. And that's passed down to the regional government level and then ultimately to the individual jurisdictions. I think the councils were well aware of in the planning commission, we received a regional housing needs allocation of 3,654 housing units. This housing element by law must plan for that development in the next eight year planning cycle. And one of the key factors that led to Monterey having a fairly large number was Ambag really looked at regional commute patterns and the ins and outs. And at that Monterey was a fairly large employment center. Compounded on top of that, this housing element cycle placed more of an emphasis on fair housing issues than previous versions, in my opinion. And so you see that our numbers increased because of that as well. Part of the housing element process though is also looking at our constraints and trying to make sure that the next 50 years of housing is put in places that will be sustainable and will serve those residents well. A couple of things to keep in mind of our community. You know, we have three military bases in our city that's shown on this slide as well as MPC. So we have some fairly large institutions where it's difficult to prescribe development on, in those areas. As I mentioned, we also, our project team led by Christie Sabdo and Deatton Batia spent a lot of time mapping our hazard zones. The airport identified their hazard zones. Those are identified, basically the extensions of the runways, which are shown in yellow. We have very high and high fire hazard zones that are being, you know, promulgated by the state fire marshal down to the local governments. We have sea level rise areas and erosion and as well as liquefaction areas. So we have to keep all of this in mind as we're planning for these units. Just in regional context of Rena, the city, because of that process, received 18% of the, the Ambag region Rena. We're fairly close to unincorporated Monterey County in our number. And Salinas by far received the greatest allotment. So why consider new housing? And just, you know, why are we doing this? What's the purpose of it? Obviously to comply with state law. But I think we all acknowledge we have a housing crisis in the state of California. Some of the numbers that I, maybe the most telling number to me was one that our superintendent of schools shared a week or two ago with us. The 20% of the student population qualifies as homeless in the city of, or in the school district. And that may not actually be living in a car, but it may be couch surfing on somebody's couch and moving periodically, but they don't have necessarily a stable resident. We also see it in turnover in employees with various institutions as well. I think the school district reported that 25% of their employees turn over on a regular basis. Also, we really need to think about our large employment centers. Ryan Ranch. We have a very large employment center with no associated housing. We have the downtown Canary Row, Garden Road, Lighthouse areas. So we have some large employment centers. So we need to be thoughtful about where we put housing. And it's not really sustainable, in my opinion, to continue to rely on regional housing growth to support the city of Monterey. So we're looking inward. We're looking more critically inward than we ever have before. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Andrew Hill with Deatton Batia, who's been our lead consultant on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. And thank you to the planning commission and the city council for making time for this meeting tonight. Appreciate it. I wanted to start off with a, a look at our overall process. This is a snapshot of the process. And over the last year or so, since we started, we've come a long way. We started off in, in phase one with a series of community listening sessions to understand issues and the issues and opportunities that need to be addressed through the general plan update. Then we moved into phase two where we conducted an extensive community wide survey and pop up outreach to explore different alternatives for addressing local housing needs and, and accommodating new housing in view of the natural and manmade hazards that are throughout the city. And then in June of this year, and at the end of phase two, we met with you all to report out on the survey findings and to receive direction on housing sites and key strategies for the general plan update. And then on the basis of the input that you gave us at that June meeting, we then prepared a full draft housing element and released that for public review and comment at the beginning of, at the beginning of August. And, and so in my presentation this evening, what I'd like to do is provide you with a, an overview of the public review draft that was, that was released at the, at the beginning of August to summarize the community feedback that we got on, on the draft housing element. And then to receive direction from you on any necessary revisions to the draft housing element before we send it up to Sacramento to start the 90 day review that's mandated for, for the state. I want to emphasize that this is not the end of the process because as Hans said, there, there's still the, the review period that needs to happen by the state. And following that review period, we'll, we'll bring the document back to the planning commission and, and then to the council for adoption. So it's not the end of the process, but it is an important milestone along the way. So let me go over the, provide an overview of the content of the, of the housing element. So the document is presented in two volumes. The second volume has a, has a lot of detailed technical analysis and supporting information, including an assessment of, of housing needs in the community based on a review of census data, an assessment of various constraints to housing, including economic constraints, environmental constraints and regulatory constraints. It also includes an assessment of, of fair access to housing for people from different incomes and backgrounds and a host of other supporting details. Volume one is organized into four chapters. It includes an introduction that outlines the legal requirements for the housing element and the organization of the document. Chapter two is a community profile that presents a background of, of Monterey, including information on demographics, on the local economy, on commute patterns and, and various environmental conditions. And the core of the housing element is really contained in chapters three and four. Chapter three is, is the sites available for housing and then assessment of the realistic capacity for new housing on those sites. And chapter, and chapter four is a, is the housing action plan. It's a program of, of implementing programs to facilitate build out of the, of the sites inventory and, and address barriers and constraints to housing. And so the, the housing element in general, and particularly this, the chapter three with the sites inventory identifies adequate capacity to meet Monterey's assessed share of the regional housing need. As Kim said, that's for a total of at least 3,654 units over the next eight year, eight years, and about half of them should be affordable to low and very low income households, making less than 80% of the countywide area median income. So the, the sites identified in chapter three are primarily focused in areas with concentrations of vacant and underutilized land. And these sites were vetted thoroughly with community input and also input from the property owners. They represent the areas with the best opportunity to accommodate new housing. And the site selection, of course, also took into account the various natural and, and humid and human made hazards at play here in Monterey, including sea level rise, flooding, wildfire hazards and airport safety concerns. Chapter three includes an area by area description of each of the opportunity areas, including identification of the sites that are available in each area for housing, a discussion of the various opportunities and constraints in those areas and a projection of the realistic capacity for housing on those sites. It's important to, to underline here that the city is not required to build those 3,654 units. The required, the legal requirement is for the city to make sure that the zoning map has the capacity to accommodate those, those new units throughout the planning period and to implement programs that facilitate the build out of, of that housing, of that sites inventory. The, also the state law establishes some specific requirements for sites that accommodate lower income Rena. These include that the sites need to be of sufficient size, so at least half an acre in size and not more than 10 acres in size. They should be free of environmental constraints. They should be close to transit and, and services. They should be served by infrastructure or, or have, or be planned to be served by infrastructure. And they should affirmatively further fair housing patterns. And the reason for establishing these more stringent criteria for lower income sites is to help ensure that communities identify the most feasible, the most shovel ready sites for lower, for, for lower income. Once that, once those sites are identified and the, and particularly the, the sites that are appropriate for lower income Rena are identified, then step two is that the housing, the housing element needs to identify the, the realistic capacity for housing on those sites. And that realistic capacity needs to be based on past performance here in the city of Monterey or in other comparable jurisdictions in the surrounding area. And the reason for that is to ensure that the projections are realistic and achievable. And so in order to support and underpin our capacity projections, we did a survey of recent housing developments in the city of Monterey and also in surrounding cities on the Monterey Peninsula that perhaps don't face the same water constraints as the city. And on that basis, we identified realistic density factors that could be applied in different areas of the city. So in the downtown area in the Alvarado District, you know, in the core of the city, the, the public review draft assumes 55 dwelling units per acre on those sites. Along the corridors of North Fremont, Lighthouse, Garden Road, for example, based on a survey of, of comparable sites and, and comparable projects and, and other jurisdictions and in Monterey. And we've assumed a, a range between 29 dwelling units per acre and 42 dwelling units per acre. And, and then in the Pacific Moonrest Cass area, which is immediately adjacent to the downtown area, we assumed a range of 16 to 29 dwelling units per acre. Based on feedback from decision makers in June, the site, the larger sites that are closest to the downtown area, the, the density range was bumped up there. So we, we assumed 29 dwelling units per acre. That's consistent with the, with the current zoning. But along Cass, where the existing development is, is a, as a smaller scale, we assumed 16 dwelling units per acre there. And so in, in view of all those assumptions, we put together an inventory which has a total capacity for 5,802 units. And that includes a sufficient capacity to meet Rena at, at all income levels. It also assumes development of 15 accessory dwelling units per year, which is based on based on the past performance of um uh in the city, um, plus a a little extra to reflect some programs that we've included in that in the housing element. Um, I want to point out on this slide uh what would happen to those numbers if we took out um develop a development at at Fort Ord. And as you can see, without Fort Ord, um, we would have a deficit of um of housing to meet the needs of low, very low and moderate income. The buffer uh uh for above moderate would be 21%, but that's a substantial drop. And so the point here is that uh what's planned at at Fort Ord is mixed-income housing, including market-rate housing, but also a substantial amount of low and very low. Um, and that's um, that's critical for um for um uh meeting Rena at all income levels. Um, the chapter four is the housing action plan. Um, and it is organized around uh six key goals, including uh increasing uh housing supply, um, removing barriers to housing production, um providing for fair and equal housing opportunity, of taking action to prevent homelessness and address the needs needs of unhoused people, um, continuing to promote sustainability and energy efficiency in residential development, and monitoring the effectiveness of housing programs to ensure that they um respond to local housing needs. Um, this is a very robust program uh of 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 implementing uh programs. In in total, there are 42 programs to be implemented over the eight-year period, and we worked very closely with staff to program them out, to prioritize and to and to sequence the programs. Um, but it's a lot to accomplish in in eight years, and it's a uh it's an ambitious program. Um, let's take a look at each of the individual goals. Uh, goal one is um about facilitating production of at least 3,654 um new units over the next eight years. It, this goal is supported by seven programs and 10 implementing actions. The implementing actions include uh establishing an educational workforce housing overlay that would apply to um to school district sites um in urban areas of the city and allow for um the the school district to develop uh housing for staff and teachers um by right, subject to objective standards that would be adopted by the city. Um, it includes a potentially pursuing a congregational overlay that would allow for churches in the community to um to build affordable housing if they wish on their sites. Um, it includes a a permit streamlining pilot project um that I'll talk about more about later. It includes uh a specific plan for the Fort Ord Ryan Ranch area in order to um uh foster development of a mixed uh a mixed-use village while preserving areas of open space. Um, it involves uh an update to the Highway 68 area plan um to plan for housing on a 50-acre site that's um that's owned by the school district, as well as um various other strategies to um increase uh housing production. Goal two is about reducing barriers to housing production, and this goal is supported by six policies and 11 programs. Um, the programs are uh involve revisions to city regulations related to parking requirements, um, thresholds for multifamily review, uh, the state density bonus. Um, these are all things that that are required for compliance with state law. Um, and also it includes some programs um addressing water supply constraints um by exploring options for diversifying sources of supply, and also adopting a water distribution policy that prioritizes um available water um for affordable housing developments. Um, goal three is about promoting fair and equal access to housing throughout Monterey. It's um, it's supported by five policies and seven programs. Key implementing actions here include programs to increase housing choice um for lower-income households in Monterey, such as uh home sharing and tenant matching, um, a local density bonus that would provide additional um debt bone, density bonus for projects that offer a large family-sized sized units or offer incentives for development of smaller sites that can be difficult from a financial feasibility point of view to develop. Um, and as well, also uh a slate of incentives for homeowners who build an ADU and deed restricted so that it's available for lower-income households. These um types of um of programs will uh in uh increase access to housing to people who maybe work in the community, lower-income um people who work in the community but can't afford to live here. Um, and so in that way, they would, they would further um uh fair access to housing. Um, also, uh, this goal is uh includes some programs around um offering, continuing to offer mediation and legal services in order to prevent displacement and um and discrimination, um, another fair housing issue. Um, goal four uh is about um presenting, preventing homelessness and um addressing the needs of unhoused people. Uh, this goal is supported by six policies and seven programs. Um, and in and some of the key implementing actions include continuing the multidisciplinary uh outreach team approach. Um, uh, adopting a rental assistance pilot program um to help to help keep uh uh at-risk, low-income uh renters in particular uh uh housed and prevent homelessness before it happens. Um, and then some uh other programs to um to help uh uh target the these type of issues as well. Goal five is about promoting sustainability and energy efficiency in residential development. Uh, it's supported by three programs and uh and three policies um that focus on uh energy-efficient building design, green building incentives and sustainable design. And then the final goal, goal six, is about monitoring the effectiveness of housing programs. Uh, and this one is supported by three policies and four programs. Um, and uh the key implementing actions here um would involve an annual review and and reporting to um to HCD, a a monitoring program for um ADU and and junior ADU production and um a development uh and replacement you uh development of uh replacement unit requirements, which means that um, any existing affordable uh housing that might be demolished or um or redeveloped would need to be replaced on at least a one-on-one basis. Um, and that's a, that's a requirement that comes from state law. So that was a quick overview of um of the public review draft housing element that was released at the beginning of August. Um, now let me give you a summary of the community feedback um that we got um during the 30-day uh review period. Um, so the public review draft was released uh on August 2nd and um the 30-day, well, 30-plus day comment period extended through September 4th. During that 30-day period, we held a a community open house. Uh, it was on August 7th um at the Monterey Convention Center, and about 80 community members attended. It was an open-house format, which meant um people can drop in uh anytime that was convenient for them, stay as long as they liked. We set up different stations uh around the room on different topics, um, including a a review of the of the needs, uh, a a deep dive into the various constraints um at play here in Monterey, an introduction to the sites and the key strategies, um, a detailed look at the fair housing programs. Um, and it was also an opportunity to get input um to to ser- to inform the safety element update. And the meeting served as the scoping meeting for the EIR, so there was also a station on environmental um uh issues and an opportunity for people to provide input on the impacts that will need to be um addressed in the IR and potential strategies to address them. Um, additionally, uh, every um owner of a property that's that was included um on the sites inventory in the public review draft received a courtesy notification. And we also conducted an online survey um uh of uh non-vacant commercial property owners to gauge their interest in housing. Um, of the owners who responded to that survey, about 98% indicated that they, they do, they have an interest in developing housing, so that was a very robust um a positive response right there. Um, additionally, staff during the um comment period followed up, had some follow-up meetings with interested property owners, including uh the school district, um, the Monterey Bay Aquarium montage, uh, the Del Monte Center and and various other uh owners as well to understand um their their interest and and uh their their priorities for housing as well. Um, during the 30-day uh comment period, we received a total of 77 letters. Um, all of these are included in attachment A to your packet. Um, they're organized by uh agency, by organization, and then by individual, and there's an index uh hyperlink to make it easy to access uh the content of those letters. Overall, um, the letters expressed um support for a lot of the content of the draft element. In particular, um, a focus, the the focus of the of the draft element on infill and on strategies for expanding a housing choice here in Monterey. Um, I would say that overall, we can categorize the key themes that we heard from the community into three buckets. Um, the first would be requests for sites uh to be added to the inventory. Uh, the second would be um a series of recurring themes, meaning multiple commenters um made similar comments. Um, and then the third bucket would be unique, unique comments. Um, so maybe one commenter had one um particular idea, and so I'd like to um walk you through the the comments by talking about each of these categories. Um, starting with sites to be added, um, there is a a property owner at um of the property at uh 1,045 Cass Street who is um planning to build a project of uh 12 multifamily units. Um, a formal application will be submitted soon. Um, and so uh if appropriate, we would um uh recommend that that site be added as a pipeline project to the inventory because it's a real project with a pending application. Um, that's likely to receive a certificate of occupancy um within the, within the planning period. Uh, the second is um 465 Tyler Street downtown. Uh, the property owners were at the um at the open house, and they um asked that their site be added um to the inventory, and they expressed interest in in developing housing on their site um during the planning period. And then a number of community members suggested uh the In Shape Fitness site um on North Fremont um be added to the to the inventory. Now, um, in In Shape Fitness is a very well-used uh fitness center. Um, it has a parking lot on Casanova Street that even in the middle of the afternoon is very well-used. Um, however, there is a big blank wall along the along the building facing North Fremont Street and a parking lot um immediately on North Fremont um that is largely uh underutilized. And so um the recommendation here um would be to add this site, but to assume that In Shape Fitness stays, and i- it's parking lot facing Casanova stays, but um development could happen on the underutilized one acre, roughly one acre portion of the site fronting um North Fremont. Um, now, it's not a prescription that development has to happen there. Um, it's rather a way of assuming in the housing element that that um viable business would stay, but the property owner would have the option um to develop a housing on the site um if if they uh if they so chose. Um, so I would say the the recurring theme that really rose to the top, the 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 topic that drew the most comments was uh the topic of housing in Fort Ord. Um, about 59 of the 77 comment letters received touch on this topic. Additionally, um, many people uh who attended the open house also um spoke about housing at Fort Ord, and um the city's received some late comment letters, um, even uh just last week, that also um touched on the topic of of a housing in Fort Ord. Um, significantly, there was a a letter from Land Watch um that contends that housing at Fort Ord is not necessary to meet Rena obligations um and expresses concern for the potential impacts, um, environmental impacts related to sensitive biological species, um groundwater overdraft and VMT that could result from um the construction of housing at Fort Ord. Uh, 56 of the 59 letters um that touched on this topic were form letters mirroring the the content of the Land Watch comments. Um, by contrast, I would say uh the attendees at the open house meeting um expressed, largely expressed support for housing um at Fort Ord, and particularly, there was a lot of interest in the mixed-use, the idea of a mixed-use village at Fort Ord, um, syncing up with the existing employment um at Ryan Ranch. We had a couple of people who um who thought it would be a great idea of housing for nurses and medical staff in close proximity um to um to those existing jobs at Ryan Ranch. We even had some people who work at Ryan Ranch who thought it'd be great to have a mixed-use village that they could go to lunch at. They don't have to drive um farther away. So there was um support um for that. But I would, and then some of the letters that have come in last week, including the um the letter from the American Institution of Architects um and others supported, um, expressed support for um for for this concept of housing in Fort Ord. But overall, I would say, as we heard with the community survey this spring, um, that there was not unanimous um opinion as to um housing in Fort Ord, but there was a real sort of balance of um of opinions about it. Additionally, during the 30-day comment period, um, staff took some time to um to delve more deeply into the um into the questions of feasibility of housing development or any development at Fort Ord. Um, and what we found is that there's one parcel in the northern portion of the site that's subject to deed restrictions regarding munitions and explosives of concern, the unexploited ordinance. Um, additionally, uh, regulatory reimbursement to federal and state agencies and remediation would be required on that site as well as on Boundary Road. Overall, the the permitting um and uh remediation process would take about 60 months to complete, and so it wouldn't be feasible to a to develop this northern um parcel on the site within the eight-year planning period. However, the southern parcels um could potentially be developed with housing during the planning period. Um, there's also a a question um raised previously um by Land Watch about uh the a settlement agreement um applicable to the site um concerning uh water supply from the Marina Coast Water District, and staff is still investigating the the current status of that um settlement agreement. But overall, here, in view of what we heard from the community, um, and uh in view of this additional research into the the feasibility of development at Fort Ord, the recommendation um would be to refocus Program 1A, which is about creating that specific plan for um for a mixed-use village on the site while respecting some areas of open space, um, to focus that uh specific plan only on the portion of the Fort Ord Ryan Ranch area that can feasibly be developed within the eight-year planning period, and then to recalculate um the housing projections for the area on on that basis. Um, and this is a map, and so you can see up in the, up in the north, there's this, there's the one parcel that um has those restrictions and would be removed. Um, and the the specific plan in Program 1A would be refocused on the, essentially on the southern portion where development is feasible within the planning period. Another topic, uh, recurring theme from the community comments had to do with parking requirements. Now, prior to the start of the housing element update process, the city had reduced parking requirements in the downtown and North Fremont areas as a way of um helping the financial feasibility of development projects. Um, and then additionally, in the public review draft, we've incorporated Program 2E um through which the city would reduce parking standards within half a mile of a major transit stop for consistency with state law, um, and also review opportunities to further reduce um parking standards. And we've incorporated Program 1C through which the city would offer municipal shared parking agreements um with affordable housing uh with with housing developments in proximity to a a city-owned lot or garage. Um, and and this shared, these shared parking agreements um would be a way of helping with the financial feasibility of 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 housing projects. Now, uh, in view of all that, some commenters um during the comment period suggested that the city could go even further in reducing parking requirements. However, throughout the process, including um during the 30-day comment period, we've continually heard voices um who who've raised um concerns and expressed the need to ensure that adequate parking is um continues to be available as housing, um as housing development happens um under the housing element. So in view of all that, the recommendation here um would be to continue uh with the programs 2E and 1C and assess their effectiveness over the planning period. Um, and then in the future, um, based on that assessment, um, consider options to um uh to go further if warranted. Um, another uh recurring theme had to do with uh permit streamlining. And so Program 1D in the public review draft uh would involve the city um implementing a a permit streamlining pilot project in the downtown area and the adjacent Pacific Munras Cass area. It would be modeled after the Santa Rosa Resilient Cities um approach, uh, which was adopted by Santa Rosa after the Tubbs and Nuns fires as a way of fast-tracking housing. Um, so this would be done on a pilot basis, um, and it would allow housing by right in these, in this focused area, subject to objective standards, except for historic um historic properties. Um, it would establish um an expedited permitting procedure to fast-track housing, and it would be uh implemented on a trial basis for three years. Um, now, some community members uh like this idea, but they suggested that the that the the pilot program could be expanded more widely to a more, to a wider geographic area and could offer um additional incentives. Um, but here, the recommendation would be uh to 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 try this Program 1D on a three-year trial basis, see how it goes, see what lessons can be learned um during the period, see um see how it works, and then on that basis uh after after the three-year trial period is over, um, consider whether it, whether uh it should be continued or expanded further. Uh, another recurring theme um that came from community comments had to do with uh employer-sponsored housing. Now, the, as I mentioned previously, the um the public review draft includes Program 1E, which would involve a an educational workforce housing overlay that would allow the school district um to develop housing by right, subject to objective standards um on its uh urban uh in infill properties. And some community members, having read that, suggested that a cop, a similar type approach could be taken for uh major employers in the city who might wish to develop housing on their properties. And so during the uh the public comment period, um, staff had conversations with CHA- And so during the, the public comment period, staff had conversations with Chomp, with the Aquarium, with the Del Monte Center to assess their interest in, in a potential strategy like this and to discuss the specifics. And so the recommendation here would be to add a program to the housing element, which would involve the city continuing those conversations with, with major, with major employers, understand which sites they might be interested in developing and what the particular constraints or opportunities with those sites might be. And, and on that basis, to, to formulate a strategy for promoting employer-sponsored housing for major employers who, who would wish to pursue that option. And then a couple of other recurring themes that came from the process. Something we heard particularly at the, at the open house had to do with rental assistance for seniors. So senior renters on a fixed budget, we had a number of people who were concerned. You know, they're, they're retired, they're retired, but they're living in a rental property and they're seeing the rents go up year on year. And so the, this kind of comment really emphasized support for Program 4B, which is included in the draft housing element. It's, it's a rental assistance pilot program. The city has identified about $250,000. It's available for, to support at-risk, low-income renters and keep them in their homes over the year period. And I think what we heard from the community was almost, was supportive of that program. Another recurring theme that we heard was, was the need for fire-safe constructions. And so some commenters emphasized the need for the use of materials and building techniques that would limit risk from wildfire. And this type of strategy will be incorporated into the, into the draft safety element that's forthcoming later this fall. There were also some unique ideas, as I mentioned. And so these are ideas put forward by one commenter. For example, there was one commenter who suggested that a, a form-based code that focuses on how the development would look, rather than any specific standards around how many dwelling units per acre. They suggested that as a, as a mechanism to facilitate the development of projects that are aligned with community expectations. MBEP suggested a couple of unique ideas here. One of, one of them would be, involve adding a mechanism to provide more flexibility for projects to meet the city's inclusionary housing requirements. That could include in-loop payments for, for small projects that might face financial difficulties in meeting the inclusionary requirements. Or it could involve a sliding scale that would, would require more, more inclusionary, more affordable housing from larger projects, but less from, from, from smaller projects. The, the, the gist of this, this idea is to provide more flexibility for smaller projects and help with the financial feasibility of housing projects. Additionally, there was a suggestion that the Program 3C, which involves creating a, a local density bonus that would be additive on top of, of the, of the state density bonus. With that program as, as incorporated into the public review draft, specifically targets small sites, which can be difficult to develop financially. And it also offers density, density bonus for family-sized units, which are of need based on the, the needs analysis. The suggestion here from MBEP was that that could be expanded to include parcels of all sizes. And then a, a fourth unique comment had to do with increasing, a suggestion to increase height limits in specific plan areas, but with a control. So for, I think the suggestion, as I understand it, is to increase the height limit and then also to allow certain projects to exceed that height limit so long as the average block height is, is not, is not exceeded. I think if I understood that, that suggestion that, that's how it would work. And so the, the recommendation here with respect to, to these unique ideas is, is, is to, to recognize the, these creative ideas. But again, as I say, the, the, the Housing Action Plan includes those, that robust speed of 42 programs. It's, it's a lot of work for, for staff to implement them all. And so the recommendation would be to maybe keep these ideas in the fridge, so to speak, and to assess the effectiveness of the, of those, of those programs and, and in, at a future stage, consider adding these, these additions and amendments to them. So that was a very quick look at the, at the community comments we've received. Let me now sort of summarize the recommendations that we've come up with based on what we've heard from the, from the community. So with respect to, to Fort Ord, based on the, the additional feasibility research that's been done and, and on reflection of the, the whole of the community comments, the recommendation here would be to, to focus Program 1A, that specific plan for the area, only on the 109-acre portion that excludes that, that one northern parcel and then to recalculate the capacity on the basis of the refined area. And so rather than the 2,100 units that were in the public review draft, the new projection would be for 1,660 units. However, because Fort Ord is important for ensuring a mixed-income development that would include some units available to lower-income housing, some units available to moderate-income households and also above, also market-rate housing. The, since the city is the property owner, the city could offer additional incentives to ensure that at least 220 of those new units would be for moderate-income households and at least 220 would be for lower-income households. That's more than the 10%, 10% requirement that's in the, in the, in the city's inclusionary requirements right now. But that would help the city meet RENA at all income levels based on the land that's available at Fort Ord in the short term. And then additionally, the recommendation would be to add those three sites that were suggested through the community process. However, the, there's also a recommendation to remove the Heritage Harbor site from the inventory. This is based on some discussions with the, with the Aquarium, who's the property owner. Aquarium staff did not say categorically remove the site. What they said, they expressed some concerns about constraints on the area because the, the Heritage Harbor site is in the coastal zone. And, and as we talked about the potential for an employer-sponsored housing overlay or similar strategy, the Aquarium thought that if they were going to put a site forward for that, they would, they would probably put another site that they owned before they would put Heritage Harbor. So in view of that, the recommendation is to, is to remove, remove Heritage Harbor. And as we pursue that, and if the council directs it, as we pursue a, an employer-sponsored housing program, to continue to work with Aquarium to see what site they might put forward in its place. And so here's what the revised housing sites map would look like with those changes. As you can see, the, the northern parcel at, at Fort Ord has been removed. Heritage Harbor has been removed. Parcels are too small, but those other three properties have been, has been added to the site. Additionally, there, I also wanted to point out that, Monterey's RENA allocation includes an allotment for 462 moderate-income units. And this, we had previously lumped the moderate and the low, and the lower income together. And we consulted with HCD staff on an appropriate mechanism for demonstrating capacity to meet a moderate income, moderate income RENA. Now, in some communities, you can, you can make a calculation. You can demonstrate that a market-rate housing, like a market-rate house of a smaller size on a per-square-foot basis, the rent or the sales price would be affordable to, to moderate-income households. However, in Monterey, because the housing costs are so high, you can't make that, you can't make that connection. And so we consulted with HCD staff on, on various ways to demonstrate the capacity for moderate-income housing. And so we have, we have a three-pronged strategy for demonstrating that. First, the city's existing inclusionary housing requirement requires that 10% of projects of more than six units make 20% of their house, of their households available for affordable housing, including 10% for moderate households and 10% for lower-income households. And so if we take the above-moderate capacity in infill areas and 10% of that, we could get some of the way towards those 462 moderate-income households. Additionally, as I mentioned, if we go with the revised capacity projections for Fort Ord and the city offers incentives for more than 10%, we could get 220 moderate units at Fort Ord, which also gets us part of the way there. And then additionally, based on consultations with HCD staff, that we are proposing that the Program 3C, which is that local density bonus ordinance, currently as proposed, it offers additional density bonus for small sites and for projects that offer family-sized apartments. We would modify that to, to offer additional density bonus for any project that offers more than 10% moderate. And again, the local density bonus is, is a strategy for targeting specific local needs. And so since moderate, since it's difficult to demonstrate the capacity for moderate income housing, this would be a third strategy that, that gets us to those 462 units plus a buff, plus a buffer. And so this is a look at, at the revised RENA table. You can see that it does include the, the revised projections for Fort Ord, 660 units. It includes, it removes the Heritage Harbor site. It adds a specific column for, for moderate households and it includes, it identifies that 10% moderate inclusionary requirement that would apply to above-moderate sites in infill areas. And it includes the local density bonus strategy for an additional number of units. And on that basis, that's a little masked out by the.
Click on more and delete, yeah.
There. On that basis, you can see that this, this sites inventory would allow the city to meet its RENA obligations at all income categories with a buffer. And the buffer is important so that the city can navigate the no-net-loss provisions of state law. That means, as I mentioned, this, the, the requirement is for the city to make sure that the zoning map has the capacity to meet its RENA obligations at all times during the planning period. If, for example, projects come in at less than the density that we've assumed in some areas, the buffer allows you to, to make sure that you can meet that obligation to, to, to have the sufficient capacity at all levels, right? So we're projecting, for example, 55 dwelling units per acre on every site in the Alvarado District. If properties come in at 45 and, and 35, you, you can approve them without worrying about running afoul of those no-net-loss provisions. So the buffer is a, is an important consideration. The next slide shows what the inventory would look like if we took out Fort Ord. So you can see zero units at Fort Ord and it shows a deficit of low and very low, but significantly shows a, a major deficit of moderate-income households. And again, as I explained, because of the high cost of housing in Monterey, it's difficult to demonstrate capacity for moderate-income housing. And Fort Ord is, is, is very important for making sure that the city can meet its obligations at all income levels. Additionally, staff is recommending some refinements to the Fair Housing Appendix. That's Appendix D of the public review draft. And the revisions would be to, just to clarify some details, some of the wording in that appendix and some of the references to, to the sources used. We've also added a matrix, a summary matrix at the end of that chapter that summarizes the issues that are identified. It's a rather long chapter, it's about 70 pages. And so this matrix is meant to help HCD's review. It summarizes what those issues are, what the contributing factors are, and it draws a link to the specific, specific programs in Chapter 4, the Housing Action Plan that are, that have been developed to ident, to address those, those issues. And again, this, this matrix is meant to facilitate HCD's review so they can see how the issues have been identified and addressed. And then we've also added an analysis of how build-out of this proposed inventory would improve fair access to housing. And that primarily involves increasing housing choice for lower-income households so that people who work in the city, specifically people in the service sector or the hospitality, hospitality sector and retail, who work in the city but can't afford to live here, would have more options for that. And then just a quick, let me go back. Yes, there's another couple of smaller refinements to pick up on some of the comments we heard from the community. For example, Program 1I would be revised. This is the program about revising the Highway 68 plan to allow for housing on, on that 50-acre site that's owned by the, the school district. The suggestion from, from a community group would be to revise that program just slightly to state that the county should also be an agency involved in infrastructure planning for that site, especially considering that the county is planning to accommodate their RENA in Tarpe flats nearby. So that, that made sense and staff would recommend that small adjustment. Additionally, staff recommends adding a new program to adopt an urgency ordinance that would prohibit storage facilities in the IR district. And this is especially on Garden Road in view of the water, water constraints right now. Housing can't be built, but these are prime housing sites. And so in order to protect them from going to another use, this program would involve adoption of an urgency ordinance. And then the third suggestion comes from community input as well. There was a suggestion that the Educational Workforce Housing Overlay, as envisioned, that program would, currently applies only to the public school district sites. But there's a suggestion that private schools who may want to participate could also be included in that overlay. And so staff would recommend that, that change as well. So then wrapping up, just quickly to look ahead at, at next steps. We're hoping tonight to get direction on any refinements needed to the draft housing element so we can incorporate them into the draft and send it up to Sacramento. As I mentioned, the, how, the Department of Housing and Community Development has a legally mandated 90-day review period. We're hoping to make those changes and, and submit it by next Monday to start the clock on that 90-day period. During the 90-day review period, we would circle back with draft, drafts of the land use and safety elements and also release the public review draft of the EIR so that those things could go through public review and we could have all of the, all of that wrapped up by the time the HCD comment period closes. And we'd bring all the documents first to the Planning Commission early next year and then to the City Council, the, for consideration and, and for adoption. And the important date here to, to note is April 15th. That is 120 days from the statutory deadline for adopting the housing element. And why that's important is if the, the city achieves certification of the housing element and adopts it within that 120-day grace period, the city then has three years to do any rezoning necessary to, to accommodate RENA. And there, there would be quite a lot of rezoning that's needed to do. So it's very important that we get, achieve certification within that, with that 120-day grace period. If, if we do not achieve certification within that, within that period, then all the rezoning would need to be done within one year, which is a huge task. So the, the, the important date for us is April 15th. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions and hear from the community as well.
Okay. Any questions? Who wants to start us off? Andrew Dawson.
A question for, for staff is, do the, do the housing numbers roll over at the end of the year? Can we, can we get credit for that?
Are you, are you on a mic? Just want to make sure that folks are online or can hear you.
So the question was, do the, do the housing numbers roll over either negatively or positively at the end of the, the end of the cycle?
Well, I guess if I'm understanding the question correctly, if there's, if the city doesn't build all those 300, 3,654 units, do we then have to continue to build out those units plus a new RENA cycle? Is that what you're asking? And I think the answer to that question is no. So they, for example, the fifth cycle, the city didn't build out all of its fifth-cycle RENA. That was not added, it's not additive onto the sixth cycle, although it's probably considered.
Betcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good presentation. I have a number of.
Do you have?
Yep.
A little cumbersome. Just a few questions, Andrew. I remember when we had our last joint Planning Commission-City Council hearing, we had talked about adding some opportunity sites, Heritage Harbor, Del Monte Shopping Center and La Mesa. And La Mesa was not included. And I was wondering what, what occurred.
It, it actually is included, but it was included as a pipeline project as opposed to a projected site. And the reason for that is because the military does actually have plans to build, I think, 60 units on the site. And so we, we assume that they will carry out those plans. And so it is, it is included, but it's on the pipeline projects map and list.
I see. Okay, that's why I didn't see it. Okay. On the site inventory matrix, there is a column that is labeled "density allowed", which is based on the base density of the zone district, but it doesn't necessarily. is based on the base density of the zone district, but it doesn't necessarily correlate with what a density bonus might be. And we talked about this. And I think in order to try to promote the density bonus, instead of having to have staff put enormous resources into calculating every single inventory, to maybe just have a, I mean, it could be just as simple as having a asterisk after that, and then at the bottom have a footnote that explains that this does not include a local density bonus or state SDBL.
I think we can do that. But that particular form is a, it's developed by HC, the form that's in Appendix A is, I think, what you're looking at. It's a, it's called the electronic inventory form, and every jurisdiction has to use exactly that form in the format. So I'd be a little hesitant about messing too much with it. Although there is a field for additional information, we could include that, or we could also include maybe a preamble to that appendix that explains what you're talking about, but I think we do.
And I, there was one unique comment submitted regarding the form-based code. And I wanted to get your opinion as to whether or not you and staff believe that a form-based code might be better or not as effective in terms of its correlation with objective standards.
I think the devil is in the details. There, you know, there, there's some examples of where form-based codes do have, you know, the exactly the benefit that the commenter is talking about. But there's also cases where the the form-based standards can be can be actually an impediment to to getting realistic projects built. I mean, there's several jurisdictions in Marin County that have adopted sort of form-based approach several years ago, and they're in the process of undoing them because they've found them to be unworkable. But that's not an overall comment on four-based codes. As I say, the devil's in the details. You really have to get it right.
And I would probably suggest that it's an interesting comment, but it would require enormous resources on the part of an overworked staff to implement this.
It would require basically redoing, if you wanted to do it downtown, it'd be basically be doing this specific plan.
One of the programs in the action plan dealt with ARC review, and I was curious to see what your thoughts are on this in terms of the language in Program 2C, basically states that the ARC will, in the future, probably focus their efforts on public safety access and disabled access issues, which to me seems more ministerial and technical than something that would need to be heard at a discretionary panel. Would that be something that could just be handled by staff ministerially?
I think the whole text, I don't have it in front of me, but I think the whole text of the program involves clarifying in the code that the ARC would would conduct its work on the basis of objective standards as opposed to discretionary review. Then I think there are certain projects that would qualify for, for example, for SB 35 streamlining may be exempted from design review, but not all projects as a blanket.
Those are my questions. Thank you, Andrew.
I just have the one question. You mentioned the settlement agreement with the City of Marina and Water. Does that mean that water could actually become available on the Fort Ord property for actual building, not just suggested building?
I don't, Kim, do you have any input on that? I think it's an.
So the Fort Ord properties that were conveyed as part of the Fort Ord reuse authority dissolution come with water for us. So we have an allocation of 64 acre-feet of water for that site right now. The water will be supplied from Marina Coast Water. When when Fort Ord was conveyed, the Army sold 6,600 acre-feet of water to the jurisdictions at that time. That is the water that that then was used to convey to all the different jurisdictions. For instance, the City of Delray Oaks got over 400 acre-feet of water in Monterey because we have really a relative small sliver. We got 64 acre-feet of water. So that that is, as I always state from the day, is that's a fact, and that's not disputed, at least not by us.
Well, it often.
So there's water.
That doesn't exist within the city.
That, yeah, there's water, and also it can be expected that Marina Coast Water also will have additional production capabilities in which they can add water to to that side as well, as well as a part of the water that, should it be then consumed on Fort Ord, will be part of water recycling. We have discussed that also with respect to then creating water again on the Fort Ord side with additional water through water recycling generated on that side. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Andrew. When I was always told when you write it mundane on topic, blind them with brilliance. I found areas I couldn't even ask a question of. When we describe in that first volume, the areas surrounding the city, the more areas you touch, the more internal work it is to work with those other agencies. And you forgot some. You did not mention Delray Oaks. You did not mention the airport, which the city has had some hands-on issues with. And you didn't mention the county. I don't believe you did mention the county either. But I think those are important to add to your report because it shows the scope of the complexity we're dealing with. There are cities in California that do not even touch their home county because they're all enclosed. Your comment about coming up with a 3,365, 3,665, and that they have to have a plan for it. That was not the impression the State of California employees gave at a planning commission training session I went to. Their comments were that the expectation was that you will build these. Now, I always know that the details are in the fine print. But that's not the impression the state was giving. And they were also, the very last topic on the agenda, they came out with a threat. And if you don't meet these, the state is coming after you as your city. So I just want to make sure that's covered because it's scary. It was scary then. Unintended consequences. We talk about consequences, but there's also, as a city goes through this process, are you identifying areas that need to be fixed to go along with this?
Meaning, for example, in land use element or?
Well, you know, I'm talking about, we're adding, what, 10% of the population increase? That's an unintended consequence that we don't have, in my mind, plans for. Are we tracking those?
Yeah, that's a good point. I think the the environmental analysis and the ER will pick up on a lot of that because we're required to look at infrastructure capacity. We're required to look at the capacity for schools, you know, whether there is sufficient park land in Monterey. But, you know, there's all these topics that we need to go through systematically as part of the EIR, and that will help to daylight any issues. And mitigation measures in the EIR can be structured as, as, you know, planning policies to be inserted into the general plan as well. So that process will help.
I've talked to a lot of people off of 68, and they talk about, it is an extra chore to have to go to a grocery store or a gas station. And I just think that part of the planning, we're developing the backside of Ryan Ranch is that we make sure that there's a grocery store. And some of the services, the primary services that the public needs, we got all kinds of medical, we're covered there, but not necessarily other things. And as the, they mentioned, one of them is places to eat. I don't know if Delaquan's restaurant is out there, but it's gone. Yeah. So anyway, is is there anywhere in this that we're mentioning the challenges besides this whole project that the state is putting on City of Monterey? The State of California, Highway 68 has had an F, I think, for traffic for the past 20-odd years. They need to make it four lanes because we're adding a lot of resources into development that we already have an F on. So I don't think they give an F minus. But that's an unintended consequence. That is, because it's really important to get people out of here. I've mentioned before that 20 years ago, we gave ourselves an F on evacuation of the peninsula in trying to come up with a plan. We're talking about pushing people out into the range areas and letting the Army get them water because we didn't have a highway system to evacuate the city, particularly with another 10%. And it's not just Monterey. It's going to be going 10%. It's going to be everybody else. You use the, on the parking issue, you use the example of giving him some kind of city facilities away. At a recent planning commission project, it was given to us an example. You have a young mother with three kids, six bags of groceries, and it's raining, and your parking space is a third of a mile away. It's one of those, how do you take a snake across the river kind of questions? Because a young mother is not going to be able to handle all that. So we got to figure out a way better than what I read. It would just, it just, it doesn't compute to daily living of a young family. Fort Ord Inclusionary. One of the things that I I keep looking at, because it, a lot of the properties that we have for inclusionary housing, and I've heard this at a at a conference, are typically its government-owned property, because that's the single biggest cost you have typically is where to put it. Well, I don't know how much more governmental property we have. Now we're going looking at school sites for some kind of of housing. I just point that out that we need to look at that very closely because we're running out of space. And we're also running out of parking. Heritage Harbor, I love I love that one because it obviously, there's that one prod, that one plate that maybe they don't want to sell it. But the seawater rise and so forth, we also have another aspect. What's going to happen if seawater rises and fills the tunnels? You're going to have to use that that property to get a road back through Heritage Harbor in some respect. So but with that, I'll I'll pass it on to the other side of the table.
Just make sure the mic is is on. Just make sure, make sure you, yeah. We just want to make sure that the, make sure that folks online can hear you.
The light on?
There you go. I'll try this again. So my question is regarding all the other work that's being done with other jurisdictions and how that comes into play and how it affects us. And as an example, you mentioned the county use of tarpee flats. Where does this all come out and wash? Is it through the environmental documentation that we have to do?
In part, yes. So Kim has led an effort to collect all the Rena data from all the jurisdictions in the county, actually, and make sure that that's built into the into the modeling for the project. And so it's going to be reflected in the EIR modeling, but also in the evacuation modeling that we do to really make sure we're taking full account of it. Because the the current countywide model doesn't account for for Rena growth. And so we've corrected that in the modeling.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question on the density bonus. I'm just wondering if there's a catch 22 with regard to the water for that. I'm assuming that with Monterey One and other options, we're going to get water down the line. But upfront, you know, we're going to be at a deficit. And I think one of the big issues with the housing is that we really want to get the biggest bang for the buck. And so if we can't have the water to get the density, then we're not going to have it in the future because we've already built it. And so I'm just wondering how, like with the density bonus or with the general concept of what you're looking at, how we're going to strategize around the water growth potential, which is going to put your maximum further out in terms of the number of units that are developable, developable.
So we're already losing opportunities. The three projects that Mr. Salama is building on Garden Road, he's held the properties for about five years now. He pursued the rezoning because he believed in building housing on these sites. So he incurred that cost as well. And we had a huge concerted effort with our council to go to the water district. They gave us the extra water for those sites, and the State Water Resources Control Board indicated it would be a violation of the cease and desist order. So all of those projects have been downsized. We lost well over 100 units in that effort. So we are, and I met with another developer recently that's looking at Garden Road. They would like to build housing, but they've got to make a decision in the first quarter of 2024. So we most likely will lose that opportunity as well. So we are, I'll say, just in the planning office sort of daily work, we're losing opportunities. People can only hold properties so long before they either need to sell them for another use or decide to retain them and and keep the existing use. So I just want to put that out there. It's an ongoing daily challenge for us meeting our Rena obligations.
I would say there's also a program in the housing element, and I can't remember exactly what number it is, but I did think I did reference in the in the in the presentation. It's about looking, exploring opportunities to diversify the water supply. And I know the council is already considering some some actions there. So that's part of the strategy as well.
Did you have a question for me, Commissioner Latos? So you had that look.
So please stay there at the at the microphone. So the on the page two of the council agenda report, and this is a real basic question, but the, so the environmental determination, it's not a project, it's defined by CEQA. But the next paragraph is an environmental impact report will be required. So if it's not a project, why are we doing an EIR?
So we're saying the action tonight by forwarding it to HCD for public comment, or actually, you're just discussing the project. The next item the council will be forwarding it is not a project. We're currently under contract to have Diopatia prepare an environmental impact report. It will include the housing element, the safety element, and the land use element, and circulation element to ensure that we address the environmental impacts. All of that will be coming to you in the next few months. For final, as part of your ultimate adoption of the plan, early first quarter 2024 will include adoption of an environmental impact report or certification.
Okay, thanks. And then I'll thank you. The next question is for Andrew. I think the draft housing element is really close. I, you know, I'm very happy with it. I think you've done a great job on this report, including the Fort Ord stuff. But I was just, it caught my eye, the SROs, single-room occupancies. That doesn't really, that isn't part of this calculation, is it?
No, it's not. SROs are not included. They don't increase capacity.
That's a state, that's part of the state guidelines, is that SROs just aren't part of the the calculation.
Correct. We haven't made any quantification of, of, you know, creation of housing units through recognizing SROs. But they are, they can be a strategy for preventing homelessness. And so that's why it's included.
Right. I mean, hopefully the state will will modify that rule in the future. And it seems like such a source of housing. That's all I have. Thank you.
May I ask a follow-up on that? San Francisco built a eight-story building of apartments that were 160 square foot. To to address the SRO issue, would it be a good idea to put it in the plan that we could put that into a plan, an operational plan?
So you mean, take existing SROs and?
They're not counting it, but you're going to have that population base in your city. They're not counting it, but you're going to have that population base in your city. If you could put them in a SRO building capable, then that would be an advantage to free up the others.
Yeah, that's interesting. I mean, so as I mentioned, we we have had conversations with HCD to get input on on sort of trickier issues. And that could be something we agendize for um for a future um call to see if we can get any credit for it.
Thank you. Good question.
Okay, we'll bring it to the council for questions.
Uh I don't have any questions, I just got a comment later.
Okay, Councilman Barber.
So thank you so much. I know this is a lot of work and and um Clementine and Linda did a great job of showing all the big work that you did right here. So thank you so much for that. Um I was, I had a question dealing with the opportunity areas. I know we talked about um some of them and MPUSD Aquarium, Montage and Del Monte are the interested parties, but I know we talked about about some that were the opportunity areas. Now, Chomp was one of the ones that you said that you mentioned um in the employer with sponsored program. So what's the response from them? I'm just curious because of the the opportunity, the potential there.
Yeah, so um uh actually, back in December, we did these listing sessions with all different community groups. And there was one session where we had representatives of the school district of Chomp and of the aquarium. And that I think that conversation really sparked something for them because they continued having conversations about housing even after that. And so um in even before um we released the public review draft, PK Difanbaugh was here, you know, in June, and he requested that we that we incorporate a program that became that educational workforce housing overlay. And then subsequently during the comment period, Chomp submitted a letter saying, we like this concept and we'd like to do it for um for ourselves. Um so they are interested. Uh we had a follow up conversation with them to say, okay, which sites are you considering? And and you know, what would you like, what would you like to do? Because if we create an overlay, um the overlay comes with development standards and those need to be very specific to to sites, right? You need to know which sites you're dealing with in order to write the correct standards that are going to meet community expectations. And so we asked them, you know, what sites are they, do you want? And they said, well, we're thinking about it, let it, let us get back to you. Um and so that's why the program that we're recommending, and similarly, we had conversations with the with the aquarium too, say, hey, look, there's this concept of an employer sponsored housing. Would you be interested in that? And they they said, well, maybe, let us think about it. Um and so that's why we we were recommending that we include a a program that would involve continuing the conversations with employers to explore interest. And then if there is, then we would have, when we have a better idea of which sites were involved, then we can, we can structure a program to be more specific. So right now, it's it's conceptual, but there is potential, if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Um the other question, talking about MPUSD, one of the uh opportunity areas. Um it's a 50 acre site, 300 mixed between low and moderate income income. I'm just curious as to with 50 acres about the amenities. I know that was brought up from somebody around here too about some of the other sites, but in particular, I'm asking about the MPUSD as far as amenities there because of where it's located.
Right, and so um as as it's envisioned right now in the housing element, that site is for uh for housing only. It would be mixed income, so some moderate, some some lower income and uh um and some above moderate. Um and amenities, you know, there would be onsite amenities in terms of recreational amenities uh and that kind of thing. But as it's as it's envisioned right now, not necessarily uh retail or employment um on that site.
Uh it it just concerns me when you put that many people out there and not having some amenities to for them to get to, um even as you know, basic like I think they were talking about even like grocery store, uh uh even if it's a neighborhood market, something I just think needs to be, especially with that, it's a lot of housing to have nothing around in that area.
Right.
Um. And I think that it, I think the parking part, I I think was the only last thing, and that was just a statement about um thinking about the reduction of the parking park as far as that being one of the uh I guess uh initiatives that is in this particular element. Uh because this, I get a lot from the constituents all the time about parking. Um like constantly, so my thing is we're going to be increasing, you know, 3654. And we take away more parking. You know, where are we then? And so I I think we just need to be, you know, cognitive of that as we move forward. Thank you.
Any questions on this side? Councilor Garcia.
Thank you. Hi Andrew. Thanks for the uh presentation. Um just a couple of questions here. Uh first, in terms of employer sponsored housing, I'm curious if there have been any conversations with hotels that could potentially maybe offer housing on site?
Hmm, that's interesting, we haven't specifically, um we did have a conversation with the Portola um uh hotel and spa back in December. Um they did not indicate at that time that they were interested in housing, but as part of this recommended program to continue outreach and continue conversations with major employers, we could certainly uh you know, approach them and see if they're interested or other hotels, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. And then uh second question is uh uh regarding a technical term uh relating to um uh Ryan Ranch Fort Ord regulatory reimbursement and remediation. What is that and why why does it take so long?
Two, two separate things. Um one is uh um the federal and state agencies would be involved in oversee. So remediation is one thing, remediation of the unexploded ordinance, that's the remediation part. And then the um uh regulatory uh remuneration is the would be a, would involve a payment from the city. Because federal and state agencies would need to do oversight and complete paperwork in order to facilitate the remediation. So two separate things, but that's what that means. And I and I guess it takes as long as it does because there's many different agencies involved and they all have their processes and there's defined time limits, and when you add it all up, it would take about 60 months to get it done.
Councilor Robert.
Thank you for uh for the presentation. Um couple of questions um related to the Ford Ord property. So it looks like we're planning for like 220 low income, 220 moderate income out of about 1600. Um. If the city decided we wanted to say, I don't know, offer other kinds of incentives to try to raise the number of affordable units there, which would certainly be my objective. Um, you know, I guess, obviously, we can do that. Are we limited in our planning here though by other um state rules? And in other words, you know, we can't say we're going to, we're going to have 800 affordable and moderate income. Is that because of the way the state requires us to do this RENA projection?
Uh yes, and it specifically it relates to the requirements for affirmatively forwarding fair housing. Um and so there's a requirement that the build out of the inventory needs to positively influence um fair housing patterns in the community. Um and so that means specifically avoiding an over concentration of low income in any specific area. And so that means like not adding more, too much more affordable housing in an area where there's already a concentration or um creating, putting all the affordable housing in one area. And so the the metric for deciding what is an over concentration is typically 20%. Um and so 220 units of six of six 1660 is about 13 point something percent, so it's well below the the 20%. Um and
Okay, so I understand then, so you're saying because of fair housing rules within this whole planning thing, we can't project more. Are we allowed to build more if uh if the council, future councils decided they want to?
Um I would think so. Um.
Okay.
I would think so.
And then the reason I'm, so first of all, I love the idea of the mixed use because I think it speaks to Councilwoman Barber's concern and others' concern um about, you know, not just having a lot of people living off somewhere where there are no amenities, where they're going to have to drive to go to the grocery store or to go to a cafe or whatever. So we definitely want to have all of those kind of amenities there, which are also going to serve Ryan Ranch. So I think that's just, that's a great um strategy. But I think it's also important both that the affordable mix be high and that we have those amenities to kind of um and maybe I can get your reaction to this. So one of Land Watch's concern is that by putting housing there, rather than by putting it all in infill in the city, we're going to contribute to our carbon footprint. And obviously, that's a concern. But if the people who are living there are working in the city of Monterey and are currently living far away, and if they're able to, you know, eliminate some of those amenity trips into the city, is it fair to say that the carbon footprint issue is is a little more complex than that?
I I think that's fair. Uh as as I mentioned, uh at the Community Open House, we had a lot of people um talk about, uh one of the reason they they liked on the mixed, the mixed use village concept is because it would provide housing opportunities for nurses or medical staff who are already employed at at Ryan Ranch and are perhaps commuting from from farther away. And then additionally, when you start to think of a of a village concept there, then um you know, when you have more critical mass of people, then transit or shuttles into into the area, shared transportation becomes more feasible. Um also, local trips, you know, you you can make a local trip within that mixed use village without having to to travel a longer distance by car to do things. So I I would agree that it's it's a more nuanced um consideration.
And then the last question, um one of the ideas they've raised is elevating height limits in sort of our business corridors. Um did staff look at that and examine like, how how many num, how how many RENA numbers would we, would that allow us potentially to shift from, let's say, four door to infill?
Right, um we did look at that and we actually have some um some numbers that we could show. Um but uh I think there's a couple of considerations there. Um first, uh you have to think about the those eligibility criteria for lower income sites. Not all sites in those infill areas in the specific plan areas meet those stringent criteria for, you know, for size, for being free of environmental constraints, um for be, you know, being capable of of developed um feasibly. And so there's a, there's a select um number of sites that meet the criteria. Um and uh so that's one consideration. And then even if you um upzoned everything for 100 dwelling units per acre, like like in Alvarado District, just because you upzone it, doesn't mean that everything will be built at 100 dwelling units per acre. Again, you come back, I come back to these requirements for realistic capacity projections that are based on what has actually been built in Monterey and surrounding communities. And and so based on our survey, the absolute max, the absolute maximum that we could find that's ever been built in the area or even actually not built yet, but planned, is about 70 dwelling units per acre over at Tioga. Um and uh but that's the outlier, right? On on average, it's really 56 um dwelling units per acre. Um and so even if you bumped up the 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 densities a lot, you're still limited by what you can project. And we actually, I mentioned that we had a call with our with HCD staff um before this meeting because we wanted to really make sure that we were, what we're giving you accurate information. And so we we confirmed that this is true and what HCD staff told us is uh yes, that's correct. Now you can, you can project, you know, slightly above, you know, the 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 trend. But the further you get above the trend, the more scrutiny we're going to give you. Um because we want to make sure that these projections are 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 based on on, you know, realistic, realistic capacity. And then the one final thing I would say, because I think it's important, is um even if you were to uh assume a much higher density factor in all the infill areas, that there actually, that actually poses risk for the city. Um and when you think about the no net loss provisions of state law, as I said, the um the city must uh, the the zoning map must have the capacity to meet RENA at all times. And so if you only limited the um the housing sites to infill areas and to do that, you assumed a much higher density factor. If projects one by one come in at below that that uh assumed density factor, suddenly, you're not going to have enough capacity. And then you have to, you have to scramble to rezone to make sure that you're complying with state law and the zoning map has adequate capacity. So there's a risk. The anyway, it's multi multi layered, but there's a risk in assuming.
So Andrew, what I'm hearing you say is the staff recommendation is trying to address, first of all, the mix of affordability to make sure that we meet those requirements, that it's realistic and to limit state scrutiny and risk. Got it, thank you.
So um my first question would be um picking up on where Alan's last question left off. So say hypothetically, we continue moving forward with four or in our site inventory and we just look at expanding our um our buffer. If we looked at upzoning in downtown, for an example, to create an additional buffer, we're not really saying, we're not creating a a situation where if uh if sites come through less than, right? Because we're we're only adding to it. So I I'm just wondering, because part, part of the other side of this issue is if the entire region has been limited as far as height, right, and we allow the density for the height, I mean, we're going to base it off of the past. Of course, the past is going to show lower units per acre. Um but if we're allowing for it, I mean, wouldn't HCD consider that as a feasible way of looking at adding density within our housing element?
Yeah, well, they look at two things. Uh that first of all, they're looking, do the, are the sites zoned with, you know, adequate zoning to allow for uh you know, densities that are deemed affordable? And so that's a minimum 20 dwelling units per acre. Um so they're looking, but if you think of the Alvarado District, the zoning there allows for 100 uh dwelling units per acre, so that's clearly adequate for for high density. So they're looking first, does the site have the adequate zoning? And then um recognizing that that zoning is the ceiling. Um what is the realistic projection? Um and as I said, we, you know, because, as you've just pointed out, the water has been such a constraint in Monterey, and as Kim pointed out, projects haven't even been proposed at higher densities, but they haven't been able to be to approved or constructed at that rate because of the water supply constraint issue. Um and so we did try and broaden the search um to other communities. Um we even talked about, you know, with HCD potentially looking at Santa Cruz, um you know, to see what densities have been been built there. But it's not a higher than, you know, it doesn't, it is not higher than 55, 56, you know, dwelling units per acre, just that that um type of construction, which is, when you get up to the those densities, it's more expensive to build, right? There's there's elevators, there's different circulation that that needs to be built, there's different, it's different construction materials, construction types, that just is um is is expensive to build. Um and so there there just aren't examples of that. Um and so where I'm going with that is um zoning for for adequate capacity is one thing. But then the second thing that HCD is looking for is those realistic, they want to make sure that the projections are realistic.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Um. What happens if the state doesn't approve our first draft? Do we feel comfortable in our ability to be able to meet the statutory deadlines?
Yeah, um I can say uh almost for sure that they will have comments and and um and uh questions for us that we'll need to address. But our strategy um is to submit uh as 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 early as possible and then to follow up with them, not to wait for that 90 day period to be over um and then to receive their comments, but after one month to check in with them and say, you know, what do you think? Uh is there any initial feedback? Is there anything we can start to work on now? Um we've already had several meetings with our HCD reviewers, you know, and to get direction um on on some of the content and some of the approaches in the housing element to try to make sure that we're on the right track. And we'll continue to to follow up with them. Um hopefully have a couple of meetings during that 90 day period to get some initial feedback to start um to confirm that we're on the right track or to understand, you know, where they need clarification, because sometimes they do need clarification of what what we mean. Um but anyway, to to continue to work proactively with them to make sure that um we can stay on track for that uh April 15th.
Okay, thank you. Um I I kind of want to go back to the the prior conversation for a second in in regards to the buffer. Is it not possible for us to look at changing the zoning in other parts of the city that would permit us to allow the units that exist in for ord that are in the site inventory to be the buffer, to be equal to the amount of the buffer?
Um the issue comes down to that moderate income category, right? Because uh as I, and I I know it got really wonky, but um what I was trying to explain is in some parts of the state, market rate housing, if you think about the rent on a per square foot basis or the sales price on a per square foot basis, you can demonstrate that a small unit would be affordable on a per square foot basis um at market rate to a moderate income household. That's not the case on the on the Monterey Peninsula. Housing costs, whether it's rent or for sale, just too high, you can't make that connection. And so, but we have this legal requirement to demonstrate capacity for moderate income housing. How do we? How do we do that? And so we've we've talked with HCD about strategies that can do it. The inclusionary requirements really help for getting us there. And then the other suggestion that we're putting forward is structuring the local density bonus program. To provide additional incentives for for projects that offer more moderate housing to meet that that local need. So anyway, it comes down to the to the moderate income housing. We can. You know, upzone more areas of the city and get more lower income capacity. Again, the more the I would go back and say that the higher you you bump up that that density factor, the more you you potentially. Paint yourself into a corner with with no net loss provisions, but it is possible, it is possible to get the. Lower income sites up to, you know, up to the arena numbers and have four door via via buffer, but the problem section is that moderate.
Okay. And then a question regards to the CAS district. Is the is the plan for the entire. Area to be rezoned or is it only the specific sites that are identified? And the reason why I ask that is because there's a lot of doctor's offices over there. And as we're talking about employer based housing, does that provide an opportunity for physicians? To provide housing for their workforce?
Yeah, so what I would say is right now. That we're not proposing any rezoning in the Pacific Munus CAS area. The commercial properties are have the right to 30 dwelling units per acre by right. Or under under the current zoning, so there's no, they can get, and so our projection there, and maybe I should pull up a map to show you. The larger properties along Abrego, for example, the larger opportunity sites that are right adjacent to downtown, but not in the downtown area. Based on feedback that we got from the the planning commission of the council in June. We assumed 29 dwelling units per acre on those larger properties right up against downtown as a way of increasing infill capacity. And we feel that 29 is again tied to our survey of of precedent projects. And so it's a it's a it's a reasonable number to project. And so those sites have 29, but the smaller properties along CAS. We assume 16 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the with the housing. But I I think that 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 provides, anyway, these are, these are only, I could, I would also say that these are only projections. If a property owner on CAS came forward and wanted to build at 30 dwelling units per acre, that is currently allowed under the zoning.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then my last question is. I I took a look myself and it looked like there was the repeat letters from Land Watch. It was kind of like a. Template that was almost kind of churned out. Was that checked? And I can't remember what the numbers were off the top of my head, but it was like 55 out of.
56 out of 59.
Nine, were all of those 56 essentially the same message?
Almost all of them, maybe three of those 56 that added another comment as well.
In addition to, yeah, okay, okay, awesome. That's it for my questions. I'm thinking we should take a break and then we'll come back for public comment. So. Let's be back at. 9:25. 9:25.
You're trying to do five.
It's seven minutes. Open up public comment, so feel free to step up to the mic and you have up to three minutes to speak.
Have a day in speaking as government affairs liaison for the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce is supportive of this draft housing element. It does what we're looking for, and that's been our long term goal to increase the supply of housing. For people of all incomes. Try to relieve some of the pressure of those awful commutes from elsewhere to Monterey that go back and forth each day. This is, I think, going to be good for for local businesses down the road. Obviously, it's a long step forward. And 3,654 units is quite a lot. But this plan looks like your consultant knew what he was talking about and. I was impressed to to look it over. We did participate in the commenting process. And this is what we're looking for. So very good. Thank you.
Right. Hello, everybody. My name is Gabe Sanders. I'm the director of housing and community development for the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. Couple of things. SROs do count. I looked this up. HCD says they do count. I would like. To clarify with an HCD staff member whether or not they are counted by the kitchens and common areas that serve them. There could be five units to one common area and they may only count as one. But they do count. I would clarify how. This is available on the HCD website. I worked there and this was a topic of conversation when I was a staff member. Also, MDP would never say in Luffy's should be used for substituting, especially in a small project. I had the letter that I wrote and submitted in front of me. So just to correct the record. And that MDP recommends examining the workability of a sliding scale for inclusionary affordable housing where requirements and concessions from the city increase with the scale of development. So we commented on program two, one inclusionary housing or zoning rather. To undertake a study of the financial feasibility of the current 20% inclusionary requirement, including the potential for a codified 10%. Moderate 10% lower income stipulation and other proportions. So please undertake feasibility studies. Further. As it relates to the permit streamlining program, I really strongly encourage you to maintain that as long as it takes to meet your lower income housing requirements. Otherwise, it doesn't matter. And of course. Use existing legislation as a model, SP 35, which will ideally, should the governor sign the bill that's on his desk, SP 423, as it will be extended. Will enable a lot of new housing in this area. Should you provide the ground for it, that can be used as a template for your permit streamlining program. Further. Density, guys. Cass Street, I work with the developer who offered her site on 1045 Cass Street. With just a little bit more density, she can offer a heck of a lot more affordability and she's not the only one. There are people out there who want to build this kind of housing. And given the zoning appropriate to do so, we can see a lot more progress than otherwise. So. Continue consulting with developers, the. Policies and programs that MDP supports and which we provide recommendations for, which are available in your agenda packet. Were devised with the input from both for profit and nonprofit developers who will be the ones actually doing the building. So please take that into account as you make your decisions tonight, whether it's on this draft of the housing element or the second draft. HCD will have similar feedback for you. Realistic capacity depends on feasibility of these projects. I don't work there anymore, but I'm bringing that perspective to you here. To that end, you guys did a great job. This is the best housing element I've seen across three counties. Maybe with the exception of Santa Cruz, the city of. So thanks for all your hard work.
Too late. The red light should have been on two minutes, two seconds earlier.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and planning commission, Luis Osorio, former planning commission. Architecture review comedian, member of the NIP. I've been around. And listening to all these issues for over 30 years now. Just a couple of things or three things. I think. The light bulb came out the other day. When I was walking and I don't know if this has ever been brought up and I don't know if it's too late, but it relates to the to the fairground site. And I thought that there may be an opportunity to put a program in the document. To consider some kind of swap with whoever owns the property to move it out to the four door area and allow and make that. An opportunity site for housing. There's always been complaints about the fairground, the noise, the traffic from Mr. Brassfield's neighborhood. And I thought, I mean, this is a great site. For potential housing. So maybe we can include a program there on the plan to. Maybe at least talk to somebody about that. I think there needs to be a. We need to maximize. The opportunities for development of affordable housing here. I mean, I know the state has requirement for housing for all, you know, the different brackets of the population, but I think. We we know about the need for affordable housing. I don't know how many, how much more market rate we need because that it's a million dollar house. I think we. There's been talk about. There's mentioning about adding additional height. I think we need to probably also look at the overall site development standards setbacks. Lot coverage, that kind of thing, because those are restrictive. I think there should be a specific plan developed potentially with the county for the area of Tarpe flats. And, you know, the the school district site, because that's a 50 acre site. If you don't do a specific plan and the county and the city go differently separately. Nothing is going to happen in 10, 20 years, believe me, when you go environmental review and all that. It was mentioning that the. La Mesa School, the army. It's not the La Mesa School at La Mesa, the army is considering a 60 unit development. I don't know if that should be counted towards any housing for the city. I mean, technically it is, but that is military housing. The military that are going to occupy those units. Unless they're going to be allowed for regular citizens and residents. It, I mean, it doesn't do anything for us citizens of Monterey. So I don't know what what. And then when we did the specific plan, the prior planning commission for North Fremont, we considered. Thank you. We we talked about potentially. Deleting some hotel units on Fremont. I know it will take. A charter amendment, but that's something that could potentially be. Thought of again. Thank you.
Sloan Campy, citizen of Monterey. First of all, thank you, planning commission, city council. And the work of the consultant, the city staff. I am an underemployed city planner and I know what it takes to build a housing element. It's not easy. You've heard a lot of facts here tonight. My specialty is transportation. And I want to speak to that, but I also want to speak to. How many people of my generation are in the gallery tonight? Not a lot. And how many are up here? Not a lot. That's who we're planning for. That's the future of what this element is going to provide for us. We all know there's an affordability issue and we need new solutions and we need them in a hurry. We need solutions that. Countless academic and. PhDs in city planning and urban development will tell you. Where parking requirements will only add to the problem of unaffordability. Adding lanes will only add to the problem of unaffordability. The next generation behind mine is the lowest car ownership generation ever. That's what we're planning for. So the solutions lie in transit, the solutions lie in alternative transportation, the solutions lie in density. So I would implore this council and this planning commission to examine that. And when they're considering the parking requirements and to think differently. About how housing can and should be planned for as our previous generation thought differently. When single family zoning became all the rage in the 50s. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Cora Pantarot. I'm also a citizen of Monterey and I have some comments. I'll start with program and policy specific comments, starting with program two I. So I believe the inclusionary housing policy can go further than the 20% requirement. Potentially an even one third split between low, medium and above medium income. And this could be a conditional housing crisis clause that's effective until the proportion of low income housing. Drops lower than the proportion of housing needs for the above moderate income housing. And the policy threshold could also be lowered to two to three units for the missing middle housing that we're looking for. And this could address the SB nine lot divisions that were mentioned in earlier comments. Sustainability goals, the new buildings should be all electric. New gas hookups in general are going to be going the wrong direction from city climate goals. The most feasible route to do this is through a zero NOx appliance ordinance for air quality in the city health and safety code. And this goes doubly for anything related to program two J. All new water credit enabled buildings should be climate friendly to not exacerbate further climates and water issues. And there should be a requirement for gray water and purple piping for new construction. To reduce the water credit requirement per units and get a little bit more bang for your buck. For opportunity zone discussions for the downtown area, the shared parking program is a really good start. But I think the city should reduce and continue to work towards eliminating the minimum parking requirements in general. And continue to partner with TMC, MSC and other jurisdictions for increased mobility options for transit, biking and walkability. The city should also start studying and piloting closing down streets for cars, for bike and pedestrian corridors for increased quality of life. Greater sense of place and increased commercial foot traffic. For the North Fremont area, we need traffic calming measures in that area to meet the walkability. Goals that are described in section three of the housing elements. For the lighthouse area, the same parking comments as the downtown area. And also we need traffic calming and pedestrian friendly studies. So that's we can reduce the car fumes and noise pollution and make that a better place to live and enjoy. The Del Monte zone also didn't mention sea level rise, but map two dash two shows significant risk there. In general, the active transportation measures mentioned above are particularly impactful for aging, low income and women led households. The reduced transportation cost for residents make communities safer. Increase independence for those that are too young, too poor, not able or no longer able to drive. And they're good for the climate too. Residents should be able to age in place, get to school safely without being chauffeured by mom and not require a car payment to be happy. I would also like to advocate for greater program focusing on missing middle housing. So smaller developments that work for the character of neighborhoods like Oak Grove. And that the city should also change some zoning requirements to allow for increased amenities like cafes and restaurants in these smaller neighborhoods without increased parking requirements. Thank you very much. Do what I can.
I'm Suzie Worcester. I'm also live here in Monterey. And I agree with a lot of comments that she made about increasing the sustainability. I want to talk about climate is a key factor. And as mentioned, like, for instance, we're going to have water going down under, we have to think about what to do with a whole chunk of town right down here. And so be planning for that ahead instead of thinking, oh, that'll never happen. So start planning for that. I think it's super important. We're thinking about reducing commutes and that means if we're going to meet our 1.5 degree C goals, we have to get people out of their cars. And so the parking is great. Get all electric is where we got to go. We got to get out of gas. And I want to mention that it's super important that we we have as much low income housing and moderate housing as possible. There's plenty of housing available for people who have the means to do it. So we don't need to plan for that housing. Can say that as a homeowner and I see who's buying. The other thing is, is I didn't hear about infill in Ryan Ranch. It seems like there's a lot of space there and it could be used much more effectively. And I like how Tyler said about the buffer, why not use four door as a buffer? People always go for green space first. We need to keep our green space. That's the open space for the people that would be in Ryan Ranch. Totally agree about mixed use. I talked to my college students. They all would love to live in mixed use housing. They think that's the greatest thing ever. So they don't want parking and they don't want those things. They want to live in active places. So I think those are super important. And I think we need to think out of the box and be thinking about the big changes in the future that we're going to be using our cars a whole lot less. We need to use a lot less energy, 50% less by 2030 is the goal for us to make it. We live in a great place. We're not dealing with the climate impacts, but hey, the ocean's coming. We have fire issues, so we're not really out of the water for literally for this issue. So I just think we need to remember that and push the state that way too. They shouldn't say, oh, you can't have higher density because you didn't do it in the past. We're in a new world. So hope that's helpful.
Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, we'll take it online, please.
First, I'll call in Jose Torres.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. Before I read my prepared comments, I will echo the. Previous speakers on the sustainability front. I agree with Sloan Campy's take on. Increasing public transit and for the record, Land Watch is for development on. On the Ryan Ranch properties where infrastructure already is in place. And where MST's headquarters exist and where MST should increase their public transit. Availability. And where MST's headquarters exist and where MST should increase their public transit availability. Now to my, to my comments, Land Watch does support your ambitious goal to increase the housing supply and facilitate the production of at least 3,654 homes by 2031. We support almost all the policies the city proposes, especially those that would simplify the permitting and reduce housing costs. Our detailed written comments propose modifications to make them even more effective. However, we do have one major concern. Although in other instances, the city has shown great leadership in addressing climate change, the environmental impacts. The plan, the original plan to locate 21 housing units on the former Fort Ord. And tonight's modified plan of 1660 would still be approximately 45% of the city's arena allocation. And is still a significant step backward. Meeting the housing obligations does not require sprawling out of the former Fort Ord. The housing element and environmental impact report should therefore assess a no sprawl infill only alternative. We believe that it will be both environmentally and economically superior to the city's current proposal. The dozens of emails that you've received from Land Watch supporters, many Monterey residents agree with us. Allowing sprawl development of this magnitude would contribute to a significant climate impact by inducing vehicle miles traveled. It would also impinge on sensitive biological resources, disturb a hazardous material site and worsen groundwater overdraft. Other cities, indeed, there are no available water supply for or development because Marina Coast Water District. Has no committed plan to supply water and is bound by settlement agreements not to supply additional hookups with non-groundwater sources for residential projects in Fort Ord. Other cities, Pacific Grove, Sand City and Carmel among them, will meet the arena obligations without this kind of sprawl by focusing on infill. Monterey can as well. Land Watch analysis demonstrates that expanding into environmentally sensitive open spaces on former Fort Ord is unnecessary. The city simply recognizes that its own analysis provides sufficient high density sites for both affordable parking arrangements.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, your time is up.
The next speaker is Judy Stroyer.
Hello there and thank you. And I'm relatively new to Monterey. My wife and I moved here about a year ago. And we used to come for the car shows. We really like it there. But I have something that I think is really important for the, for the civil, you know, kind of your council to think about. And there's a double standard and it's a double standard. It's really alarming. And it's going on in the city council and it happens in, in other councils too. Is that it seems like free speech is, is protected for some people and not for others. And there seems to be double standards involved. When I hear a lot of racial equity terminology in bills that you guys are putting forward. And it seems to be very in vogue and popular to discuss how white people own so much of something. And, and, and it's so fast that somebody wants to put the trigger on the censor button as soon as anyone mentions anything having to do with a white person's mentioning, hey, there's a double standard here. I'm not a Nazi. I'm not coming at you with a, with a gas chamber, you know, yet, but I'm saying. I'm allowed to have a point of view as a white person, aren't I? And, and the way I feel is that we have these meetings and you have the different constituent groups, different minority groups. And they get to say whatever they want about white people owning this and that and having too much of this and being white people overrepresented here and there. And that seems to be okay, but every time the white person wants to say something about the 2% minority Jewish population that is overrepresented in, in positions. It seems to be a double standard where I can't say that. So other people could say it about the whites and we're just supposed to take it on the chin. And if we say anything in defense of ourselves, it's racism, obviously, right? But if we mention this 2% minority, and I'm allowed to say this, and if I'm not, then why are the other groups allowed to say it about me and my group? Okay, that's a double standard. And if you have a double standard for free speech, you're setting yourself up for violence. Because speech is what's always been there for us to settle our differences peacefully. But if you say the speech only exists for the group of detractors against whites. And then you say when whites want to mention anything about the Jews or about the over, over representation on crime of black males or. The, the, the legal activity in, in the schools and why our kids have to be scared about Mexican gangs. These are things that we are allowed to discuss and we get cut off at these councils. I applaud you for not doing that to me right now. But it seems to be in vogue to shut down the white man's speech. And that is very racist. And if you want to push that racism against the white population, you're going to see a backlash coming. And, and the white people are going to, are going to get sick of talking. And I thank you for hearing me out and have a nice day.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm calling on Robert Bowers next.
All right, great. Thank you. Have any of you ever heard of the Talmud? For those that don't know, it's one of the books that the Judaic faith uses to guide them. It can be found in every synagogue across America and the world. I welcome you to fact check my claims and consider what you may have previously believed to be wrong. Here are some examples of scripture from the Talmud. Sanhedrin 58B, if a non-Jew hits a Jew, he must be killed. Y'all cut 245O, extermination of the Christians is a necessary sacrifice. Sanhedrin 57A, what a Jew steals from a non-Jew, he must keep. Kathie Bach 11B, a man who engaged in intercourse with a girl less than three years of age has done nothing. Glitten 57A, Jesus isn't held being boiled in excrement. Zohar 1160A, Jews must always try to deceive Christians. Babamexia 114B, the non-Jews are not humans, they are beasts. Zohar told off Noah 65B, when the Messiah comes, every Jew will have 2,800 slaves. Which is an interesting piece of scripture considering that the American slave trade was Jewish. Lewis Farrakhan, a public speaker, said, how did I get to be an anti-Semite? What have I done? I told the truth about Jewish involvement in the American slave trade. Blacks and whites should not be enemies. We are both being played off against each other. And our misfortunes are from the hands of the vile Jew. As a society, we are allowed to criticize everyone but one protective group. They cry out in pain as they strike you. Every aspect of the media is Jewish. Every aspect of the government is Jewish. Our wars are fought for Jewish interests. Our whole existence is on Jewish supremacy. The group has been expelled over 109 times throughout history. They lie about being persecuted. They lied about the hollow hoax and continue to gaslight any opposition to their demonic plans. What same group? That is what moat houls do. If you can learn about that, every aspect is Jewish at GTVflyers.com, go MTV.com, watch Defiant by Devon Stack. Watch Adolf Hitler, the greatest story never told. Thank you. Goodbye.
Hi, Kater. Please go ahead.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I had some comments regarding the aquarium, but after hearing the, the last two callers, I just want to, I agree with those people, you know? It's every time that, you know, a white person mentions the fact that, you know, six Jewish corporations on 96% of our media. Were anti-Semitic. So when is truth anti-Semitic? Why is truth hate? You know, I see these news stories about people passing these flyers out. And they want to say that it's hate speech or, or that we need to arrest these people for utilizing the first amendment. It's just, it's weird. So.
Do you have a question for Tany?
I, I look at it like this. If we're not allowed to say those things, then there must be something seriously wrong here. And it only proves those people right. So I've been looking into this and it's, it's messed up to see, you know, the Jews have taken over our country. Don't, please don't talk when I'm, when I'm speaking.
I, I appreciate you providing public comment. We do have a, an agenda is the item. Do you have a comment related to the item on the agenda?
Well, you just let the other two callers speak, so I figured that I would speak my mind too.
I just asked you to redirect it or we'll let your time expire here.
Well, okay, I'll redirect it.
Okay. Thank you. Next, next caller, please.
Calling in Jose.
Oh yeah, I heard the last, or some people that were in the chamber. I heard them talking about cars and stuff and, and really they're, they're, they're anti-car. And the climate change and all of that, we know who's pushing that. But the cars, they want us to rely on the government to move us around and who controls the government. So really what they want is, is complete reliance on the, and, and you know, they say affordable housing, they want socialist communist housing. And goes back to communism was Jewish. It was created by a Jew and funded by Jews. Thank you.
This is a telephone caller with last three digits, 705. I believe it's Lorna Moffett. Go ahead, Lorna.
Yes, I have my own timer. Thank you. So I'm not hearing anyone in the council fighting for Monterey. Saying we are going to sue the governor for illegally forcing cities such as ours to have this kind of housing. When we have, can't even solve our traffic problem and our pollution problem. And I haven't heard one council person, and I may be wrong, say, okay. Let's just utilize all the empty buildings that are here. And that's what we're going to do. Whether it's motels, you have some kind of a law in Monterey, you can't buy hotels up. Well, change that law. And make it possible that people can have boarding houses. That was mentioned. That was a comment that was mentioned previously that has been ignored. And wait a minute, it's not my time yet. Am I still allowed to speak?
You're, 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 the timer's still going. You can continue.
Okay, thank you. I heard, I heard that and I thought, uh-oh. So anyway. Council members, I want you to fight for Monterey. And I want you to say, we're not going to build anything more because it's a huge footprint on our climate. And we have to be responsible here in Monterey. But we are going to seriously look at all the units, all the motels, all the, all the empty buildings, all the offices. And we're going to utilize those because they already have water and they already have parking. And as far as parking goes, if MST was having a bus from Monterey to Salinas every half hour. Those buses would be full. Okay, they only have two bus trips daily. So we can solve our problems. There's no carpooling right now and there needs to be. And so please fight for Monterey and no building, just utilize what we have. And sue the governor for what he's doing. We don't have the water. Thank you so much.
Paul Reeves, I'm calling on you next.
Well, I'd have to say that was some of the most disturbing comments I've ever heard. And I've been to a lot of council meetings and planning commission meetings. And Mayor, I wish you had brought them into order immediately. That, that's just unacceptable behavior. Totally off topic. I'll get on topic. So table 3.4 allocates 296 units to lighthouse area. And then when I read the Pacific Grove arena allocation, they have 1,125 units. So you add those two numbers together and you get 1,421 units on the peninsula. And by peninsula, I mean the peninsula. We have two ways on and off this peninsula, Highway 68. And the lighthouse tunnel. As was previously brought up, we have numerous hazards throughout the area, flood hazards, airplanes crashing, fires, et cetera, et cetera. But no mention was made of the lack of a transportation system. And I don't have to remind people as to what happened in Lahaina. And I imagine their city council and planning commission probably had discussions about transportation out of their village. And we are not that far away from the possibility of having a huge disaster on this peninsula, probably a fire. Now, on top of that, we know that the tunnel is within the 50 year flood inundation zone from sea level rise. So I just, I can't comprehend how we're talking about adding almost 300 units. To the city of Monterey in a region that is served by a tunnel primarily that's supposedly going to be underwater. And as far as I know, we haven't grappled with what's going to happen to the tunnel. How are we going to address that? So if you have any consideration of changing numbers, please don't increase the number of potential units in lighthouse, Canary Row, New Monterey. If anything, decrease them. Now I would differ unfortunately with Land Watch. I think Fort Ord is an ideal place because it's a blank slate and you can make. A nice mixed use village out there. And I think it would do well to serve the employees out at. The Monterey Research Park area, CSU MB, that whole region out there. And it can be master planned. I mean, that's, that's a unique opportunity to make something that really works. So anyhow, I'm sorry about those comments. Those were very, those previous comments, those were very disturbing. And you're doing a great job dealing with a very difficult process. Thank you.
Oh yeah, my, my brother just called here and I'm calling in now to support him. I take offense to what this guy just said with challenging my comments. Who does he think he is? Is his comments more valuable than mine or my brother's comments? We have information that we want to talk about too. And, and when you talk about your housing and needing to provide all this housing for people. There's a reason why. And there are root reasons why you have so many people coming that need the housing. If you can't talk about the problem that's, that's creating the issue because a guy like that jerk, I'm sorry, is trying to censor people's free speech. Listen, I think what he talks about is disgusting too. He, he sounds like a type of person who likes to restrict the free speech of others rather than allowing different ideas in the public forum.
I, I ask you to redirect your comments towards the item on.
Did you ask him to redirect his comments or just?
I'm asking you to do that or we're going to cut you off here.
Okay, I will. You did not ask him. I will, I will redirect as you ask, sir, but you did not ask him. That's a double standard. The reason why you have the, the lack of housing is because you have a mass immigration wave coming into our country. There is nothing that you can censor here. I'm talking about the issue, sir. Now you have a lot of people coming into this country that need housing. Now who's going to get that housing? You have the baby boomers that have all of the housing. They're not letting go of it. Nobody's going to sell their house right now and try to get another interest rate on a house. And they, they got their houses that went up from $100,000 to $2 million over their life because of the Federal Reserve money press on full steam. I'm talking about the roots of the issue and I'm allowed to discuss this. You have no right to interrupt me again. And we're talking about people like George Soros, who, who, who is involved in NGOs that are bringing people into this country like we have extra housing. We don't. We have a lack of housing. He's bringing people in like we, we have, we, we have resources out the wazoo. We're running out of our resources here. We're running out of our resources. We don't have room for all these people, whether or not. And if I say these people, you can't cut me off for that either. Now listen, Bill Kristol's another one.
Okay, all right, so. Go to the next comment, please.
Too angry.
The next speaker is unmuted.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, PK Diffenbaugh, Superintendent Monterey Peninsula Unified School District. Thanks for the opportunity. I first want to begin by just thanking staff for engaging MPUSD in this process. And for the thoroughness of, of the draft that's in front of you. uh, and for the thoroughness of, of the draft, uh, that's in front of you. We're, uh, I'm, I'm calling to let you know that I'm in support of the educator workforce overlay um, that will allow for educator housing, um, on school district property as long as it meets objective standards. This is in line with, uh, the, the state law, and I think will allow, uh, MPSD to hopefully be able to build housing that educators can live in so that we reduce, uh, the turnover that currently exists within our district. Uh, as I've communicated with you in the past, about 100 teachers every year leave the district, um, which represents about 20% of our, uh, teaching force. Um, and cost of living is cited as one of the main reasons why, uh, teachers leave. So this overlay will, uh, hopefully allow for the opportunity for the school district to be part of the solution. Uh, we know that, uh, the city alone, uh, cannot solve this very large systemic issue. Um, and the district wants to be part of the solution. So thank you for including the educator workforce overlay. Uh, and we're hopeful that, uh, this will move forward to support our collective goal of having educators live within the community of which they serve. So thank you very much.
And the next speaker is unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to take a minute. Um, first I wanted to address that, uh, Kevin Dayton, I know you're listening. Um, you're anti-free speech and that's anti-American. But, uh, just to go off the, um, the housing crisis and what some of the other callers have awoken my eyes to tonight about this Jewish issue causing this housing crisis. Um, wh- what I have in mind is a final solution. And what I mean by a final solution is that, you know, something that once it's 100% done.
We're gonna stop you there. It's, uh, you're off topic and, um, I mean, we're gonna go to the next speaker.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Adam Pinteritz, Monterey County Association of Realtors. Um, I just want to take a moment to really appreciate all the, all the hard work and effort that staff have put into this. Um, the, the events, the outreach, we, we're really well done and I appreciate that. I, I, you know, I wish that kind of process could be done for everything, but, but obviously that'd be quite a strain on resources. It's imperative that you move forward with this housing and I feel so confident that you will. Uh, you know, some cities don't, don't quite look like they're going to make it or at least not on time. And I, I'm concerned about what that implications that may have for local control. I'm, I'm hoping we can all get to a good place with housing. When I was attending some of the outreach events about this plan, um, some of the trepidation I heard from members of the community included, you know, when they're looking at prospective site areas and locations and, and then they get really nervous about what's popping up. None of this circumvents the standard approval process. None of this circumvents sequin. None of this means that buildings are going up tomorrow. You know, this is all a way for us as a community uh, to get together and, and re-envision what the city can look like and, and, and how we can grow, right? Because it's just, it's not working. You know, if you say you want it to stay the same, can, can you really look at, at, at the poor folks who are, who are sleeping on the streets and say you want it to stay the same? No, you give me a break. So, so we're working together on housing and, and we have serious issues to, to overcome like water. Uh, you know, candidly, I, I think it's disingenuous for, to, for people to claim that we can truly achieve all the housing that not just Monterey needs, but this, this region needs without D-SAL. And I'm not talking about who owns it. I'm just talking about the fact that we need a reliable water source in order to make these housing numbers more than just numbers. It, it, you can't just assume that we're going to get enough water to recycle to reliably consistently meet these goals. So, so that's another topic that, you know, we can continue to talk about, but, but I, I think it's a crucial part of the housing conversation. Uh, I, I think we really need to keep all options on the table. Uh, you know, uh, Fort Ord, Ryan Ranch, the 68th Quarter, everything. Right? We'll still talk about it. We're not going to circumvent any of that. We're still going to have conversations about what, what's right for our communities. Uh, but, but we need to have all the options on the table. And I'll, I'll end with just saying that I think the most important part of all of this is streamlining. If it's not feasible, if it's not, uh, if people aren't developed or empowered to, to develop uh, and redevelop these properties, then, then we're at a standstill there too. So, so I really hope that, uh, that you push forward with this and emphasize those points. Thank you.
Calling on the next speaker.
Um, good evening, everybody. I, uh, I'm like completely thrown off of my comments because of these comments that we've never had before on our city council meetings, uh, turning up. Um, I did want to say thank you to staff. They, they did a great job on this. As many of the staff and council, um, are familiar with, uh, local advocates have been talking about exactly this to happen at Fort Ord. Um, for years, the city hired a consultant years ago that confirmed that that was what the need was. Um, unfortunately, you know, Land Watch has the power to get people to write in and copy their, their letters from each other. And I, I question how many of their members live with constant, uh, housing instability. Like so many people, um, in the city need, um, housing because of that, that. I wanted to mention that I was happy to see that they put in the no more storage portion of it um, over in Ryan Ranch, um, because I sincerely don't think we need any more car condos. And, um, I also wanted to mention that, um, we do need to include some moderate housing because we actually have a lot of rental units that are being taken up by people who are wanting to purchase in the area, but we don't have enough inventory for them to be able to purchase. Um, and I'm not talking about gigantic, you know, single-family homes, but starter homes for, you know, young families that are starting out or, um, couples. I mean, these aren't people that are going to be looking to buy, you know, big homes, but they are rentals, they are renters that are taking up some units that if there was some moderate housing that they could purchase, it would free up some units. Um, uh, I guess other than that, um, I just wanted to say that th- this is a really good plan. It shows a lot of foresight um, and smart planning. And unfortunately, I think a lot of this, um, public comment is going to be overshadowed by the comments that were brought in unexpectedly and offensively to so many of us in the city. And, um, I do hope that this doesn't become a trend um, in our public meetings. Thank you.
Calling on the next speaker.
Alright, so first off, I'd like to disavow all these pardon my language, um, all these hecking.
Okay, so if you're not going to make a connection to the housing, then we're going to have to move on to the next speaker.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm going into it. I just would like to disavow white nationalists. Um, I own two properties in the Monterey area and both of them three-bedroom properties, big lots. And I've got them filled approximately eight H1 B1 visa students to each room, so that we're talking 24 students to each house, 48 to a room. They paid my mortgage. Alright, they pay my property tax and I got these students, they're milking me like a cow's udders right now.
We're gonna, we're gonna stop and go to the next speaker, please.
Go ahead, please.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, um, say that I find it appalling that you guys are pointing off or, uh, cutting off these people for just trying to expose the Jewish power. Sluttering our nation.
Just like the last folks, I'm going to ask you to stay onto the topic. If not, we're going to cut you off.
Okay, I just wanted to say that if you bolstered Zionists.
Go to the next.
Go ahead, please.
Um, is there somebody there that's speaking? That wants to speak? If not, we'll go on to the next caller. Alright, next caller, please. Yep.
Go ahead, please.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, um, I just want to, um, say that, um, you guys have done an amazing job and we want to support, um, this, um, this, the six-cycle housing element draft. Um, I also want to um, say that I, that we really, um, want to support the comments of Gabe and, uh, Sloan and, uh, Mr. Osorio. Um, they spoke very well of a lot of the things that we support. Um, I, uh, am one of the property owners that, along Cass Street. And, um, currently at the zoning of 30, um, houses per, or 30 units per acre, um, we can only put about seven, um, units on our site. And so we would hope that we can, um, ask for a doubling of that, uh, that density so that we can put more units on. Um, we, uh, what we're focused on is providing housing for both the, um, moderate as well as low, lower income. Um, and we have the capacity to do that. We could put 12 units within walking biking distance of downtown. And so, you know, anything that you guys could do to increase capa, uh, the density along the Cass Street uh, corridor or anything that's actually within walking and biking distance of the downtown core would, um, greatly increase um, the amount of housing that would be able to be done on infill sites along that. Um, so we really just wanted to say that we, I, I, I applaud your, um, your, uh, work on this particular, um, um, draft element and support it fully and hope you, uh, pass it and move it on to the next, next phase, um, so that we can get zoning, um, and, um, get, get to work on rezoning and doing whatever you can to continue to increase the housing stock in Monterey. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, regarding the housing crisis, it just, it seems every aspect of our lives are being controlled by this small group of individuals and is easily proven for those willing to accept the truth.
Housing element or?
Yeah.
Oh.
I am, I'm, I'm making my point.
Alright, we're gonna cut you off because you've already spoken. Thank you. Next commenter, please. Say it one more time.
Do we know that name?
Yeah.
Say again.
Is, is that?
Go ahead and start the, go ahead, let's, let's see who this is.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, you know, addressing the, the housing crisis, I just want to address the root of the issue, which is about.
Alright, I'm going to focus on the item because otherwise we're going to cut you off.
This is directly related to hu- to housing. So every single aspect of mass immigration is.
Alright, next comment, please. Jeffrey Epstein. Let's go ahead and start the comment.
Comment, uh, I, it's a Jeff, yes, Epstein, Epstein, okay. And yes, I'd like to comment on the housing crisis.
Sorry, this is, this is not a relevant comment. We're going to go to the next speaker, please.
Hey, I just wanted to say.
Okay, we're gonna stop the comment and go to the next speaker, please. Say it again. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for deliberation. Thank you all for your patience. Um, so I, 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 I will say before we begin the discussion, um, in, in as kind of maybe lighthearted that we're trying to make this in the chamber. Words like that really affect people. And, um, and so, uh, for, for whatever it's worth, I, I apologize for those in the public that may have been offended by, by those comments. And it's unfortunate that we had to go through that because it's not appropriate. So I appreciate everybody bearing with us as we get through that. Um, and with that, let's try to carry on the business so we can get through this. If the planning commission's okay with it, I'll leave the comments to the council so that we can move forward with making, uh, a decision tonight. Alright, so let's open it up for deliberation and, and, uh, oh, okay, if you, you all are more than welcome to be excused if you would like to leave. And you're welcome to stay too. I don't want to kick you out of here. We love you. Whatever you want to do. Okay, alright, yeah, well, let's go ahead and, 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 um, excuse the planning commission if you all want. Feel free to stay in the chambers and then we'll adjourn back to the council meeting.
Too late, Mike. You missed your dead, your bedtime.
Oh, sorry, hold on one second.
Sorry, I didn't know we were moving forward. Yeah, this is where we.
Oh, right, because we're going to the next item. Okay. Okay, so real quick, let me just, uh, get this right. Oh. Okay, yeah, I don't know what I'm talking about. Alright, so who's gonna take it from here? Okay, okay. I'm a little bit all over the place right now.
Hi, my name is Kristi Savdo. I'm Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. Um, we have a few slides that Kristi Davy is going to go through to talk about the procedure of the city council meeting. And then also, um, some of the conflict sites for each of the council members. If I can figure out how to.
Chris.
Kristi.
Kristi.
Okay. I'll go, I'll go ahead and start there. I know that she'll, um, figure it out. So what the council just did is we had a joint meeting with the planning commission and, um, reviewed all the public comments on the draft and you got an excellent presentation from staff and our consultant and heard comments from the planning commission and, um, took a lot of public comment for it speaks for itself. So now this is the part where we need to go through the, um, FPPC Conflict of Interest exercise because some of you have uh, live within 500 feet of a property or within 1,000 feet of a property that's been identified as a potential housing development site. And so in order to vote on the draft and including those sites, we need to, um, identify those and then one at a time, you'll have to leave, um, the chambers when, when we're discussing your particular conflict. And the council, um, can, um, vote on those while you're absent, then you'll come back in. And the next council member will leave and then those sites will be discussed. And then after all the conflict sites have been discussed, the remaining ones can be done all jointly. Um, so what this is saying is, um, we'll give a presentation on the housing opportunity sites, at which time the council members can ask questions. at which time the council members can ask questions. And then there would be public comment on those sites. Really, they were already received public comment on the site, so I would say.
What's the legal interpretation, do we have to open them all back up?
Well, this is technically, yeah, we're gonna have to do the public comment again because this is the public hearing portion. Yeah, so next slide, please. Mm-hmm, yes, yes. Is there another slide? Yeah, sorry, thanks. Okay, then after the public comments have been received, staff will present any closing comments and answer any questions. And then before any discussion or deliberation, the abstent, abstention sites will be identified by staff. So with that, I think if you go to the next slide. Okay, so we'll start with Mayor Williamson. He is disqualified, yes, on the, the streets that are listed on the screen there, on the sites that are listed on the screen there. And staff will discuss those sites and open that up.
Before we proceed, a city attorney, so are we going to take public comment on each of these individually? Because that could.
Yes.
There's not, we, maybe it would make sense to have them all presented and then take public comment on all of them. If we do it each individually, we may be here until six in the morning.
It, it'll be in the cluster, so we'll take public comment on Mayor Williamson's conflict site as a group. So there's going to be.
All right.
Four different.
I, I hear you, I just, I have concerns, but let's proceed.
That's not my role, that's the FPPC segmentation process when there's conflicts.
Let's move forward then. So is there a staff presentation then, or?
Yeah, I believe so. If.
No. No? Okay, so then I would be looking for a motion and then we would go to public comment on this.
Yeah, so we don't necessarily have a, oh, we don't necessarily have a staff presentation on these, but these are the conflict sites that were within the five hundred and one thousand foot.
Okay, so then I would ask if there's public comment in the chamber on any of these specific sites. All right, seeing none, I would ask if there's public comment online specifically to these opportunity sites.
Go ahead, please.
Excuse me.
Go ahead, please.
Hey, so I just wanted to say that we need to round up every last.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to say fuck niggers, fuck you.
Are these all coming in from different numbers?
Go ahead, please.
So they have multiple accounts.
Anything, go to the next one, please.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, I'm calling about the exclusion zone. I'm thinking in its own here around a Bregaro Street where the little turquoise dots are there. Are those areas where?
All right, cut them off, please, next speaker.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, can y'all hear me?
Um, no.
I'd just like to say that, like, part of a new convert or new transplant over to here town and stuff like that, like. Pardon my language, pardon me.
Please speak to the issue, which is these opportunity sites.
Yeah, there's plenty of opportunity.
Not enough, all right, please cut them off.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, I, I, these exclusion sites, safe. I'm very concerned about my child.
He didn't, he didn't. Go ahead, please.
All right, please cut them off.
Go ahead, please.
Hey, so I just wanted to say that you're all going to get expelled with.
Okay, I, I think I'd like to call a, I'd like to take a five minute break here. So we're going to take a five minute recess for a second, thank you.
All right, we are going to come back from the break. And I'm going to ask, due to the late hour that we tabled item nineteen and item twenty on the agenda.
I'll move to table.
Uh, yeah, well, then go to the Community Services District after we tabled these two items.
Okay, perfect, okay, so motion to table nineteen and twenty?
I'll move to, I'm making motion to table those two items.
Second, okay.
And now we'll adjourn to the Ocean View Plaza Community Services District, which is a consent item.
Don't we have to vote on that?
No one's asked to pull it from.
We don't have to vote on the two items that we tabled.
The tabled items nineteen and twenty?
Oh, okay.
You have to vote on that.
All those, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So good, all right, so now we're going to go back to, we're going to adjourn to the Ocean View Community Service District.
Right, it's a consent agenda.
Say again?
It's, it's a consent item, it hasn't been requested to be pulled, so you don't need to open it up. It, it just passes on consent if that's the pleasure of the council.
Okay, um, there's no votes being taken, so with that, any comment from the council? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and reconvene the council meeting and we'll go to council comments.
I'll, I wouldn't go for these. So I would have talked to the council and the public to say. There we go. I would have said, thank you, Andrew and Christie, or your work and Kim for your work on that last item. That was an unfortunate interruption, but you know, we're going to do the, the people's business of government, irrespective of people that don't respect the process. Thank you for all your efforts in that last agenda item. I wanted to highlight that we had in this report, and it's significant for me to say this so that we don't forget when we come back. On packet page four oh seven, it has a summary of housing programs progress report. And we talk about housing all the time, but this table shows status of program implementation for the fifth cycle. And there's a massive amount of accomplishments that the city staff has done with the city council, with the, the planning commission. And I encourage everybody to look at the accomplishments of the last cycle as we move forward and move to get to the process for the sixth cycle. So good work on that, thank you for all your efforts. Thank you for the planning commissioners for what they do. And I love getting together with them to be able to hear comments and insight. And thank you for your, your duties as planning commissioners, because I know you equally have a lot of hard work. On my way to Sacramento, Tyler is also going to be in Sacramento the next couple of days attending the League of California Cities, where we hope to learn lots of things that are happening with the state governments, other cities, and some legislative things. And there's a ton of bills that we're watching to see what the governor's going to do in his signing. So looking forward to that in Sacramento with the other electeds at the League of California Cities. Thank you.
All right, who wants to go next? Dino?
I just wanted to give a special thank you to Chief Hober and Lieutenant Ethan Andrews for coordinating a ride along with Officer Chad Bentamilia. I went on a ride along about a week and a half ago with Officer Chad. And it was a great experience. I was with Officer about a couple hours on a Friday morning and visited a few sites throughout the city, which really gave me an opportunity to look a little bit closer at the challenges that our MDOT team encounters on a regular as they, the team tries to serve our homeless population and our residents in general. Something that really came into focus for me was the challenges that involve the, the various agencies that is, is really something that I think goes or is a little bit invisible for most of us, even myself, as we visited a site where there were a couple of encampments. I learned that we were actually looking at property that was not City of Monterey property, but rather state highway property or private property. And you wouldn't necessarily know that unless you're, you know, looking at those details closely. So gave me a much more higher appreciation for what MDOT does and our officers. And, and I, again, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to, at least for a little bit, come into their world and, and see what, what they do on, on a daily to, to protect us, to serve our residents, saw the challenges, saw the victories as well. So I, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Hans and Barbara. Yeah, first of all, I had an opportunity to attend the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association party, as well as the Fisherman Flats Neighborhood Parties this weekend. It was great to see everybody, had a great time there. I also wanted to just highlight the Canary Row Plaza project. We heard, you know, heard from the developer earlier tonight during public comment. And I do think that the council should consider formally issuing a letter to the Coastal Commission to support that project. And then with respect to the, the housing element, I think that, you know, we are acting, we are acting to address climate change with this plan. And, you know, one of the big problems is so many of the folks who work in the city don't live here, can't live here. So we're trying to address that. And if we address that, that will have a significant, you know, carbon input impact. We are looking at alternative transportation, that's part of the plan. We are looking at repurposing underutilized buildings, that's part of the plan. And I also wanted to just say Tom Reeves, I think, made a good point, though, that, you know, putting a lot more housing on the other side of the tunnel does pose challenges. So I think overall, we got a great plan and I'm really proud of our planning staff. And I think the consultants also did a great job, thank you. Hans or Barbara?
Yes, so I echo my colleagues in saying Andrew and Kim and all of you, all of the staff did an awesome job. Planning Commission, thank you so much for the heavy lift that you've done. I really appreciate you and all that you guys do and what you bring to the table. And I really appreciate those that have hung in there tonight, who are still back there. We really appreciate you being able, yeah, all right. And the young people, yes, they're out, but when the young people, we thank you for the young people. Okay, we got one young person still left, okay, but thank you for the young people coming out as well. This is a housing element, it's just as much as your project as it is everybody else's. So thank you to all of, everybody who's putting their hand in to do this heavy lift.
So, I mean, I don't want to be too repetitive, but I think it's worthy of extra appreciation, particularly for our staff and, and Andrew for the work that's being done in all the preparation, the coordination. I mean, there's a lot of stuff happening behind the scenes that, I mean, the council can't fully appreciate. Never mind residents that aren't even paying attention to this, that are going to benefit from what's going to come from this. So truly thank you for all that. I've heard nothing but positive feedback from folks in the community about how excellent our draft housing element is comparative to our neighboring jurisdictions. So truly kudos to, to the team for making this happen. And I like to give appreciation to, to the planning commission. And I said that, that didn't get to share this with the majority of them before they, they left. But you all have been dealing with the brunt of the community engagement efforts. And so lots of appreciation for you and to the community. One of the, when I was canvassing, as I was running premier, a constituent had asked me, if I could do one thing, what would it be? And I said to have a robust community engagement process for our housing element. And the entire team has proven to be successful in doing that. So I'm super honored to be mayor in the City of Monterey at this time, while this is happening and being part of this process with you all. So it truly means a lot to me. And, and again, I think to a lot of our residents that aren't here tonight to be able to share their voice. And with that, I would, will just share a couple of updates as I represent the City of Monterey with Monterey One Water. Pure Water Monterey has provided eleven thousand nine hundred acre feet of water to date. That's around three point nine billion gallons delivered so far since its development in twenty nineteen. And there are efforts, I've updated you all before on this, but there's efforts to move the bills to the tax rolls. And I believe, if I remember this correctly, that the county has approved, moving forward with a third party consultant to allow monthly billing. So you can pay your property tax monthly and in monthly installments if you'd like to, to help with the cost. So that process is moving along and I would be sure to keep you posted on that. And then there's been an interest in wanting to change the weighted vote for the JPA. That's going to be a deeper discussion. And I imagine if we move forward with that, that it will have to come to the council and we'll have to approve that in order to change that. Though I will share that the effort that is currently being made would reduce the power that the City of Monterey has. So that might require some deeper discussion and I'll keep you all posted on that. So that, that's it for me, I will move it to Hans for city manager report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, a few events that I want to announce for North Monterey and Conan Park Center. Public Library, Library Bookmobile is at Conan and now every Tuesday from two thirty to four thirty at Montecito Park, every Wednesday from four forty-five to five forty-five. We have a search training planned at Casa Nova Open All Neighborhood Center on October eighteen. We'll host a kids' night out on Halloween, called Halloween on Friday, October twenty-seven at Connor. Parents' Night Out Holidays, Friday, December fifteenth. That's basically when the parents go out and drop the kids off and hopefully someone will look after them. We have Drop and Shop, similar event at Connor for Saturday, December sixteen planned. We are working to make this reservation registration program all available online. And we're working on Parent and Me Storytime with Arts and Crafts at for Connor as well. And what we can share also that we will be adding again. And what we can share also that we will be adding again fencing classes at Casanova in January as well because a neighborhood that can fence that can look out for themselves as we say.
There we go.
So that's that's it for me.
Alright, this has been, this has been fun. With that, we're gonna adjourn this council meeting. Thank you, everybody.